I'd like to call the meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for December 4th, 2018, to order. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, November 7th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices. And a slight correction, it will be repeated Friday, December 7th, at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, for your consent matters, items 1 through 36. For item 23, you are adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 16, Point 02 of Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code to extend permit expiration from 180 days to 12 months. You waived reading on November 6th. For item 25, you are introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 16, Point 81 of Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code extending temporary reduction of fee rates for certain fee components in the North Vineyard Station Fee Program. You're waiving reading and adopting this on December the 11th. And that concludes my clerk notes.
Okay, any comments from Board members? Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, just very quickly, Madam Chair. On item 9, if you could read that, please.
I'm going to have Ben Lamara here. He's going to comment on that in a minute or two.
Okay, all right. I just, yeah, I just want some additional information. I don't have any specific questions. It's just I'd like to have a plat map of the properties, at least in District 5. I think it was included in the past, and there's a lot of parcels, but, okay. That's all I had. Thanks.
Mr. Serna? No? Okay. Would you read item 9, please?
Yes.
Is Ben here?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
Notice of intended public auction of the tax defaulted property and resolution authorizing the sale at public auction of tax defaulted property.
Mr. Lamara? We had a request for, from an executor of an estate to withdraw one of the properties, and then Mr. Natoli had a couple of questions. So, you're familiar with the property asking to be withdrawn?
Yes, and actually, we asked that you approve the list as is, and we will contact the owner of that particular property and try to work with them out and try to understand what their plan is as far as redeeming the property.
Why would we leave it in? Why can't we pull it out and address it in the next round?
We could. That is actually up to you. You do have that ability to pull the properties from that list. My concern would be pulling that, those properties from the list, or a property from the list would limit us as far as our ability to also collect on that property.
Well, I thought we had several years to address these tax defaulted properties.
We do. We do.
But how long has this property been? Has it been on too long?
This is the first, actually, this is the first year that this property, this particular property was placed on the list, and we will, you know, most of the time when, actually, in numerous times, when we go through our reviews of the properties, if there's actually a owner that's residing in the property, is that we will actually remove that property from the list, unless it is statutory to sell the property.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask you to withdraw that from the list. And can you comment on the exact property?
Yes. So, that property is parcel number 2000130080000, and it's 3628 Bainbridge Drive.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Natoli?
Okay, thanks. And I would support your motion on that, Madam Chair. Ben, thank you again for the information included here, and I know that, as we've had discussion in past years, you've actually, I think, changed the format a little bit and now include those that are, they'd be included on the list, but called them out relative to primary residences. And I see that, again, in other supervisor districts, but there are a couple that are primary residences in a couple of their areas. So, could you just take just a quick moment, because it's not really identified here, but I know that you make additional efforts as it relates to where it actually is a primary residence, and that's going up for a tax-dedied land sale. So, could you just take a moment? What we, what sort of outreach we do, not just with the Treasure Task Collector's Office, but working with, potentially with human assistance and human services as it relates to that?
Correct. And we'll, first, we'll reach out onto the property here. We'll identify properties where there's possibly a residence. We'll reach out to them, and we'll let them know that the property is up for sale. We also work with DHA and DHS and DC, I will get this correct, DCFAS, regarding the, having some outreach to the folks that are on that property, if there are services that they are needed, if they're, and for them to also work with them as far as if they cannot, we have them reach out for their, if they can provide them services as far as if it's living, or food, or et cetera, that may be provided. If the property is actually statutory, yes, we're likely going to sell the property, but we do hope that they are able to find services, too.
Let me ask, because again, in each of these, many of them have very unique circumstances. You have, you know, deceased family member in some cases, and you have siblings, who may be adult siblings, and some of them may have other issues. Again, I'm just reciting from some of those I know that we've dealt with in the past years. And I guess one of the things is, are we able to, in the event that there was desire, obviously, to, you know, retain occupancy, but to redeem taxes, but some folks just don't have the money? You know, they've gotten so far behind for a variety of reasons, it may be estate reasons or other. Are we able to, within the realm of things that are available to folks beyond what might happen after the property were sold and they didn't have a home anymore, to assist, are there, you know, on the government side, either reputable lenders, those folks might help to restructure? Because some of these properties can be lost for, you know, taxes that may accrue to tens of thousands of dollars, thirty, forty thousand dollars, but the value may be still greater than that. But what happens is that if that gets sold, taxes get redeemed, the county gets its money under the statutes, obviously, but any, you know, proceeds that are left over go to the, but there is no longer a house for them to live in. In today's rental market, today's housing market, so I guess, and maybe, Robin, you could help with this, too, is that, is there the ability, when it comes to the primary residence, and if there's a desire and a willingness to try to structure something that, again, is still a private matter, but, you know, again, I think that this kind of, we go to a great extent to, and to even the questions the Chair asks about, you know, a property that could be pulled off on its first year, but when you get to the eighth or ninth year, obviously, the accrual can be, you know, several tens of thousands of dollars. But it's typically not extreme in the event, you know, there's a willingness. So, what are we able to do under the law to assist folks? Again, you know, either information about lenders, reverse mortgages, those types of things that might be tools, again, that we're not a part of the transaction, but that might be assistive to folks that would like to stay in their house, but, you know, just don't have the wherewithal to make up to back taxes. And penalties and all that accrues, and penalties and assessments can, you know, far outstrip what the actual taxes were that were due.
This is a complicated question. If you're assuming that this is an instance of someone who is old, has declined, the property is unrepaired, and is...
It could be any set of circumstances, Robin. I wasn't, you know, specific. Yeah, but that's a good example.
If that's the kind of circumstance, that's not usually a commercially viable candidate for a loan. There are resources for rehabilitation through some of the social services programs, and there are elder services that can provide for the care, food, clothing, and shelter of the individual and alternative housing. It really depends on the state of the property.
And this, you know, once we put the properties on the list, I mean, we are actually working with them, and the notifications are going out regarding the property, and at that point, at least we have first contact with them. It is four, four or five years, and, you know, hopefully, that the issues regarding the property taxes are resolved at that point, but I am not aware of us actually selling a property where a residence has been put out in the street like that.
Ever?
I can't, I...
Yeah, I'm gonna say, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, again, I don't want to get too deep into it, because I don't have any specifics here, but I think my general reference is, as we do this each year, is that, you know, notices, and I think there is compassion within those who obviously are the tax collectors, but I just wouldn't, you know, if there's some, you know, other assistance, again, it's still people's making decisions, but limited capacities, sometimes multiple parties involved, and yet, you know, if that is a primary residence for an elder, or for someone who may have diminished capacity of some sort, I think trying to assist in that regard, and whether it's the, you know, somebody that is managing the trust or an estate, I just, I bring that up because, again, you know, we're not heartless. On the other hand, obviously, we have an obligation to everyone as far as taxpayers. So, that was the question I had. And then the other one was, I mentioned earlier, when I wanted to pull this item off, is that I didn't see any plats attached to this year's unless it didn't get printed, and that's always helpful. Again, I only have 10 properties from District 5, but I look at those and try to, you know, discern, and I can tell if something's an eye alternate or ranch could over, I'll grow, but to have a map attached, and so maybe I need to make a specific request, and maybe not everybody wants that. That's a lot of information for 100 and, you know, something, probably almost 180 parcels, but I would like to have that for...
Okay. We'll work on it. Okay.
I think one further comment on the Bainbridge property would be, I'm asking you to remove it for just one cycle, to give them time to...
Okay.
...look their details out. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have speakers on item 26 and 30. Madam Clerk, could you read those in the record?
Yes. For item 26, you are acting as the Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento and Board of Supervisors, approval of compensation recommendations for unrepresented Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency employees. And then for item 27, you're back as the Board...
30. 26 and 30.
30. Thank you. For item 30, you will be acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency, authorization to execute a credit agreement with Woodside in the amount of $1,051,235 for construction of a water transmission main on Douglas Road located in Zone 40.
Okay. Macworthy had comments on these two items?
Six.
26 and 30.
On 30.
Sorry?
On 30 or 26, which one you?
She just read 26 and 30. Those are the two you indicated.
Hold on one time?
Sure.
Okay. Mainly, I'm in an investigation on housing, and each place we go into, that pumps us right back to Sacramento housing, and we find some things that somebody is scapegoating because some violation of, environment violation and construction citation hadn't been fulfilled. Now, the people that's owned that housing, when you're talking about to money, we find out some contractors that SHRA is hiring that's not doing their job. So, whatever you're doing, I have asked about people that's there, that's not making the money, and those, and the redevelopment came into my neighborhood and tore down the light commercial and residential. So, that would deappreciate the property, and when I asked the facts about why wouldn't it be a moratorium on what this city and county can sell that property for, they bought it for $2, because you bought it off the banks, and banks bought it, the banks, when they foreclosed, they would have been paying tax, but the city don't pay tax, or the county pay tax, because you're a nonprofit corporation. And you need to educate the people here, not only people of my color, you need to educate people across the board, what is going on in California, about property tax and development, and about our water. When we look at our water, I was told that we'd be pumping water from, engineer from the city, pumping water to the ground. You cannot pump water to the ground in America unless you have a suckhole. You're going to wind up with suckholes. My thing is about the meters. Why would my, one of my houses on the same lot be on a meter and the other one on three, five rooms? Somebody lying. Water going through one meter. How can you put one on the meter and the other one on five rooms?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Worthy. This item is on compensation.
Somebody got to come out. I've raised this several times.
Yeah. Thank you.
You cannot measure what house uses the most water with one meter.
Okay. Did you, does that, I guess it concludes your comments. So, I don't think I took the consent calendar, did I? Okay, so...
No, not yet.
With the adjustments on the item 9, I'd look for a motion.
So, move?
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Okay, we're right on time for item number 37. This is the public...
I'm sorry, we have a, we have an off-agenda item that we'd like to hear now.
Okay.
Anya Brooks? And do you have a video presentation?
I do.
Or are you just putting it on the white screen?
It should have been preloaded yesterday.
All right, well...
My understanding, so I don't know.
No, we just have to inform them that it's time.
Oh, there it is. Good morning to the Board, Mr. Natoli. I do live in District 5. Good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
My name is Anya Brooks. I live, I've lived in Sacramento 32 years, 15 of which have been on Hedge Avenue, and we are off Jackson Highway, parallel to South Watt Avenue. Hedge Avenue is a unique county road with open space for wildlife, farmers, homeowners, businesses. It has a Buddhist temple, a Spanish-speaking Christian church, and even a Capers 6 Elementary School. For my family, we've always worked to make the place we live better than we found it. This PowerPoint presentation is just a quick look at some slides that show you how we found Hedge. Now, I'm not sure, I think I just can click through. Okay, Hedge Avenue. And though I come to you with pictures of a problem, I assure you that I have a proposal for a solution. So, these pictures are nothing unique to Hedge Avenue. I realize we are a county road, and this problem is pervasive throughout the county and in Sacramento. But just to give you a little history of what we've started, and where we are today, where we'd like to go moving forward. And that is the front of our property, and you see some signage that we have installed. So, that's a quick look at the past, and then what we've done so far is we launched the Adopt a Street program. Mr. Natoli attended that in June of 2017. We have a small band of volunteers, neighbors, who we originally thought we'd get out there quarterly and do a cleanup four times a year, seasonal, and we quickly found the reality was that if we didn't get out there about every other month, the accumulation was so tremendous in terms of the eyesores and the environmental hazards that we sectioned off the street. The street is about three miles up one side and down the other. So, we, as neighbors, decided we need to take a section. So, my husband and I, we do from Highway 16 to Fruit Ridge on both sides about every other month. We inform the residents that there will be a scheduled cleanup, so they can put out their orange bags for the county to pick up if they choose to do so. That's where we are now. What I'd like to propose, propose moving forward is something you have in your packets, which is entitled Adopt a Street Proposal, and I would ask today that you would look that over and let me know if the county is interested in working with a group of volunteers, and maybe a person from a county department, or the department itself, or an individual. We know that there are resources as far as looking closely at not just Hedge Avenue, but a place to start. And in closing, I would say that our purpose is to have more communication and resources from the county. We continue to be volunteers, but we'd like to move forward with a more effective plan. We call it Celebrate Your Community, and the way this happens is because we can celebrate if we educate and participate. So, going forward with a positive solution. Start small, as we did on Hedge Avenue. Create a model. Grow the plan one street at a time until it becomes a community-wide event, and finally, potentially, a symbol of pride for Sacramento, which is, after all, the capital of California, our golden state. In closing, I'd like to say Sacramento is a beautiful place, and we're a valley with two rivers, many trees. We sit between an ocean and mountains. I feel that people are ready to be empowered by making this a truly golden state. It shouldn't matter what your zip code is, whether you look at trash and blight. This should be something that we, from all backgrounds, from all cultures, can share together in a process and come together and organize events. You will also see in the packet in my proposal, I have very specific ideas about events, not just ones in the future, but things that have been happening. I've spoken to people at the county. Michael Penrose has talked to me about the efforts that the county has already been involved in with cleanup areas. I've worked with Stephanie Shanks, who has been wonderful in communicating with me and planning this day. I'd like to work with her some more. Many, many ideas, and I look forward to hearing back from you, because we are a resource, and we are willing to continue to volunteer. As I said before, we start small, but we see the potential of this evolving into a more citywide effort, a campaign, if you will, to make Sacramento a truly beautiful city. We can not only, we have the ability to not only prevent the illegal dumping and trash problem from getting worse, we also have the ability to clean things up to a place where people can really be proud of this city.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
I'm sure you can work with Mr. Natoli and come up with some kind of program that he could introduce.
I look forward to that.
Thank you so much. Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, just real quick. I want to thank Anya and Ian for coming down here this morning, and certainly, you all had a chance to hear some of the efforts out on Hedge Avenue. I know at the Solid Waste Authority, we've had some discussion about, you know, some of the funding that's there that could assist with illegal dumping, which is, you know, prevalent countywide, whether incorporated cities or unincorporated area of the county. And I would just note that it's becoming more and more prominent, not just the large piles of debris and dumped items, some of the things you saw in Anya's slides, but, and I just, it's something that I think we've got to be more assertive on in our, certainly the enforcement of those that we can enforce on with regards to dumping, but the litter on our roadside is just, it really, I think, it detracts from our community, and so if we don't have the resources relative to county personnel, then I think, you know, enlisting volunteers as folks take it upon themselves on Hedge Avenue is an important component. So, I think we need to do more, and if anybody needs to look beyond Hedge Avenue, there, I can direct you to other roads and streets, not only where dumping occurs, we have them in each of our districts, but certainly where the litter is just, it's accumulation of years of litter that hasn't been cleaned up. And, and so, again, I think that the ideas here, once we can build off, and as you said, Madam Chair, I'll be happy to work with the Brooks and other folks to try to see if we can come up with something, and maybe have some allocation of resources that can be supported behind that, so, thanks.
Thank you very much. We have another off-agenda speaker, Dan Aderholt. Not sure if I pronounced that correctly.
I didn't realize I was going to be called so quick. Thank you.
We do have a, we have a three-minute limit on off-agenda speakers.
I need two minutes, you guys. I just want to thank you, Mrs. Peters, because I have been getting your emails now, and I didn't know you were sending me emails about your stuff that's going on in the community, and I appreciate that. I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Serna?
I have been working around the clock with my crews cleaning the area, which you know, and the schools around the neighborhood, with my American River Home crew. I have tried contacting Parker Recreation Supervisor guy and asking if we could do a contract or something where me and my home crews would keep the area clean and help them out, and I got no response back. I'm trying to be hopeful where we all could work together, because I really like us all working together as a community, and I just want to know if you guys could also help us with trash bags, because it's coming out of my own pocket and people from next door helping me.
Can I, can I suggest that before you leave, you get Mr. Leonard's business card? He's the gentleman second in from the left there. He's the head of Municipal Services for the county. He'll be happy to put you in contact with the right people at Regional Parks.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got to say. I just want to wish you guys Merry Christmas, and thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Aderholt.
Thanks.
Your next item, please.
Item 37 is the public hearing on the benefit category change and levy of increased service charges for the Vineyard Creek Number 12 subdivision within Zone 1 of County Service Area Number 1.
Good morning, members of the Board. My name is Dorothy Codani, and I'm a Senior Civil Engineer within the County Engineering Division, and I will be presenting this item in lieu of Robert Davison, our county engineer, because he sounded absolutely awful on the phone this morning. The Vineyard Creek 12, Unit 12 subdivision is a proposed 79-lot subdivision on Waterman Road north of Gerber, and they are proceeding with their final map recordation. A map condition of approval for this subdivision is a benefit category change in County Service Area Number 1, which provides funding for street and safety light operations and maintenance. The property owner for the property, Lennar Homes, was mailed a notice and protest ballot on October 19th, and the said sealed ballot is in the hands of our Clerk of the Board in her possession. And so, unless the Board has any questions of staff, which does include Russ Childers from the Department of Transportation, we request that the public hearing be open, public testimony or comments be taken, that the public hearing be closed, and the clerk be directed to open the ballot.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this item? I don't have any requests. Okay, closed public hearing. And Madam Clerk?
So, we have one ballot. The legal owner is Lennar Homes of California, parcel number 06502700040000, and the site address is Waterman Road, Sacramento, California, 95829, and Lennar Homes is in favor of the proposed change.
Thank you, Phil. So, since there is no majority protest, we request that the Board adopt the attached resolution.
Okay. Any more questions, Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, just quickly, so, the interior streets are private streets, as I understand from the staff report, and so, the allocation methodology, obviously, we have an affirmative vote by the developer, is this consistent in the way we've applied it with other private developments that you then allocated on a, I guess it's linear footage of, by spreading that cost over the entire, the subdivision and the residential lots in this case? Is that, is that the methodology we use?
Correct, since, like you mentioned, since the interior streets are private, so, in order to calculate a way to determine the cost, the cost for the streetlights along Waterman Road and Point Setta Drive, which is appropriate for this time of the year, as far as, like you said, calculating a total dollar amount, and then spreading that evenly over the 79 lots, so...
Okay, but that is consistent, because this isn't the first development coming that has private streets included in it, so is this the methodology we apply consistently?
Correct. I was looking, if Russ is not incorrect, yes.
Okay, all right. So, Russ knows, okay. All right, well...
Thank you for the question.
I don't have any other question unless anybody else has. I'll be happy to move the item, then, with approval.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Did you want me to read in the fill-ins on the resolution, or do they vote first?
Hundred percent.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, Section 3 of the resolution has a few fill-ins that I'll read into the record. At the close of the tabulation of the Board, the Board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category, and 0% was in opposition to the change of the benefit category. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Tony.
I'll start reading now. It'll be 10 in just a minute.
Okay.
Item 38...
We're 30 seconds ahead.
Right. Item 38, consideration of the 2019 federal and state legislative priorities and sponsorship proposals.
Hi, good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the Board. Natasha Drane, governmental relations and legislative officer. You have two staff recommendations before you today... Relations and Legislative Officer. You have two staff recommendations before you today. The first is to adopt the proposed 2019 federal and state legislative priorities. The second is to approve sponsorship of a bill to seek funding or reimbursement from the state for the counties involved in the prosecution and defense of the DeAngelo case. Regarding the first staff recommendation, I would like to note that these proposed changes come to you in collaboration with county departments and your federal and state legislative advocates, and they reflect what we believe will be issues in the coming legislative year and reflect the department's priorities. Regarding the second staff recommendation, I've asked Steve Garrett, the county's public defender, and Steve Grippy with the District Attorney's Office to be here to answer any questions you may have about this proposal. I also asked Steve Cruz and Audrey Reticek, your state legislative advocates, to be here as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Mr. Natale?
Yeah, just on, a suggestion on our water portion of this that we, I guess page 12, excuse me, Subheading Under State Priorities, is that we have, again, in the affirmative supporting legislation as it relates to a variety of water-related matters, I think it would be important for this board to consider, and I think you can bore down into, on page 12, under Sub B1, that our opposition to the California Water Fix, the proposed tunnel project, is certainly embedded in that. But I think it would be clear, particularly in light of, I think, new administration, I think, you know, what may come of discussions in future, to be very clear about our opposition to California Water Fix. And I would offer that as a suggestion, whatever, it doesn't need to be anything that's any more than that. Obviously, if that proposal were to be modified significantly, we will continue to take a look at that. But I just, I think it's important that our legislators and certainly the governor-elect are familiar beyond what, having to bore down to actions this board has taken consistently since 2008 relative to principles that involve water conveyance, water usage, and impacts to the delta and its communities. And so I guess I would offer that as a suggestion that, I don't know, Natasha, if any reaction as to how we might incorporate that into this section.
Yeah, you noted page 12. I would also note, and that's an Attachment 1, and then I would also note page 6 as well, which also has water and environmental policies under Sub A, the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta. We may want to add a statement there to, if the board chooses to do that today. To your point about our adopted principles and policies, they have served us well in taking positions on various aspects of the project. We've done that at the Water Board, at the Delta Stewardship Council, at the State Legislature, and in Congress. And this board, I believe in 2012, also took an affirmative opposed position on the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. So I think adding a statement of this sort is definitely consistent with your previous actions.
Okay. I'd just like to offer that then, to be included in the state our opposition to California Water Fix. Thanks.
Okay. Ms. Frost?
I just want to thank you for, during the year, about a year ago, we requested that you would provide letters, kind of giving us a heads-up on the county's activities, and you've done a very, a wonderful job doing that for us, and we really appreciate it. I wanted to thank you for it.
Thank you.
Good. I'd like to ask Mr. Grippy to come forward. I have a question for him.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On the DeAngelo issue, if the state, if we can't gather the money from the state for this prosecution, is there anything in place that the other counties that we are doing the prosecution for would put revenue forward to both the prosecution and the public defender?
We've had discussions with the counties on the prosecution side, and I can say, yes, they would be helping us, and we haven't finalized any of that, but yes, some of the counties have agreed. In fact, all of them have.
Okay.
I think a bigger issue might be with the defense part of the case, because the prosecution's been working at this for 40 years, and in the last 15, since they were all tied together by DNA, we've been working together on it. But the defense doesn't have that information yet, so I don't think they've had the opportunity to make those decisions. So it might be, maybe Mr. Garrett could explain what's going on with them, because that may be the bigger cost, to be honest with you.
Yeah, thank you. Could the public defender come forward?
Good morning.
My question is basically the same. Do you have any ability to contact, to work with the other counties towards paying for the defense?
I've been in contact with almost all the other counties, and I would describe their attitude as helpful and wishing us thoughts and prayers. And they may offer something, but not in the sense of, that I've been able to have an assurance that this is the kind of thing like a check you could cash. Certainly, they wish us well, and some people may be interested, but come the hard push towards trial and working this case up and paying for experts and the day-in and day-out work, they're down there, and I, it would be wonderful if they would help, and I believe there are well-intentioned people that may be interested in doing so, but I don't, I think it's fair to say it's thoughts and prayers at this point.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Mr. Natale, did you put another question?
Yeah, maybe it was these there. The, so we have five other counties, all of who've chosen to file in this county, and the estimated cost, as I, and it was included in the staff report, though, for both the prosecution and defense is $20 million, which would then be borne by this county, potentially leasing on the defense side. Any idea with that estimate, somebody put that together, how much of that would be defense versus prosecution? Is it kind of an equal split? Is it more or less? I mean, again, and maybe for both of you, both, Mr. Garrett, Mr. Grippy, I'm curious.
I would say it's difficult to give you an estimate on that, and I think that there have been some estimates bandied about that staff that Ms. Drain has taken and done a projection on. I'm not sure how, what she's calculating, but I think it's fair to say that this is millions of dollars of potential costs that, for the prosecution and defense of the case. And I suppose, I just don't want to get in a position in a public forum of speculating on what costs are, because if the people were to limit their case in some way or another, or we were to win a motion, that could affect it either way dramatically. And so I just don't, I mean, I feel.
No, that's fine. Yeah, I wasn't trying, but I just tried to get some sense of it, because if, you know, this, these were, this was unbudgeted. Obviously, we budget for our public defense and for our prosecution. Obviously, the district attorney and our public defender put together a budget, we approved that. It's not exact science, but certainly nobody, I think, would have projected that, you know, with what's been rolled out thus far, that this county is going to take on the tire responsibility or the lion's share of those costs. It's great that, you know, that there's an arrest been made, and there'll be, you know, obviously, justice will be served through the courts, but $20 million, even if that's spread over a year or two or more, that's a lot of money, because it's all additive to what your office and certainly the district attorney's office are, you know, are responsible for. And I get, you know, I think legislatively, obviously, we need to pursue that, but the event that doesn't come through, and it might be that this board needs to communicate with our colleagues in the other counties, if we haven't already done that, to ask, you know, certainly if they're talking about on the prosecution side, but on the defense side, it's not, you know, well wishes don't pay the bills, and I get it, maybe they're relieved that they don't have to, you know, defend this in their particular county, but to me, this is a big, you know, this is a big-dollar item that can have an impact on our general fund, obviously.
Sure. I think Natasha can probably work something out that way. We send a letter from the board chair to the other affected counties, or the CEO, and/or the CEO, something along that line.
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, so will you work out the letter for us?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Rain?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is to be adopted, so need a motion?
I would move with noting the addition as outlined.
Yes, the water addition and the DeAngelo addition, yes. Please vote.
Mr. Kennedy, second.
Thank you.
Unanimous vote. Would you like to take up your nominations? Okay, so that would be item number 42. Okay, so you are continuing to December 11th, the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council, continuing to January 15th, the In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee. Your first item is the Adult and Aging Commission.
I would like to nominate, reappoint Joseph Samora and Maria Padilla Castro to the Adult and Aging Commission and continue the remainder to December 11th.
Analog Community Planning Advisory Council.
I nominate Sean Woodland.
Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee.
Please continue to January 15th.
Human Services Coordinating Council.
Please nominate, to reappoint Erica Geralillo as a community member and continue the remainder to January 15th.
Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District.
Continue to December 11th.
North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
I nominate the reappointment of Richard Griffin and continue the remainder to December 11th.
And Supervisor Frost?
I do not have, I do not have.
Want to continue to December 11th?
Continue to December 11th, please. Sacramento County Employees Retirement Board.
Nominate John Kelly as the Board of Supervisors' appointee.
And Sacramento County Mental Health Board. Supervisor Kennedy?
Yes, nominate Caroline Lucas.
And Supervisor Frost?
I nominate Brian Richter.
And would you like to continue the remainder?
To January 15.
Okay. And then we have Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission. Supervisor Kennedy?
Yes, I would like to nominate the overly qualified and terribly talented local Sacramento artist and educator Judy Kennedy.
Okay. And then we have the Sacramento YOLO Mosquito and Vector Control District.
You get the arts and I get the mosquitoes here, so nominate Susan Maggie as the Sacramento County Appointee.
Okay, and that would conclude your nominations.
Okay.
And we just have three more minutes.
So we have, we're ahead of schedule by three minutes, so we will be back at 10:15. so we will be back at ten fifteen. Madam Clerk, take your role, please.
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
She's here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna go back to item forty-two for the nominations. We're looking at North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
I nominate Brenda Ewing, please. Thank you.
And that concludes your nominations.
Okay, next item.
Okay, for item thirty-nine, Resolutions of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Actions to Acquire Real Property for Power Inn Road Sidewalk Improvement Project, Lacreta Drive to Florin Road. I do want to make a note for this item and for item forty, you will need individual votes for each of the properties. For item thirty-nine, I do have a request to drop property number two, Ernest Lu Ju and Linda Fan Ju, trustees under the Ju Living Trust dated June second, two thousand and fifteen, and Cherry Kwong Phan and Ves Weizing Ma, trustees of the Ma Family Trust dated August fourth, two thousand and twelve.
Mr. Hanen?
Yes, good morning, Chair Peters and members of the board. I'm Peter Hanen, program manager.
I need a motion to drop that particular property.
Oh, you want to do that now?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Just curious, before we vote on that, why is it being dropped?
We received signed documents from the property owner late last week.
Great, okay.
Could I have a motion, then?
Move.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And so now you are hearing property Ed Wong and Dora Y Wong, trustees of the Wong Family Revocable Trust, under declaration of trust dated September twenty-fourth, two thousand and one, three-star properties, a canceled limited liability company and farmer's market number five, a suspended corporation located at the southeast corner of Power Inn Road and Florin Road intersection. This is APN number zero-five-one-zero-zero-three-zero and zero-one-two.
Okay, good morning again, Chair Peters and members of the board. I'm Peter Hanen, program manager with the Real Estate Division, Department of General Services. And I'm here today to introduce this item, which recommends board approval for a resolution of necessity authorizing eminent domain action to acquire real property interest for the Department of Transportation's Power Inn Road Sidewalk Improvement Project. The project will involve the installation of continuous sidewalks and bike lanes on Power Inn Road from about four-hundred-and-fifty feet south of Lacreta Drive to Florin Road within the Power Inn Road street corridor. The subject property is located on the east side of Power Inn at the southeast corner of Power Inn Road and Florin, and the Florin Road intersection. The lot is approximately five-point-eight-nine acres in size and is currently vacant. The property interests required for the project are an easement for public roadway and public utilities consisting of three-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-seven square feet, and an easement for public utilities and public facilities consisting of seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-six square feet, and an easement for temporary construction consisting of four-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirteen square feet. The county obtained an appraisal from an independent appraiser and presented an offer to the property owners for the purchase of the easements I just mentioned. The county remains unable to secure interest in the subject property because the owners have been able to deliver clear title necessary to conclude the acquisition. Today's resolution of necessity is anticipated, and anticipated eminent domain action will provide for possession of the required real property interest and construction of the project while the county proceeds to acquire the easements through eminent domain if necessary. Notice of intention to seek approval of the resolution of necessity was mailed to the property owner by registered mail and regular mail at least fifteen days prior to today's hearing. If you have any questions regarding the project or the property in question, I'm available to address those questions for you. Thank you.
Any questions on this item? Okay. Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, no, no questions. I just want to thank staff. Mike, this has been a long time in coming. And I want to thank you and Dan Schuman as well for all the work. It's been hard to cobble this money together and taken a lot of effort, and we've never taken our off the ball. It seems like, you know, a small project in the big scheme of things for a county the size of Sacramento, but I guarantee you we are saving lives by voting on this today. So thank you very much. And with that, I'll move the project.
Chair's second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, had a speaker on this item. I'm so sorry, I thought it was the next one. Ali Nadeemi?
Good morning. I just want to make it clear that we have no opposition to the eminent domain. Our concern was more on compensation, and we've initiated that project, so please move forward.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Now, next item.
We have to wait.
Ten-thirty.
Yes.
We have a nine-minute recess. Yeah.
Call back to order, the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for December 4th, 2018.
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Okay, for item 40, I just have a couple of notations. This is the Resolutions of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Actions to Acquire Real Property for Fair Oaks Boulevard Improvement Project Phase III, Marconi Avenue to Landis Avenue. Director Jeff Gasaway is going to make a few announcements and then I will read each property and walk you through each motion. There will be ten separate motions and noting that on property eight and nine, I will need a motion to drop those two.
And if anyone's here to speak on this item, please get your speaker request form into the clerk. Right now, I don't have any. So, Mr. Gasaway?
Good morning, Chair Peters, members of the board. I'm Jeff Gasaway, interim director of General Services, and I'm here today to introduce this item which recommends board approval for eight resolutions of necessity authorizing eminent domain actions to acquire real property interest for the Department of Transportation Fair Oaks Boulevard Improvement Project Phase III, Marconi Avenue to Landis Avenue. The project involves the widening of Fair Oaks Boulevard and construction of new improvements, including raised landscape median, improvements for ADA compliance, bicycle lanes, pedestrian facilities, and intersection upgrades. Of the thirty-six acquisitions required for the project, ten properties were originally the subject of the board action. However, Real Estate Division recently reached agreements with the two owners of the affected properties, leaving eight properties for which resolutions of necessity are required. The remaining eight properties are located along Fair Oaks Boulevard in Carmichael, between Marconi Avenue to the south and Landis Avenue to the north. Each of the properties features commercial improvements, the real property interest for the county seeks to acquire consistent and various permanent public roadway facilities and utilities easements and temporary constructions easements needed for the project across portions of the affected properties. The county obtained appraisals for each of the affected properties from an independent appraiser and presented offers to the prospective property owners for the purchase of the various easements interest I just mentioned. The information to support the acquired statutory resolution of necessity findings contained within the staff report included in the agenda packet, along with owner contact histories. Notice of the intention to seek approval for resolutions of necessities were mailed to respective property owners by registered mail and standard U.S. mail at least fifteen days before today's hearings. If you have any questions regarding the project or any other properties in question, I have staff available to address them for you.
Are there any questions on this item? It's the final phase of the Fair Oaks Boulevard Improvement Project in Carmichael. So, I don't have any questions.
Okay, so for property number one, we need a motion. This is for Thomas W. Holtzman and Nancy P. Holtzman, husband and wife, as joint tenants located at 6443 Fair Oaks Boulevard.
So move?
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Property two is Neuros Incorporated, a California corporation, at 6451 Fair Oaks Boulevard.
I'd move the item?
Second.
Unanimous vote. Property three is AEM, a California corporation, 6535 Fair Oaks Boulevard.
The item?
Second.
Unanimous vote. Four, Public Storage Properties v. LTD, a limited partnership, 6536 Fair Oaks Boulevard.
Move the item?
Second.
Please vote.
Mr. Serna? Unanimous vote. Five, Bank of America National Trust and Savings Association and National Bank Association, 6717 Fair Oaks Boulevard.
Move the item?
Second.
Please vote. I'm gonna pause there for a second. I do have a request to speak from Marty Carr on this item. Did you wish to?
I do.
Okay. Which property?
Two properties.
Oh, okay.
6745 Fair Oaks.
Okay. I have them numbered one through ten. You don't have the staff report?
I don't. I'll need some help.
Number seven.
The Janulius properties?
Right, there are actually two Janulius properties. I'm here on both of those.
Okay, please introduce yourself and make your comments.
Absolutely. So, my name is Marty Carr. Good morning, and I'm representing the Janulius family property owners on these two items. We're not contesting the appropriateness of adopting the resolution of necessity, and we do understand that the issues in front of you today don't include the adequacy of compensation, so I'm not here to argue compensation issues. Just wanted to make an introduction and maybe make a couple of requests. I haven't done an eminent domain case in Sacramento County in a number of years, but kind of in a former life with Steve Belzer, did a lot of eminent domain work, both for, you know, acquiring government entities and for property owners. And that experience has taught me maybe some lessons that I want to share just a little bit. Sometimes it's hard when you're on the government side to remember that you've got real people, you know, who own these properties. You see a project, it's a project that makes sense, it's a project that's gonna do a lot of good for a lot of people, and it's easy to stay focused on that and sometimes lose track of the fact that there are also people who are gonna be hurt, right? There are gonna be people who have to pay a price, you know, in terms of their property to get these projects done. And in this case, you know, these folks don't live here in Sacramento anymore, but they're Sacramento people, they're folks who went to McClatchy High, they're people with, you know, long roots in this community. And so, I just wanted to ask you to encourage staff as this project goes forward, encourage staff to work with us. I'm new to the process with these properties, so I'm not at all complaining that staff hasn't been, you know, forthcoming or hasn't worked with us yet. I haven't been around to, you know, take part in that process. But in the future, I really do hope that you'll encourage staff to work with us. You know, in a project like this, you can imagine a lot of opportunities to minimize damages, things like, you know, the timing of the work, what kind of signage is put out there, you know, how detours are established, those sorts of things can really make a difference. And staff, you know, staff can really go a long way in helping to minimize damages. I also want to encourage you to keep an open mind as the eminent domain process goes through. I looked back in my files over the weekend to try to see, what was the last time that I had, you know, any substantial eminent domain matter with the county of Sacramento? And it ran me all the way back, I think this was 2009, when the Freeport Regional Water Authority was a joint powers authority in which the county was involved, and so county council handled the eminent domain work there. And I represented Strawberry Creek LLC, they had a shopping center.
Mr. Carr, if you could keep your remarks to this, you're past your time, and...
I'm sorry, I didn't...
That's okay, we have a two-minute limit.
Sure, I'll be, I'll wrap up really quickly.
Kind of cut to the chase.
Absolutely. Cutting to the chase, sometimes your pre-condemnation appraisals can't capture everything they need to. The appraisers, you know, at Bender Rosenthal or wherever else, they haven't had the opportunity to work with the property owner, to understand the property well enough to really see the damages. An example, in the Strawberry Creek case, the pre-condemnation appraisal was seventy-eight thousand bucks. By the time we finally resolved it, the county, or the Freeport Regional Water Authority settled that for eight-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm not saying that's the case here, but I'm just asking you that if we're back in front of you, or if council is in front of you asking you, what's appropriate for a settlement on a case like this, just keep in mind, the first appraisal isn't always right, and have an open mind. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you also wish to speak?
Yes.
Okay, would you complete a speaker form when you finish? I don't have one for you.
Right, I'll do that. Yeah, my name is Chris Janulius, and the reason I'm here is because the lives of quite a few people are gonna be more or less destroyed, because this shopping center, it's an old shopping center, it has six tenants, and the plan is to, for the county, to take half our parking spaces, which means that there's no parking at all on Fair Oaks Boulevard or north, so, and it cannot survive with half its parking spaces. And there's tenants that have been there over thirty years that will wind up going out of business. So, it's not, you know, a question of value, whatever. By taking those ten parking spaces, we're left with about thirteen, and this is from your own appraisal report by, it says on page thirty-four, that there's twenty-three spaces, total parking spaces, and I guess the current requirements, you should have twenty-six. There's ten in the front, facing Fair Oaks, and thirteen in the back. So, once those ten are paved over for the bike path and the new sidewalk, it cannot survive with, you know, thirteen parking spaces. So, and, you know, nobody has, from the county staff, has talked to any of the tenants to kind of warn them what's gonna hit them. So, I don't know if this is the way the county operates, but it's a huge dilemma.
Thank you, Mr. Janulius. Mr. Natoli?
Just a question, certainly with Chris or Marty, but maybe for our staff more so. What I understood from the history of owner contacts to Mr. Janulius's point, that the property retained all but two parking stalls, so where is the discrepancy here? Is it during construction, or is it the after? If I heard Mr. Janulius correctly, he said that once the widening delocation would take place, they would lose those. So, can somebody explain to, or clarify that? Because again, I'm reading from page seventeen of our twenty-six, the history of owner contacts, and so I guess I need to have some clarity as to what is gonna be the result during construction, but after.
You can be seated, Mr. Janulius.
Let me respond. I'll respond to whatever she answers.
You can be seated right now. Thank you.
Hi, Chair Peters, fellow board members. My name is Melissa Wright with Sacramento County Department of Transportation. I'm the senior civil engineer, project manager. The appraisal report is correct, it's showing a net loss of two parking spaces, so I am unclear as to what his concern may be. It may be during construction, there will be more of a loss during construction, and we will, of course, minimize that as much as we can. Driveways will remain open, and we'll try to remain, have as many parking spaces as we can remain open during the construction. So, overall, project impact is a net loss of two to three, and we will be happy to work with Mr. Janulius, I'm so sorry, I forgot your name, to try to minimize that if possible and work with solutions for the ultimate parking situation and striping.
Well, Melissa, it doesn't say two to three, it says two. That's the information that was provided.
Yes, in the appraisal, it's two. There are other configurations we can work with the property owner on that may have three or may have two versus, I think in the appraisal, it's a one-way aisle. We can look at trying to do a two-way aisle, and that may have a loss of three instead of two. It would be on what the owner would prefer.
And those are all parking spaces that are on the frontage of the property? Apparently, there's parking in the rear, but that's probably, I don't know what the accessibility, again, I'm vaguely familiar with this site, but...
Right, on... I don't know about the rear. The parking in the appraisal focuses on the frontage of Fair Oaks, so right in front of the building, and then I think there are four or five on that face north. So, the different parking scenarios that we can look at involve either angled parking at the building with parallel parking on the street frontage side of Fair Oaks. If we do perpendicular, there would be no parallel parking on the street frontage of Fair Oaks. So, there's different configurations we can look at as far as angled with one-way aisles or perpendicular with a two-way aisle.
Okay. One other piece here that's not necessarily part of the capital appraisal for acquisition of property, but can be taken into account, and sometimes it's not known until after the project is at least completed, the construction piece is a business loss, and I know that Mr. Carr reflected on the project for the water project, it was done under JPA, but in other projects, there have been impacts where, if there is a business loss, and so it's important for tenants and/or property owners to keep those records, because again, if there's a net impact, again, that needs to be settled up at the end of the project. But has that been discussed? I don't know, again, you're in transportation, I don't know with real estate, if there is...
Yeah, I'd have to defer to Jeff or Peter on if those discussions have happened as far as loss.
Okay, but if there, you know, again, it's tough to project those things, you can say you know, but until it happens, and again, you don't want people to be driven out of business. Obviously, the improvement project has, as was stated, it has, you know, multiple public benefits, but also the businesses that are there can suffer losses that, you know, if you're a small business person, a lot more difficult for folks to adjust to that. So, okay, so I want to be clear. So, the configuration that was portrayed, though, in the real estate appraisal was a loss of two parking stalls and a one-way traffic. You said there could be two...
Correct.
Just Mr. Janulius, I just wanted to ask, but there may be other configurations that could either result in more loss of spaces and/or some other different access movement on the side itself.
Yes, correct.
Okay, that's all I had for staff and, ma'am chair. I guess Mr. Janulius wants us to respond.
Thank you. You have a few seconds left on your time, Mr. Janulius.
I don't need any seconds. The reconfiguration I got, it appears like somebody scratched some more spaces, and I don't know if they have, you know, a traffic engineer or whatever, I don't know if that person was qualified, and we have parallel parking, and we have, you know, angled parking. It doesn't make sense, okay? And she mentioned a two-way, there will not be enough room for two-way, you know, entrance. So, it's a huge mess.
Thanks.
My comment to you would be that they've, the DOT and Department of General Services have already completed two phases of this project, and they've worked out appropriate deals with all the property owners, and it has been a very collaborative process. So, I'm sure they'll be able to work with you on this.
I agree with you, but, you know, we might as well just shut that strip center down if they take that many parking spaces.
Thank you. Okay, back to you.
Okay, so, we had a motion and a second on the table for item six.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And for number seven, Chris Janulius and Pauline Janulius, husband and wife, as community property with right of servercship as to an undivided one-half interest, and Vazio Janulius, a single woman, as to an undivided half-interest as tenants in common, 6745 Fair Oaks Boulevard.
Move the item?
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. I do need a motion to drop number eight, Daniel Benvenuti Jr., an unmarried man, 6750 Fair Oaks Boulevard.
So move, please vote.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Also need a motion to drop property nine, the Rockanova Family Asset Management LLC, 6814 Fair Oaks Boulevard.
So move?
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then your final, property ten, Vazio Janulius, an unmarried woman located at 6834 Fair Oaks Boulevard.
So move?
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And that would conclude this item here.
Thank you.
That concludes your morning items.
Oh, all right. Well, we're going to recess early. Are you ready for closed session?
Yes.
You're back.
I'm back.
Okay, all right, so eleven o'clock then for closed session? Or does that give you time to get there?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. We can go now.
Okay, all right. We'll be back, two o'clock. I'd like to call the December 4th, 2018 session of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Back to order, madam clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay. I'd like to say good afternoon to everyone. We have a lot of people here today who have possibly not been to a meeting like this to testify before, so I thought I'd go over a few matters of protocol. We have probably as many people in the chambers, sitting outside, who wish to speak also. And for those of you in the lobby, I hope you will fill out this speaker sheet, we have people out there that have them, so please fill them out and give them to the clerk staff, who will bring it to me, and you will get your turn to speak. I plan to call several names at a time, so that those of you who are waiting can get ready to get out of your aisle, and so we can get through and hear from everyone. We're first going to have a presentation from county council, Robin Drevon, then our chief financial officer, Britt Ferguson, and then Sheriff Jones will speak. The board of supervisors may or may not discuss those reports, either with the person giving the report or after that. When it's time for comments by the public, like I mentioned, I'll call the names of those who have filled out a speaker request form and turn it into our clerk of the board, and you'll be able to speak, sorry, I've got electronics in my ear here, you'll be able to speak for a maximum of two minutes, although I have so many requests, we may adjust it to one minute later. So, I wanted to ask you to think about what you want to say, try and be clear and succinct and short, which makes it easier for us to remember what your comments are. When you're speaking, we have a timer running, and on these big screens here, there's a flashing light that gives you the amount of time you have left. When you start, it's green, it's like a traffic signal. When it's green, you go, when it's yellow, you're getting close to the end, and when it's red, you've reached the end of your speaking time, and it will flash at you. So, just keep that in mind. And I think it'd be a good idea to think about what you want to say now, and I also want to mention that we want to give everyone a chance to speak, that we possibly can, so please respect the time limits, and please be quiet and courteous to other speakers, so that everyone who wants to will have an opportunity to speak. So, Mr. County Executive, did you have any additional comments you wanted to make?
No.
Okay, thank you. Our first speaker then will be our county council, Robin Drevon.
Good morning. Would it be more?
Sure, that'd be a good idea.
Madam Chair, would you like me to read the item into the record?
Okay.
Item forty-one is the workshop to discuss the board of supervisors' authority regarding the inspector general's access to sheriff's department facilities and records, best practices in law enforcement oversight in other counties, and provide direction and/or approved changes to the scope of services of the inspector general's contract.
Good afternoon, board of supervisors, county executive, staff. I'm here to talk about the board's authority regarding activities with the sheriff's department. I wanted to say first that my client is the county of Sacramento. So, in responding to the board of supervisors' questions regarding authority, the sheriff is also my client, and in, this is not a division of loyalty, they are you, and the sheriff are part of the co-equal branches of government that it's my pleasure to represent, and in your assessment of the board's authority over certain activities regarding the sheriff and the sheriff department, is a question of a very fine nuance between co-equal branches of government. So, we've had, I've had before you a memorandum on the various degrees of authority, the constitutional authorities, the statutory authorities, and it really boiled down to the four questions that I've provided in today's materials. What is the authority over the sheriff, subject to his objection? And first and foremost, I would point out that the sheriff, as an elected official, has a duty to receive prisoners, to bring them to the court at the earliest opportunity, and with, faced with the inspector general's current difficulty, the sheriff has said that he objects based upon the security in his jail, based upon his constitutional powers. So there, as my memorandum points out to you, in co-equal branches of government, the sheriff says his objection is based upon his constitutional authority. If you were to ask me to bring that to a court, the third branch of the three branches of government for a decision, the sheriff's constitutional power might allow him to say he has an objection to someone being given the key to his jail. The other questions, though, come to board oversight. Can the board, in conducting its review of how the fiscal operations of the sheriff department are conducted, seek reports, seek observation, seek review of that department? And there, instead of the sheriff having a nuance to leverage, the board has that leverage. The board, under its statutory authority of oversight, as granted in the state statute as well as the charter, gives the board that paramount authority, that home rule authority. Can the board, in creating reports or delegating persons to conduct those inspections, demand either through a subpoena or through an investigative power, that oversight of the department? Yes. So, that's the summary of my authority that I've given to you. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Natoli?
Yes, thank you, ma'am chair. Robin, I just, I wanted to maybe get some clarification. Again, you've gone through what was in the written memo, it's been available to the public as well. So, in response number one, as relates to the constitutional structure and the authorities vested with the sheriff and obviously with the board of supervisors and elected district attorney, you cited different sections, but, so with that short question that says, can the sheriff be made to open the doors over his objection? The answer was no, and you pointed that out. But then in number three, it says, can direct observation, which may be different than opening the doors, of a sheriff's department facility, because that's been part of the essence of the discussion here, is about facilities, whether it be our jails or other ones that would be under the authority of the sheriff, facility or crime scene be achieved by retaining an expert under the board's authority to supervise official conduct of the sheriff? And the answer is yes. Those relative code sections, I've looked at that. So, tell me what the distinction is between the yes in three and the no in number one as relates to the jail facilities, if you could, please.
Well, number one, I would answer simply, you're asking, can you make the sheriff unlock the door? No. Can you make the sheriff give someone a key to the jail? No.
Okay.
The sheriff commands the jail. The board pays for the jail, the board staffs and has a budget for the jail. In the board's oversight of the jail, can the board say, sheriff, let our delegate, or let us, or let someone that we want to go inspect, go look at what could be a crime scene or could be a place of fiscal oversight within the board's power? The answer to that, yes.
So, if that places the jail, then using, and not so hypothetically, as you just pointed out, is in that the board said inspector general, or auditor, or someone under the delegate authority of this board, either through contract or otherwise, and we say we want you to go to the jail to investigate, but the sheriff still has the ability to say no, so we can say yes, and, I mean, that's kind of what's brought us to at least a part of this. So, is yes and no both in this response?
Well, I would say if what we're asking is not to be given a key, but to tell the sheriff, we must see this site which is part of our oversight.
Right.
In which case, that can be affected through a compromise of leadership by having someone escort that delegatee, or that contractor, or inspector to that site of a crime or site of fiscal oversight. And I would cite Los Angeles's inspector general as the example where they require direct observation, and that is required under the state statute and the board's authority.
Okay, and so, coming forward from what this board, certainly in concert with the sheriff, has been practiced now for almost twelve years as relates to the scope of services, it was modified a bit in 2015, but I think the essence of it, and certainly as one member of this board who was here, when we went through the initial discussions and had consultant services that provided us some community input, plus plenty of community input, not unlike today, about the role of the inspector general, but particularly as related to at that time in custody deaths, and the concerns expressed certainly by members of the board, but by the broader community, that we set up an arrangement that this contract that had the cooperation of the sheriff and the, certainly the chair of the board, as that rotates, but in essence, the board supervisors. So, has anything changed beyond the point that we are now, from that initial time, and you weren't here, obviously, but when we put in place the, a procedure that, again, one that had cooperation as its basis, but certainly the independency and the transparency, things that people will call for and will hear from about today? So, I just want to be clear, did anything change in the law between 2005 and '06, and now, as it relates to that, except for obviously what brings us here today, and as those, you know, that's well-known to most people in this audience, but... And as those, you know, that's well-known to most people in this audience, but no.
No.
So the authorities were the same then as they are now, as it relates to the Board of Supervisors and the sheriff. Inspector General was put in place. We've had two people who've occupied that spot over the past 11 years. And if a situation were to occur this very moment, we had IG in place, the sheriff, he or she, whoever occupied that, could say, no, they can't enter the facility. The board could say, yes, we want somebody to go in the facility, but it'd have to be done under some cooperative arrangement. So basically, the keys remain in the hands of the duly-elected sheriff. And in order to get access, the board could not get access to the jail unless we, even though it's, you say, yes, we could, under our authorities, but in essence, we couldn't. Is that correct? Without, if there was, if we were like this, using your example, is that right?
What I'm saying is that in this nuance of co-equal branches of government, if a suspected crime scene is something so important under the Board's oversight that we need to go to court and litigate that.
Okay, so that's what you're taking into the point, to potentially have to be litigated?
Yes. Short of, short of.
Cooperation.
Cooperation.
Okay. All right. Just one, so I wasn't necessarily saying crime scene, but facility is to, you know, in custody death isn't necessarily a crime scene, but if there were other situations that warranted it. So crime scene is one thing, that could be in or out of an institution, but we're talking, what I was talking about was facility in particular.
Crime scene, an equipment closet, the situs of a complaint.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be redundant here and follow up on Supervisor Natale a bit, just to be crystal clear on what's, you know, a fairly muddied concept. So we have extremes here that we're talking about, though. You're saying that, you know, does the sheriff have to hand over the keys? Clearly, no. I don't think anybody's asking for that. But as far as access goes, the sheriff does not have the authority, this is a question. Is it true that the sheriff does not have the authority to completely block somebody without some kind of a basis, which would most likely be a basis based on security and safety? So meaning that if a majority of this board wanted the OIG to inspect a scene at the jail, that the sheriff may be able to dictate some form of time and manner but cannot just lock out, meaning that the sheriff could have a deputy accompany, because this is most likely a civilian and that's appropriate. But that, if the majority of this board said, we want the OIG to investigate a certain area within the jail, the sheriff can't just say no. Is that true?
I would agree with you. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Serna?
Thank you. So so far, the questions from Supervisor Natale and Supervisor Kennedy have been relative to the jail. We all know that the inspector general's charge is not just to provide independent review of what might happen in the jail that is the subject of his or her concern. It also includes officer-involved shooting scenes. So I assume the legal mechanism that would, that is cited here, that would ultimately permit us to go, have our IG go to the jail, would be the same legal mechanism, power of subpoena, for an officer-involved shooting scene? That's a question.
Same mechanism, yes. The Board's authority, yes.
So so understanding that and understanding the time it takes to exercise that, and given the time-sensitive nature of a deputy-involved shooting scene, how would that practically, how could it practically be implemented? In other words, if it's the will of the sheriff to restrict access of the IG to a deputy-involved shooting scene, and it's then the will of this board to exercise by its majority to have the IG be at a fresh shooting scene, how does that, how does that get implemented in a timely fashion before it's no longer a shooting scene?
Well, I would say part of this requires, you know, some, some, some working out logistics ahead of time. Some of this is, is after the event, when it's reduced to records and to writings. Public Records Act's request do supply many of the documents that the inspector general ultimately reviews as part of his process of record and inspection. As to a fleeting crime scene and his ability to be present, those are either memorandum of understanding that can be contractually agreed to. Los Angeles has both an IG ordinance and a separate MOU for the process and procedure for appearing at a crime scene. And ultimately, if this is so urgent that the Board's oversight is deemed critical to health, life, and safety, we would seek, again, judicial oversight and some kind of temporary action. That would be more fleeting, but it certainly could be if necessary.
So if the, you know, if the incident, the officer-involved shooting incident is, as you say, fleeting, and there is some disagreement from the sheriff's perspective that the IG should be granted access, at some point, it's no longer a fresh shooting scene, then the IG in that circumstance is relegated to records and accounts by whom?
Those that are pertinent to the investigation. So those would be sheriff records, department records, fiscal records?
But that, okay, that necessarily means that you'd have a built-in reliance on the department, the sheriff's deputies themselves? That's a question.
It could be, yes.
Okay.
And I would point out that in, in a complicating factor that was part of what the board, when initially put in place in 2007 and 2015, did contemplate third-party involvement such as the sheriff's unions and HIPAA and some of those other things. There's a lot of complicated pieces to get that cooperation.
So in the, in the instance of the way LA County does it, there's this added instrument of the MOU. MOU, I assume, is executed by whom? By the sheriff and the, and the chair of the board and the CEO?
The sheriff and the inspector general.
Okay, just between the sheriff and the inspector general. So in the MOU, is, do you know, in LA County's instance, does it spell out the specifics of the circumstances wherein the IG has kind of blanket access to shooting scenes?
Not blanket access, not a key, but access in that will be apprised, will be accompanied, will be allowed direct observation.
So let me, just let me ask it a little simpler. If there's an officer-involved shooting scene in LA County, what does the IG do?
Well, the IG is a, is a large staff. The IG is an attorney. The IG has other attorneys that are part of the IG staff. They have in this MOU a protocol, whereas if there's an incident, a critical incident that triggers the, the OIG's right under this MOU, they will be notified and they will be allowed access to that scene.
Okay, so that's memorialized in the MOU. Is it also somehow referenced in the, in the ordinance that you mentioned?
Just, it says that such a thing will be effectuated.
Okay. So I guess from the, from the very brief board letter that you composed here, I had initially the same exact question concern that was expressed initially by Supervisor Natale, how to reconcile one and three here in terms of access, no access keys and whatnot. But I think it becomes much more challenging, and I'm not sure if it's contained in your memo here in terms of some option or advice to this board. What happens, though, when it's a deputy-involved shooting scene? And how do we ensure, how do we codify somewhere that the IG is not going to be prohibited from going to a fresh active shooting scene? Would you agree? That's not really kind of addressed here?
Well, how to codify can be either in the, in the contract between the county and the inspector general. It can be an ordinance that has, puts it in county law, that you have such a thing and that pursuant to the authority of the board, 25303, that county officers are required to cooperate.
Okay, so that, so I'm, I'm going to make sure I'm hearing you clearly here. So you're telling us that one of the options that this board has in front of it is the prospect of developing an ordinance where the IG in the future would not be prohibited from, given his scope of, his or her scope of services, would not be prohibited from being at a deputy-involved shooting scene because of the sheriff's disposition?
Yes, you could go that extra step. Frankly, I think the contract that you have now has that power. It's just not been pushed.
Where does it, where does it reside? Now, where does it reside in what we have? I'm curious to know that.
In, in the Board's oversight pursuant to the charter and 25303, the county officers cooperate.
Okay, so if we have it now, what is the repercussion for the sheriff who already exercised clearly an intent to keep the IG from doing his job at a, at a officer-involved shooting scene? You see what I'm saying?
Well, repercussion for a dispute is, as pointed out, you know, the Board's ability to, to litigate that or, or push it further.
Okay, so I want to, again, want to make sure I'm hearing you clearly. So one of the options in front of us is litigation right now.
To the ultimate extreme, yes.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Any other questions for County Council? Thank you. Ferguson?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Brett Ferguson, the county's chief fiscal officer. At the request of your board, our office was asked to identify other counties in California that had some form of oversight exercised over the sheriff's offices. And to that end, we did survey other counties and identified five counties that have that oversight in one form or another. Those counties are Los Angeles, Santa Clara, Sonoma, Orange, and San Diego. Included in your board packet is a large spreadsheet that summarizes some of the key components of the different oversight schemes in those jurisdictions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about that, or if it's your board's pleasure, I can summarize some of the general, the general findings that we, we made as we surveyed these counties.
Let's do both. Let's have you summarize, and if we have any questions, we'll ask.
Okay. So as, thank you. So as I said, there are five counties that we looked at. Of those five counties, Sonoma County is a general law county, and the other four are all charter counties, just like Sacramento is. In four counties, over the oversight entity or entities are established by ordinance, and in one county, San Diego, it's established by charter. Two counties, Los Angeles and Santa Clara, have both a citizens' commission and an inspector general-type position or office. Two counties, Sonoma and Orange, just have an inspector general-type office, and San Diego County just has a citizens' commission, that commission has an executive director and staff. In all cases, inspector general-type positions and commission members are appointed by the Board of Supervisors, in some cases, upon the recommendation of the county administrator or executive, or in consultation with county council. For those counties that have an inspector general-type position, four are appointed staff, and one involves a contractor selected by RFP. Where citizens committees are used, members generally cannot be current county employees or peace officers, or in one case, cannot be employees of a prosecutorial agency. For inspector general-type positions, where the position is an employee, in three cases, that's Los Angeles, Sonoma, and Orange, the inspector general must be an attorney. Duties vary by jurisdiction, as you can see from this spreadsheet, and again, this is just a summary, but generally, those duties include things like monitoring sheriffs and in some cases, other departments' operations, reviewing policies, conducting audits and investigations, reviewing use of force patterns and investigations, receiving and forwarding, and in some cases, investigating citizen complaints. In some cases, the oversight role is limited to certain circumstances. For example, Mr. Vaughn mentioned the situation in Los Angeles County. There, under their code, the inspector general can only investigate specific incidents involving sheriff's personnel if requested by the sheriff, or when the inspector general determines that the sheriff has not adequately investigated an incident, and then the inspector general has to first give the sheriff another opportunity to conduct an investigation before he conducts an investigation, or when the Board of Supervisors makes a formal request to the inspector general for privileged legal advice pertaining to a claim or lawsuit. And again, the inspector general there is a lawyer. Only San Diego County provides its oversight entity, which is called the Citizens Law Enforcement Review Board, with subpoena power, and that's by charter. In the three counties where the inspector general-type position is an attorney, the county co-provides that the inspector general have attorney-client relationships with the board, or in some cases, with an advisory commission. And here are a few samples of provisions regarding access to documents or information. In Los Angeles County, the county code says the sheriff and other departments must promptly supply information and records requested by the inspector general, but the inspector general cannot compel sheriff's personnel to answer questions. The code says that the civilian oversight commission is bound by an MOU between the inspector general and the sheriff, and Mr. Vaughn spoke about that MOU, which also governs the terms of access that have been negotiated between the inspector general and the sheriff for his investigations. In Santa Clara County, the code says that the inspector general shall have access to information and records, quote, "to the greatest extent permitted by law," end quote. The quote also, the code also provides that the sheriff's office and other county departments shall promptly supply information and records requested by the inspector general. In Sonoma County, the code directs the inspector general and the sheriff to create written protocols that specify the process for providing the inspector general with documents. And in Orange County, again, where the inspector general is an attorney, the code says that the inspector general shall have the same access to documents as county council. That's a brief summary, and again, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Ferguson, Mr. Natale?
Yeah, just very quickly, so which, which county is the one, you said four of them have, or three of them have their offices created within the county structure, and one is by an RFP under contract? Which one is that?
The RFP is, uh, let's see, I believe it is Sonoma County, but I'm going to look here and confirm that. No, I'm sorry. It is.
Santa Clara is.
It is, it is Santa Clara County.
Santa Clara, I see it. Okay. All right. But the other ones then, for Los Angeles, Orange, Sonoma, and San Diego are either offices within the framework or work in hand-in-hand with a citizen's commission?
Yeah, in the case of San Diego, they have a, they have a, they have a oversight committee, a commission.
Right.
And that commission appoints an executive director who provides the, who's an attorney.
Okay. Just one other thing, on this information, I appreciate it, I think it was certainly useful and I think in getting some idea of what's done elsewhere in California. Yeah, and those that sought out this information, have they had any situations that might parallel what's brought us to this point here today?
You know, we didn't do a lot of in-depth discussions with them. We did find that there has been, there's been some disarray in a lot of these jurisdictions. For example, I believe it's Orange County, their inspector general-like position has been vacant for two years, and they just finally filled it. Santa Clara just went through a reorganization that really changed their structure. So I can't speak specifically to that, but I think there have been issues of implementation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any additional questions? Okay. Thank you, Brett. Okay. Sheriff Jones? Okay, Sheriff Jones?
We're all having problems with these things today. Mine's not working very well either. Phil's got it.
Okay, I hope we've got that out of our system now, and we can let speakers speak. Mr. Sheriff?
Good afternoon. I first want to start by thanking those members of the Board that have worked diligently to try and resolve the situation, to come up with a solution that works. As you know, it was I who came to the Board several years ago and asked for the reinstatement of the inspector general position, and I still truly believe that the inspector general, if properly chosen, can enhance greatly the sheriff's department. I specifically want to thank those members of the Board that have supported me in the sheriff's office throughout the course of these many hearings. I want to address specifically Sergeant Natoli and Sergeant Kennedy, although you've brought criticism, on occasion, it has always been accompanied by alternatives and alternative solutions, or potential solutions, and for that, I thank you. Supervisor Kennedy, I reviewed the language that you've proposed in preparation for this hearing. The major difference between the language of your proposal versus prior versions is it appears to take the sheriff completely out of consideration as to what the inspector general does, or the direction that he or she goes in their investigations. It also appears to take the sheriff out of consideration as being a party to the agreement, and as such, it's like many other agreements that come before the Board of Supervisors, it's an agreement among supervisors. As such, I really don't have any standing to object to the language, but more importantly, I thought it worthwhile to tell you, I don't have any objection to the language in that version. And if it's the collective will of the Board at the end of this to, to impose that language, then I will look forward to continuing to work, continuing the dialogue, to work towards effectuating the intent of that language. But regardless what happens with that language, or any language at the hearing, I want to make sure you were aware that I personally appreciate your willingness to stand up as a leader and come up with a potential solution, at least to this hearing. I appreciate that. I also want to thank the vocal minority that showed up, that today is, are the silent majority, rather, that showed up today, which is not silent, that committed to showing up today to express their support of the men and women of the sheriff's department, of the independence of an elected sheriff and the office of sheriff, and the democratic principle that an elected official should be free to do the people's business without undue outside influence. To tell you the truth, I really don't know what the purpose of this hearing is, or what its outcomes will be, but I think there's a few points I'd like to make as you contemplate what this hearing's going to be. First, it's been described that I have been endeavoring to strip away the independent oversight authority of the inspector general. First and foremost, the inspector general never was independent oversight, never had the ability, was never intended, and never had the authority. In fact, that position never had autonomous, independent investigative authority. Whoever tells you anything different is simply not being truthful. My efforts over the past some weeks have been to try and modify and adjust and shore up the language of the contract to more closely reflect, reflect what the inspector general's role always has been. But heck, if you want to...
You locked him out.
If you want to go back to the original language of the IG, that's fine, don't care, but I think we've seen that with not the right inspector general, it can be a dangerous lack of being concise in the language. I've been described as rogue, authoritarian, a dictator, a mini-Trump.
Racist.
Oh yeah, okay, racist, we'll add that to the list.
Office.
All because I won't voluntarily allow independent oversight of the sheriff's department. This seems strange to me. No other agency in the region, not the Sacramento Police Department, no other sheriff's department in the state, has oversight in the type that's being advocated for here. So is that to suggest that all the other law enforcement leaders, all the other sheriffs in the state are rogue, authoritarian, and dictators, potentially racist? Clearly not. It's just me. And it's just because an irresponsible and unaccountable newspaper keeps saying it over and over and over again. Six times in the last week, as a matter of fact. I've also heard people say, what's the big deal with independent oversight? If you have nothing to hide, why do you care? Why is independent oversight a big deal? Well, it is a big deal. First of all, it's a giant leap backward for democracy when you strip elected officials of their discretion. Can any, can anybody reasonably suggest that the governor, a mayor, a county supervisor should subject themselves to independent influence and oversight? Of course not, because they are accountable to and elected by the people, as I am. It is also a giant leap backward for public safety when the delivery of law enforcement services is politicized.
You'll all get your turn to speak. If you could just remain quiet until then, you'll have your opportunity to say what you think.
Would the Board of Supervisors suggest placing any members of you as the inspector general? Would any of you consider that? Of course not, because you have no ability to decide with, whether what we are doing in the sheriff's department is proper, or the actions we are taking are proper. For that very same reason, control of the sheriff's department cannot be vested in or influenced by outside political influence. And speaking of the effectiveness of your sheriff's department, do you know that we've reduced crime within any other agency in the region?
The law, you too.
Do you know that we're the most technologically advanced, ethnically diverse agency in the region? Do you know that we've created more youth and community programs than any other agency?
Where.
Do you know that we give out, give back millions of dollars to the Board of Supervisors to fund your other priorities every year? Do you know that we, we have an almost 80% satisfaction rating in the communities that we serve?
Excuse me, please, please let him speak, you will have your opportunity when your name is called. Thank you.
By every measurable metric, the sheriff's department and the women and men who work for it deliver the highest quality of public safety to the largest number of folks, all while being the least staffed. So I can't help but wonder, where are we falling short? By what metric, by what measure are we not achieving? Or maybe it's just me, or maybe it's political, maybe both. So as I close out my comments, I want to return to where I started and thank those of you on the Board who truly care about finding a solution to this, who try, have worked, as I have, over the last several weeks, to try and find a solution that makes the sheriff's department better. I can tell you that even though I'm the one who came to the Board and asked if it be reinstated, I don't want it to fail. I don't want it to fail because we have not acted in the way we're expected to act, or done what we are expected to do, and that is come together and reach an agreement that strikes an appropriate and legal balance between the independence and effectiveness of an inspector general and the independence of a sheriff who is elected by the people to take care of over 2,100 employees and provide public safety to over 1.5 million people in Sacramento County, free from outside influence. I thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Okay, thank you all, thank you, thank you, you can be seated.
Madam Chair, before I step down, I'd like, I'd request that you would recognize former Sheriff John McGinnis to provide some context on this position.
Charlie.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, thank you very much for allowing me an opportunity to speak. I'd like to offer some historical perspective on how this inspector general position was established. I'd like to give you a little bit of a historical perspective even before that, to share with you, I know all of you, but I'd like to share some of my background and experience and some of the decisions that I made along the way.
Excuse me, Sheriff McGinnis, this is part of Sheriff Jones' presentation. Sheriff McGinnis is here at his request to explain how the inspector general position got started, so I think it's good, I think it's good information.
Boy, the order's not as tight! The violation of parliamentary rules!
Well, you'll get your turn, you'll get your turn later. Sheriff McGinnis, please go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. During the course of my career, while assigned to the...
I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Please be quiet.
During the course of my career, while assigned as CSI in the homicide bureau, I had occasion to investigate well over 150 shootings. That includes officer-involved shootings, murders, attempted murders, and along the way, I found myself in a position where I took cases to the district attorney recommending prosecution of peace officers, both within this jurisdiction and outside this jurisdiction. And in fact, in one case where there was a perceived conflict on the part of the district attorney's office, went to the attorney general and worked diligently with the deputy attorney general in the effort to bring justice to a case where I felt it was necessary. I offer that as an illustration of the fact that I do not suffer a tendency to turn a blind eye to law enforcement activity. In fact, on the contrary, I have absolute evidence to the, to the contrary. Now, long come, about a dozen years ago, when we established inspector general position, and I worked at great length with Supervisor Natoli at the time, to interview a number of people to find the right fit for that job. A couple of things were absolutely necessary. First of all, it had to be a person who was intellectually qualified, philosophically and ideologically predisposed to do the best job they could, to be an enhancement to the quality of service delivered by the sheriff's department. It was also necessary, and is still necessary, that there be an agreement on the part of the Deputy Sheriff's Association as to the person to hold that position. As your counsel will no doubt attest, the sheriff does not have the authority to unilaterally compromise or waive the, the privilege entitled to members, public safety officers, to maintain their personnel records, their compelled statements, other things about their activities as confidential. So it was in that spirit that we actually reached an agreement with the Deputy Sheriff's Association. It was one of mutual trust, to bring this effort forward, to do the best job we could for you and your constituents, and it worked rather effectively. In the, in the intervening years, there's been changes, obviously. That person went on to other things, and a new inspector general was, was chosen. There has been a breakdown of the trust in that position. I have read the report proffered by the inspector general, I've also read the district attorney's report, to include the observations and commentary from the expert retained by the district attorney to help make the filing decision on this case. The DA's report to include that expert's opinion, and the inspector general's report are completely and totally at odds, they're mutually exclusive of one another. You cannot find that each of them, or both of them, are correct. One is, and frankly, one is not. I would put that independent expert, use-of-force expert, up against anybody in the field. And by the way, today, I make my living as a person who does litigation consulting for these very kinds of cases. So I've testified, I've testified for plaintiffs, I've testified for defense, I've been retained by law firms representing both. So it's not as though there's a lack of ability to understand the nuance associated with a given case. The trust in this relationship has eroded, it has broken down. This position, in its current form, as it has been with this inspector general, can no longer exist. It is time to look in another direction. I do believe there is a benefit to be had from having somebody occupy that position, this one is compromised. I also have read the, the annual report, and I'm looking for some substance in the annual report in terms of things going on in the sheriff's department, not just officer-involved shootings, not just in-casused deaths, but the totality of what the organization does, some of the things Sheriff Jones just mentioned. That doesn't appear anywhere in that annual report. Why not? That's an absolutely critical function of the department. The extent to which diversity, which was a stated goal years back, has been achieved in the sheriff's department, is laudable, that should be recognized. The extent to which crime has been reduced in the sheriff's department's jurisdiction, while the trend is going in the opposite direction, the majority of other counties and communities in the state of California is worthy of note, that's not referenced. So I believe you have a, a situation here that has taken on a life of its own, frankly, frankly through politics, and the politicization of this particular position. That should never be the case, should never be the case. Among the things that were considered, the language that was included, when Supervisor Natoli and I first worked on this effort, it did not include oversight. It did not include independent investigation, as the sheriff pointed out. That doesn't exist anywhere in this region, to the best of my knowledge, not anywhere in the state. It does allow an opportunity for information to be gleaned from the sheriff's department and to be shared with the communities they serve. I heard a lot of conversation about access to crime scenes, and I will tell you, as a, as a person charged with many years with the investigation of homicides, and the integrity of crime scenes, you don't want to open that up to a broad number of people having access to crime scenes. Typically, the supervisors, managers, the sheriff himself, they don't go inside a homicide scene, because anybody who goes into a scene of that nature, brings something in with them when they arrive, and takes something with them when they leave, unintentionally, but that's the nature of, of physical evidence, that integrity of that scene has to be absolutely above all else. It will compromise the ability of the district attorney to prosecute a case if that evidence is contaminated. So as you look to options going forward, I strongly encourage you to, to, to not be overbroad in terms of how you establish language providing for access to a crime scene. That would be detrimental to justice, it should never happen. Finally, I will thank you for your time, and, and I strongly, by the way, just, just to make it abundantly clear, it's no secret that I am a supporter of the sheriff. In full disclosure, in the spirit, in the spirit of full disclosure, I also sat on the interview panel for Rick Brazil when he was appointed chief of police. I have also endorsed and contributed to each of your campaigns to get you where you are, with the exception of Supervisor Kennedy, who I've never met until today.
No, you have not.
So, so it's not as though, it's not as though, in spite of that history, there's not an opportunity for objectivity, candor, and honesty. Again, the, the need to be honest with what this has been is absolutely critical. I applaud you for your actions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff McGinnis, any questions for him?
Thank you.
No, thanks, John.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to go into public comment now, and I have about 150 speakers so far.
Madam Chair, I'm trying, this thing is just not working today.
I know, I've...
It's acting up too, so...
I've mentioned it to the computer people, our, our screens are not working out here, Metro Cable. So, I wanted to mention, since the majority of the speakers seem to be from the city of Sacramento, that you know the difference between a chief of police and a sheriff. A chief of police is appointed by the city manager and city council and reports to them, he's an employee. A sheriff is elected by the people, and they are his manager, and that is a distinct difference if you're, as I understand that...
Do you follow the promiscuous procedures? Do you really want to give people a lesson in that democracy?
Well, sometimes, civility certain. Those aren't working. That's not working. So, we're going to start out with two minutes, and we may...
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I apologize for interrupting.
Did you want to speak?
Yeah, I don't have any choice, because of the technology.
Our computers aren't working up here. Mr. Kennedy?
Sheriff McGinnis still here? Did he leave?
No, he just walked out.
Well, that's great, okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
We'll listen anyway.
Maybe he can hear? No?
Probably close enough, getting back.
Okay.
Here he comes, here he comes.
There he goes. Okay, Sheriff, if I could have a question, Sheriff McGinnis? If I could have a question, thank you.
Just like the old days, Sheriff McGinnis.
Thank you, sir, thank you, sorry about that, we were having technical difficulties up here. I, I have, you know, one, I need one point of clarification. You are, you know, philosophically opposed, or professionally, to your experience, you're opposed to having someone like an IG go to crime scenes, for the reasons that you said, okay?
No, not at all, but, but... But the idea of establishing a blanket statement to say that they will have entree to a crime scene, where you have blood spatter evidence, you have DNA evidence, you have discarded evidence at the scene, you have things that have been left, the signature sometime of a person who has committed a crime. So to be overbroad in terms of that authority, no, by all means, go to this crime scene, have an opportunity to see what you can. It's not uncommon for the sheriff or his staff to go to a crime scene, stand outside the yellow tape, because the integrity of that scene is so important. Eventually, you can get a look and see. All of that is photographed and video-recorded now, so there's an opportunity to review that after the fact. But to go too far with something that would compromise that integrity of that scene, I think is problematic.
Okay, so in the past, and not just in our jurisdictions, but other jurisdictions I looked at throughout the state that employ some kind of oversight-
Yeah.
-OIG or whatever, you know, we've always had this position as on-call, you know, to actually come out, to be on the on-call list to come out to these scenes.
Right.
You're still supportive of that?
Absolutely. But again, if it gives such a strong level of authority to a person to actually violate the integrity of that scene, it creates a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Just, you know, one other observation on this. We look at the fundamental issue associated with this particular shooting incident, it's mental health. And I can't help but notice that there looks to be about $150 million in unspent money in the county of Sacramento from the state mental health efforts. Perhaps, I know that's a topic for another day-
You and I can debate that all day, but I'm not going to.
But I understand that. But maybe that's an area that should be considered.
Excuse me, please be quiet.
Please.
Anything else?
Thank you for answering my questions.
My pleasure. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
So I'm going to read our first three speakers. If you would get yourself to the aisle, so we can move along. At first is Pat Dilevson on Ironwood, Mac Worthy, and then Amar Sherghil. Is Pat here?
Maybe outside.
Then Mac Worthy? And I apologize in advance if I mispronounce someone's name. These are not always the easiest to read. Mr. Worthy?
Good afternoon, pal. And for my first address, I support Jones 100% from the day he went on the first time towards him, and for you explaining the difference in appointing and being elected. And 90% of the people here don't understand that. That's why they oppose. If they come down and understand that, you don't want nobody fangling through your file unless they got a right to, and Jones had that authority. Now, if anything over there been in a complaint, I think you should go to court and get a documentation from a judge to go into this man's file. That's an elected position. Now, if I don't want to come and go through your file, Kennedy's office said, "Well, I got a complaint, I want to check the file." No, he had that same authority. If you come in more of that and come with a law, I support law and order 100%. You got a lot of garbage here you're going to hear today, it's not irrelevant to law and order. You're going to hear that stuff today, you got to close your ear to it, further study, I will sit down with you in a different type of environment and deal with Jones' issues that this city faced. This city sitting on a time bomb. Oversight, 90% of the people here don't even know what a oversight is. They don't know about that, oversight. I owned the business for 44 years. To come in and check my stuff, you better bring a documentation from the court. And this is the same thing this man's position here. If you understand that and sit down and say, "Look, we want to teach the people, there's a lot of teaching needs to be done here in the city. A lot of teachings pertain to how law enforcement operates." Let them know that is a law. You can't stand up in no courthouse and tell the judge to give that man more time. That's illegal. Now, the city let that thing, oversight, come in, which is never will do nothing for the police department in the city. It is garbage. It is garbage. Furthermore, this type of thing here goes back to sanctuary cities, and I'm probably going to be the one to testify on the law of sanctuary city. This is some of the stuff they're trying to dig up. You may go back and look at some stuff here where you fangled through a file, go to the states of Texas and Louisiana where you found some cases been turned over. Did this person go into somebody's file and found something and gave it to an attorney to make $40 million for a person being in jail? I can go to some under lieutenant's system, right here, to show you something in county jail, 30 days over time.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Thank you.
What would you be looking for when you go into this man's file?
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Amar Sherghil? Sherghil, Amar? Then Tanya Faison, then Vice Mayor Steve Hansen, and then Oscar Kurnt. Mr. Sherghil?
Let me start by saying quite clearly that Black Lives Matter.
Yes!
My name's Amar Sherghil. I am a father of three, an attorney, and appointee of this board on the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee. That is an independent oversight body that looks at the county employees and ensures that the county employees look like the people of Sacramento. Because I believe in that role, independent oversight, I also believe in the role of the Inspector General to provide independent oversight of the Sheriff's Department. Now, we've heard that there may be litigation involved that may take hundreds of thousands of dollars and many years to resolve. But if the sheriff is exercising what I consider to be a capricious and unreasonable manner, locking out the Inspector General from the Sheriff's Department, then I submit that there is a role for this body to act outside of the box and to work with the Inspector General, to create a list of documents and witnesses that they believe need to be used in oversight in any specific case, and demand that those county employees, those county documents, appear here in front of the supervisory board so they can be reviewed with the Inspector General. Because if the county cannot go to the Sheriff's Department, if the Inspector General can't go to the Sheriff's Department, then the mountain must come to Mohammed. And those documents must be brought here, and you review them here until some other agreement is reached. And what I'd say finally is that there was an agreement reached by the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department gave its word to this board that they would follow that agreement regarding the Inspector General. They do not have the moral authority to reject that. Sure, they can stand on an unreasonable, capricious legal grounds, but the moral authority is clear. They made an agreement, they should keep their word until a new agreement is reached with the people that are on the other side of the agreement. That's what we do. We keep our word, and I expect the Sheriff's Department to keep their word. And if they don't, if they do not act like a responsible public servant, then they shouldn't be paid like a responsible public servant. If they can't keep their word, then this board should exercise their supervisory authority and review the salary of the sheriff, not the department, but the sheriff himself. He gave his word through the Sheriff's Department to his predecessors, he needs to keep that word, or the supervisory board needs to reevaluate his salary.
Thank you, Mr. Sherghil.
Thank you.
Tanya Faison, Vice Mayor Steve Hansen, Oscar Kurnt, and then Ryan Ruth McDonald.
So this Sheriff's Department has refused to release requested information to the families that their deputies have killed and abused, and that includes Adrian Lud, Ryan Ellis, Michael McIntyre, Trish Hill, and now Marshall Miles. Deputies have been caught forcing inmates at the Sacramento County Jail to drink toilet water. Deputies have thrown flash grenades in inmate cells. The Sacramento Sheriff's Department has failed to respond to reports of female inmates being raped by deputies. Instead of fighting, Scott Jones settled in a sexual harassment case lodged against him. Scott Jones' Sheriff's Department arrests black people three and a half times higher than their white counterparts. The Sacramento Sheriff's Department has costed the county over $17 million in lawsuits for excessive force, rape, torture, and death. Scott Jones has direct ties to the nationally documented white supremacist group called FAIR. Jones and his department were caught illegally listening to over 500 cellphone calls with a stingray and without a warrant or court order. And it's been documented through research for surveilling, that they're surveilling people through social media currently. Jones has a relationship with ICE that has profited, Jones' department has profited off the department's undocumented, or the deportation of undocumented people. The Sheriff's Department has denied family leave to women and disability accommodations to disabled employees. Acting unprofessionally, Jones has sent letters to community leaders attacking their character. Acting unprofessionally, Jones has attacked community and media on social media using dog whistle language to rally his base. Acting unprofessionally, Jones has used news and media outlets to blame the black community for the tragic loss of a deputy, while calling on his base to confront black community and organizations while we push for transparency and accountability. Jones' Sheriff's Department has been sued for excessive use of isolation and solitary confinement in the county jail. Jones' Sheriff's Department has been sued for inadequate mental, physical, and dental health care of the Sacramento County inmates. The recent suffocation of Marshall Miles by Sacramento deputies while Miles told deputies repeatedly that he could not breathe, they did not get him medical help, but instead deputies piled up on top of his upper body, causing him to die while in custody. Lastly, the Sheriff's Department, the very first time that they've ever released a video, they released a video yesterday for Marshall Miles while shared with the media and not with the family.
Thank you, Ms. Faison.
The family was not notified, the face was not blurred, and this is why our sheriff needs oversight.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Steve Hansen? Oscar Kurnt, then Ruth McDonald, and Red Baines.
Well, I thank you, Board. I'm going to tell you, it's the first time that I've been here to a board meeting. I've had some interactions with Mr. Natoli's office. I want to thank you, you handled those issues very well.
Excellent.
I support Scott Jones. I voted for Scott Jones. I voted for our DA. I believe that oversight and any considerations of any problems that the Sheriff's Department may have should be to the DA's office, the state police, California Department, you know, Highway Patrol. I think that this course of adding another layer of bureaucracy in our law enforcement undermines my vote and the community's vote. We put a man in charge that is highly educated, very articulate, speaks extremely well. And by the way, I don't understand how you stand for this incivil acts and screaming out. That just is disturbing. That's not democracy. It's rude and it's uncivil. I want to say that I voted for Scott. I know before that, he is a highly intelligent man, very articulate. Sheriff McGinnis, the same thing. I think that he answered and gave his ideas to you very clearly. There was no hem-haw, no gray coloring outside of the lines. He answered the questions correctly, much better than the counsel did for county. I think you undermine the Sheriff's Department, you put second-guessing in all the officers. They know that Scott will stand behind them. I'd like to see any of you face a gun. I'd like to see any of you face life and danger. So when you are at that point, and a sheriff deputy or a police officer makes a decision, it's a split-second decision, knowing that his boss is going to protect him, try to make sure that he did everything correctly, and if he didn't, he'd be held accountable, he'd be dismissed. You guys, we had two deputies, Sacramento City officers, shot. They did a felony stop, well-planned, well-coordinated. I asked, I had the opportunity to talk to Sheriff McGinnis, and he told me, I said, "How could that happen?" They know this guy was probably armed, they know all this was happening, they had their guns drawn on a felony stop, the guy got out of the car, shot two of our officers, then we returned fire. I asked, "How could that happen?" Because those officers lost confidence that they know that their life's in danger, but they hesitated, they paused. Even with all the training they had, they paused and they got shot.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kurnt. Thank you.
Thank you, Oscar.
Thank you. Ryan, Ruth McDonald, Red Baines, and then Don Jones.
Good afternoon. My name is Ruth McDonald. I'm a retired physician in Supervisor Kennedy's district, and I thank you for your memo, sir. I support a strong outside Inspector General, and I support law enforcement, and I respect this board. Outside independent review makes organizational processes stronger, especially when a critical incident has occurred. This is true in aviation, where expert outside review is performed by the National Transportation Safety Board, in medicine, where formal conferences engage in depth and adverse outcome review, and should be true for law enforcement in Sacramento County as well. These review processes make organizations stronger and further trust in the integrity of these important public entities. Thank you.
Thank you. Red Baines? Then Don Jones, then Councilman Guerra.
Thank you. My name is Red Baines, and I am in Supervisor Serna's district, and I'm here today to say that I really think that we need a strong and clear checks and balances in this county. I would hate to see our county go to something like what Arizona did with the sheriff that was run amok there. We have to have these balances. This is not anything to say against any officer or the sheriff, but this is what I feel is important to our community, that we have these checks and balances. And I know Rick Brazil, he's a man that's incomparable with what he thinks and what he says. He's worked, he's dedicated his life to this city, and I think that this is the kind of thing that we need action on, and I hope that you all will do that and make sure that we have the checks and balances that are needed in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Don Jones? Then Eric Guerra, then Christine Bailey, and Michael Cook.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm here to support law enforcement, the men and women of the Sheriff's Department, and the sheriff who is standing up for them and us. The DA's report is out, and the real truth has been revealed. Everything was legal and justified. The deputies did what they were supposed to do and prevented innocent citizens from being hurt. The IG report was released over three months ago, and Brazil's incomplete analysis and vague conclusion has been repudiated by the DA's analysis-
Excuse me.
-and an independent use-of-force expert. No IG report has ever been released prior to the DA's report. Why was this one released early? No good has come of it, and all it did was sell the bee and create a three-month negative news cycle against the sheriff and the men and women who serve and protect us. But maybe that was the goal all along. This whole mess stinks. Brazil said before that he should not even complete a report until he sees the DA's report. Now he says that he has done it before a few times. Not true. He has told two different versions of why he released the report early. Emails from a board member to Brazil and a letter from the sheriff to the board are leaked to the bee. Why the deception? Why the lies? It sure looks like petty partisan politics and a power play. And it plays into the false narrative against law enforcement, and it has no business in this county. It's bad for those of us who just want to be safe on the streets and in our homes. There are no political parties in county politics. Your job is to support the sheriff and make sure he has everything he needs to make sure we are safe. You and your Inspector General forced the sheriff into an impossible situation. He chose to stand for the citizens of Sacramento County and the men and women who work for him and protect us, and he brought this all to a head. Now it's your job to do the right thing. Get a competent Inspector General. Get an Inspector General who's truly independent. We need an Inspector General who can be respected by both the community and the men and women of the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Christine Bailey? Christine Bailey? There we go. Sorry, didn't see you coming down. Michael Cook, and then Vicki Stanfill.
Good afternoon.
If you'll just stand between the two microphones and not hold them, that's probably, we get the best sound that way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Christine Bailey, and my representative is Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Frost reached out and conducted a Facebook poll the last few days to see what folks thought of this issue, and 57% of those responding said that they did not support the sheriff's position on this issue. I'm a member of that, I'm a member-
Excuse me. Please be quiet and let other people speak.
I'm a member of that 57%, and I believe that we need a strong and independent Inspector General that has, who has access as needed to be able to do his or her job. The reason I think this is necessary is to build trust among members of our community. We need facts that everyone can trust in order to build trust in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Cook? Then Vicki Stanfill, and then Jessica Porton. Mr. Cook.
Thank you for conducting the meeting today to take care of all this. I'm here today to support Sheriff Jones. For weeks, my family, friends, and I have been disgusted by what we have read, seen, and heard with the biased, unprofessional, and disrespectful rhetoric and contempt directed at Sheriff Jones. These repulsive and undermining actions came from Supervisor Serna, the Sacramento Bee, the Sacramento News &amp; Review, the ACLU, and others inside and outside of our county. I ask all of the board of supervisors to give your support to Sheriff Jones. It is imperative, if there is to be an inspector general position, that it can only be principled and not divisive or undermining, as has happened recently. Sheriff Jones and the deputies of Sacramento deserve much better than we have seen and heard these last few weeks. The sheriff and deputies must not be distracted from the selfish and dangerous job they perform for the safer protection of all of us in Sacramento County. We don't need any more self-serving rhetoric. We don't need any more political theater, or political grandstanding, or dramatic soundbites, or Sacramento newspapers' biased, contemptuous, and self-serving opinion attacks. We need the board of supervisors to support Sheriff Jones and our brave Sacramento County deputies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Vicki Stanfill. Then Jessica Porton, and Mary Pat Martell. Ms. Stanfill.
Good afternoon. My name is Vicki Stanfill. I live in the county area of Sacramento that is served by the Sheriff's Department, and I'm here to support Sheriff Jones. I've had the privilege over the last almost 10 years of spending quite a bit of time with the officers in patrol investigations, both jail facilities, and I've personally observed their consistent professionalism. They're doing a tremendous job of protecting the county of Sacramento and partnering with the outlying agencies, and to suggest otherwise is foolishness. They are appreciated and respected by the majority of citizens of Sacramento County, with the exception of a very vocal but very small anti-law enforcement community. Sheriff Jones is doing an incredible job, leading the department under current challenging conditions. He has a huge task of dealing with the ongoing budget issues and the constant anti-law enforcement rhetoric in the local media. This negative rhetoric further fuels the flames of animosity for those that do not appreciate or take into consideration what our law enforcement endures and deals with on a daily basis for all of our safety. Additionally, as a former law enforcement officer myself, I would not want anyone without the training and experience to be second-guessing our law enforcement.
Excuse me, Ms. Stanfill. Could you please quiet it down so we can hear the speaker? Thank you.
Law enforcement should not be part of a political agenda. This jeopardizes our officer's safety and the safety of our community. And while the current inspector general has an extensive background in the field, his defined role was only to observe the department's practices and suggest improvements. This does not mean that the department is without accountability. Again, I've observed firsthand accountability within the office and within the Sheriff's Department enough to know that they do an excellent job in that area. And most certainly, the voters of Sacramento County, along with the DA, the grand jury, and the Department of Justice if needed, provide additional accountability necessary to hold them to a higher standard. It would be wonderful if the voters of Sacramento County that elected Sheriff Jones could do so and support him without the constant negativity and criticism in the media towards those that are here to serve and protect and keep us all safe. Thank you.
Ms. Stanfill. Jessica Porton. And Mary Pat Martell. Jessica is first.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Then Phyllis Sylvia.
Hello. My name is Jessica Porton. I am a homeowner in North Highlands, where I live with my husband and our two small children. I personally have had nothing but positive interactions with police officers in my lifetime. My grandfather was an officer of the California Highway Patrol. Since purchasing my home in North Highlands, I've been a victim of crime no less than three times, and it is with this lived experience and personal family ties to law enforcement that I stand before you and assert that policing and incarceration are the most ineffective and least cost-efficient way to address social problems like crime, substance abuse, homelessness, and, and I, I, sorry.
Take a deep breath.
We, I'm not the only one that holds these opinions. The American Public Health Association has recently released a statement that declares law enforcement violence as a public health issue. They have called upon local, state, and national agencies to begin systematically divesting from the systems of policing and incarceration, and move those funds to what science tells us are more effective methods of addressing societal problems. That is early intervention and prevention. That is early childhood education. That is community development and reinvestment into the most vulnerable populations, the same vulnerable populations that are disproportionately affected by violence from police officers. I recently gave a presentation to the Sacramento County Behavioral Health Services Advisory Group. Kennedy and Natoli were both there. I'm not sure if you remember me. There was an officer of the Sheriff's Department there, and she also gave a presentation. She spoke for about 10 minutes about what the Sheriff's Department is doing to address mental health. She spoke for about 10 minutes about the hours that the officers receive in training, and while it seemed really beautiful on the surface, I think it exemplifies how out of touch with reality the Sheriff's Department is. How many hours of training officers receive is not a quality metric. The diversity of a police department is not a quality metric. Reductions in excessive use of force, reductions in recidivism rates, reductions in officer-involved shootings, and in-custody deaths, those are quality metrics that we need to be measuring. And when the Sheriff's Department is responsible for defining and measuring whether transgressions like those have taken place, there is a clear conflict of interest. So if you cannot-
Thank you, Ms. Porton.
Thank you.
Mary Pat Martell, then Phyllis Sylvia, and then Bernard Marx. Ms. Martell.
Yes, I'm here to speak to the issue that is actually currently at hand. I am here to ask the board to please support the sheriff. The sheriff and his deputies cannot be subjected to the political whims and ambitions of politicians and anti-law enforcement groups to further their personal agenda. Who provides oversight of the board of supervisors? The people at election time, just like they do for the duly-elected sheriff. I don't want any elected sheriff or his officers who are supposed to be protecting me, my family, and the whole community constantly looking over their shoulder and hesitating in their duty, wondering about the next unwarranted attack. These anti-law enforcement narratives are false and ridiculous on their face. Officers do not go through their shift looking for the opportunity to hunt, to hurt, or kill for no reason. Law enforcement is often a last resort call in an unresolvable situation, yet they answer those calls. Sometimes these calls end very tragically, but that doesn't mean the officers actually did anything wrong. I don't want to be hurt or killed because officers hesitate to do what is necessary and what they are trained for because of an out-of-control political agenda, or quite frankly, because of bullying from groups masquerading as community service organizations. I am asking the board-
Excuse me. Please be quiet. Go ahead, Ms. Martell.
I am asking the board to resist this intimidation, have courage, and let the sheriff and his officers do their job. Follow a reasonable IG model and get politics out of county government. Thank you.
Thank you. Phyllis Sylvia. And then Bernard Marx, and then Helen Johnson. So, Ms. Sylvia.
Can you repeat the last name to the last group? I think I might have heard my name over the shirt.
Phyllis Sylvia, Bernard Marx, and Helen Johnson.
Hi, I'm Phyllis Sylvia. I'm here to support Sheriff Scott Jones. When I registered to vote in 1972, I did it because I believed in a democracy, and I believed that my vote counted. I voted for Scott Jones as sheriff because I believed in the job he could do, and he is doing the job that I voted for him to do. Now you're telling us that our vote doesn't count, so then we are no longer a democracy. I think it's time that we step back and quit micromanaging law enforcement and let them do the job they were hired to do. When we start saying that an elected official that your constituents voted for can't do his job that somebody else has to oversee him, then I believe that maybe all of you need to be overseen too, because then we're no longer a democracy when you don't allow us to do that. And I want to say one more thing. My brother gave his life to the county of Sacramento. He was shot and killed in the line of duty. So it's not just other people that are being killed. Law enforcement, every day they step out there is putting their life on the line, and nobody recognizes that. And I have one other thing to say, and that's thank you, Scott Jones, for doing your job and doing what we've elected you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Bernard Marx, then Helen Johnson, and Independence Taylor. Mr. Marx.
Members of the board, my name is Bernard Marx. I reside here since 1954 in this county, in the district of Mr. Natoli. The reason I'm here is because I'm a disabled veteran. I served in the United States Army. I served in Europe. I served in Korea. But what I saw as a soldier, I equated to police, because you hand somebody a gun that does not give him the authority to shoot. Especially when somebody is running away. If I were the one having a gun, and somebody hits me on the head with a stone, and I retaliate by chasing him with my gun, and I shoot him, I would be on trial for murder. Where is the compromise? Where is this wherein a person who has reelected the sheriff objects to have checks and balance? This is what we're talking about. We're talking about transparency. We're talking about checks and balance. The sheriff himself, if he gets a ticket, to give you a comparison, he lights his own ticket, and then he's going to be his own policeman, and then he's going to take and tear up the ticket. That's what he's doing. This is the kind of sheriff you want? I don't think so. I think what we need is an independent individual who in this county can go ahead and prevail because the law says you, our elected officials, are in the same boat. You also have the accountability to us who elected you, and I hope you have an independent counsel. Thank you for kindness.
Helen Johnson here. Okay, Helen Johnson, then Independence Taylor, then Betty Williams, and Aliyan Murphy Hassan. Ms. Johnson.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and the rest of the board of supervisors. I am here to show my support for Sheriff Scott Jones, and I emphasize "my sheriff" because I voted for him. He is doing exactly what I voted him to do. He is representing us, the community, who want law and order. There is oversight. There is transparency. And you talk about transparency, then why wasn't there transparency from Mr. Brazil when he went out of lanes and did what he did with his own personal agenda? He is one of the few who isn't cowed down by the special interest groups, who have no business or training in law enforcement, and who try to force their anti-police agenda. I want a sheriff who is not a puppet for the few, which is Scott Jones. He is the people's sheriff, regardless of what others may say. He stands up for what is right and for his department and his deputies. I dare each and every one of you to stand in the day and life of a deputy or any law enforcement officer. I do. I try, try to be disrespected, cursed, spit on, and challenged every day, and say, "You must be a stone and have no reaction," but yet protect us. Just remember that. Blue lives also matter. I support my brothers and sisters in blue, and I want my sheriff to continue taking care of his department and his deputies, and as he sees fit. Again, remember what the county council said. You guys are co-equal branches of power. Don't overexceed your lane. He needs to do what he needs to do, just like what you need to do. You guys work for us also. As a citizen of this county, I support Sheriff Scott Jones.
Thank you for coming in from Foothill Farms. Then Betty Williams, and then Aliyan Murphy Hassan.
Aliyan Murphy Hassan. Betty is ill, and she's probably on her way, but she's coming and she's going to be-
You're Ms. Murphy Hassan?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
I'm here on behalf of the NACP, Greater Sacramento NACP. I am the first VP, and I'm representing over 1,200 members. NACP supports law enforcement. We support law enforcement that is transparent, that is accountable, and that breeds trust to the community. We support law enforcement that when the community speak, doesn't leave the chambers because he doesn't want to hear what we had to say. It's interesting to me that at the last board meeting, Scott Jones indicated that he could work with Brazil, that he had trust for Brazil. Now, all of a sudden, there's no trust there. Where's that coming from? Is that coming from insecurity on his part? It's definitely not showing the community that he has the best interests of the community at heart, especially when he couldn't stay here to even hear what we had to say. Throw a rock, death sentence. Run away, get shot in the back. Go into the county jail, don't come out alive. Sure, they released videotape. Thirty-six minutes of videotape. There was some elapsed time. If we had an oversight-independent person, maybe we wouldn't, maybe we'd have seen all of the video and not portions of the video. Board of supervisors, do the right thing. I think I said this last time. Support the community. Support fairness. Support people coming home alive. Yeah, it hurts me to have to stand here to say, plead for people's lives, and that's what we're doing today, pleading for people's lives. Yes, we need law enforcement, but we need law enforcement that is fair. We need law enforcement that is accountable. We need law enforcement that is trusted in the community. Kids see policemen now, and they run away. Not two, a way. How is that a way to live in a community? That is no way to live in a community. I'm asking you again to do the right thing, support the IG position. Brazil has proven that he has done a wonderful job because he took the politics out of it. He reported what he saw. With his experience and background, you can't erase that. You shouldn't erase that. It should be your guide to what's fair, not at the whim of a sheriff who sticks his finger in his mouth and say, "I'm taking my ball and going home." We cannot tolerate that any longer. We really cannot.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy Hassan.
Thank you.
Independence Taylor, Betty Williams, then Carly Brannan. Independence Taylor, I've called- Independence Taylor, I've called several times, that person must have left. Betty Williams? Betty Williams here? Okay, Carly Brannan, then Christian Rack? Okay.
I hear a lot of people coming up here...
I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself?
I'm Carly Brannan.
Carly Brannan, okay, thank you.
(INAUDIBLE).
Go ahead.
I'd like my five seconds back, please.
I'll give you an extra eight seconds.
All right. I've heard a lot of people come up here and say that they're here today to support Scott Jones. I am here today to support the safety and the lives of my fellow community members. A lot of people talk about how Brazil was out of line. His job was to go in and review what happened and make suggestions, and that is exactly what he did, and that is exactly why Scott over here threw a tantrum and locked him out. I've heard a lot of people talk about removing politics from this. This isn't politics. These are real human lives that are being lost. And our black community, our brown community, our mentally ill community, our unhoused community are at much more risk than any officer in this county, be they sheriff, CHP, SAC PD, whomever. Cops are actually safer than they've ever been, so you need to stop with your incorrect rhetoric, folks. There's a lot of disingenuous things happening, like the Sheriff's Department yesterday released the video of sheriff's deputies suffocating Marshall Miles and then refusing to get him medical help. I don't know who thought that was a good PR move, but that was wrong. Not only did it show them killing him and then not getting him the medical attention that he needed, they also didn't tell the family that they would be releasing this. They didn't show the family first. It went right out into the media, right out into the public, traumatizing them, traumatizing the public. They had to find out from a friend. It's highly inappropriate. As Tony mentioned earlier, the city has paid out, or the county, rather, so our taxpayer dollars, everybody in here who pays taxes, has paid into settlements for things that Scott Jones and his department has done while he's been in power. So everybody who's here in support of Scott Jones is in support of refusing to release requested information to the families of people who were killed by SAC Sheriff, including Adrian Lud, Ryan Ellis, Michael McIntyre, and Patricia Hill, who was not killed but who had facial bones broken by his deputies. All of you here in support of Scott Jones are in support of female inmates being raped, and those rapes going unlooked at. Everybody in here supporting Scott Jones supports sexual harassment. There's just so many things. There's lawsuits for throwing flash grenades into cells, and making prisoners bathe in and drink toilet water. That's just disgusting. There needs to be independent oversight. I think that the inspector general is not the answer, but I am in support of the changes to make it a stronger position, because we need something in the interim before we get real, true, independent oversight of the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you.[860.25][860.25](APPLAUSE). Christian? Then it'd be Eli Roth, and then Mindy Russell.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. Sheriff McGinnis made a comment about a lack of trust with the inspector general, and he's right about one thing. This is absolutely about trust, about the trust that the entire community can put in law enforcement, trust that currently is lacking. Real independent oversight builds trust. I'd be perplexed why any supervisor would be inclined to vote to erode transparency and accountability. I've been a voter in Sacramento County since 2006. I've never once voted for Scott Jones. I won't vote for anyone who's not going to subject themselves to reasonable oversight that is going to allow them to build trust with the community that they serve. So I urge you not to water down the duties and the access to the inspector general today. Thank you.
Thank you.[919.63][919.63](APPLAUSE). Eli Roth?
As a voter in Sacramento County, I agree with Scott Jones that it is to us, the voters, that he is ultimately accountable for. I, however, cannot cast an educated vote without information regarding what he and his department are doing and how they are doing it. Scott Jones agreed to the existing oversight contract and ran for reelection with it in place. If he had legitimate concerns about how the contract was being implemented, he should have brought those concerns to this board through a public process. Instead, he chose to unilaterally cut off our, the voters', information source without public process. His actions on this issue have been disrespectful to the voters, to the contracting process, to the inspector general, and to this board. Oversight does not equal politicization, or control, or micromanagement. It is simply a way for we, the voters, who, as the chair so kindly put it, are his managers, to gather information and cast educated votes in our ultimate oversight process of voting him for reelection, or voting in someone to replace him. We can both support law enforcement and want oversight, and I, as a voter, want oversight. I don't want to see the process that's been taking place. A lot of it has been very petty and beneath the Scott Jones that I know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roth. Mindy Russell?[1043.54][1043.54](APPLAUSE). Robert Copeland, and Raymond Lee after that.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. I am a law enforcement chaplain. I have been serving for 25 years for 15 different law enforcement agencies, one being the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. And I'm here to say that as we serve alongside of law enforcement to victims, I have seen the expertise, the professionalism, and all that is required for law enforcement to help and assist the victims. These victims are from crimes that have been given to them or done to them. These are also victims of suicide, and Sid's death, and all the things that you may read about but a lot of times don't read about. So as a chaplain, I'm able to be a little bit more neutral in what I'm saying because of the fact that we see it on both sides. And what I'm here to say to you is I do believe that the voter is the number-one accountable to what our Sheriff's Department is held to. The voter, we elect these men and women into these professions, such as yours and our sheriff, so we are the ones that will hold them accountable more than anything. And the challenge and the checks and balances that they have, no matter what kind of investigation goes on internally with our law enforcement agencies, it goes over to the district attorney, and then it can go to the attorney general. So there's a lot of transparency in all of the area of how they do these investigations. So I'm just here to say, I support you, Scott Jones. I support law enforcement. I support this community, and I support...
No, Mindy?
Stop.
Mindy, if you'd address the board, please.
Right.[1168.83][1168.83](APPLAUSE). I do support this community, but it's unfortunate that the ones that come up and speak these falsehoods and are thinking that they're being heard is unfair to the general population that does support law enforcement. So thank you very much. And like our great philosopher Jack Nicholson said once before, "You can't handle the truth."[1193.83][1193.83](APPLAUSE).
You, Mr. Copeland?
I'm not sure I can exactly follow that up. You know, really?
Please be quiet.
My name is Raymond Lee.
Be quiet.
My name is Raymond Lee. I thank the...
We can't hear any of what you're saying. Please be quiet. Please give this speaker a chance to say what's on his mind. Thank you. Are you Robert Copeland?
My name is Raymond Lee.
Oh, he is? Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Copeland was next. Are you Mr. Lee?
Yeah, he's Mr. Lee.
I'm Lee. I'm Lee.
You're Lee, so Mr. Copeland is before you. Good, please, thank you.
Well, I don't support Sheriff Jones, or I should say Sheriff Arpaio Cologne.[1244.25][1244.25](APPLAUSE). How many people have died in New County jails? How many people have died by the police, or been raped, or been ran into by a sheriff's car, like my friend Wanda Cleveland? We need transparency, and we're not getting it from our sheriff. I mean, really? Scott Jones, clean up your own department! We need an independent oversight committee to make sure they told the line and follow the law. And did he do proper procedure when he locked out our IG? I don't think he did. I mean, we need a real sheriff that will follow the law. And my dad was a county sheriff of Missouri. Most people don't know that. And I wouldn't support my dad if he did half the things that Scott Jones did. Thank you.[1314.41][1314.41](APPLAUSE).
Now, Mr. Lee? And then after him, Maureen Daly Pascoe and Jim Eichner after that. Mr. Lee?
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you for the Board of Supervisors for allowing me to speak. As you well know, Sacramento is one of the most multicultural cities in the nation. Scott is the wrong sheriff for our diverse community. His actions have shown him to be divisive, arrogant, and not in touch with the pluralistic community that Sacramento is. He is the wrong sheriff at the wrong time, in these turbulent times, not only in Sacramento but in the nation itself. We are sending a message when we send this kind of sheriff, or when this sheriff represents our county. He brings in the head of ICE. That's a direct signal to a very large proportion of our community. Now, anyone that does that kind of politicization should not talk anything about what's fair and what's right. His request to have his people here is a provocative move. He asked that all these people come over here. Why do you think we say anything? Because he invited, because he's the one to provoke, to invite these people here. He didn't want here to be a civil conversation. He says, "Come over here and show the Board of Supervisors how much strength I have."[1406.41][1406.41](APPLAUSE). That's what he wanted to do. We're here to defend you. We're here to defend you, that we will support you as long as you support the people of Sacramento.[1414.71][1414.71](APPLAUSE). Thank you very much.[1416.71][1416.71](APPLAUSE).
And then after that is Jim Eichner and James Jackson Jr. after that.
Hi, my name is Maureen Pascoe. I don't have any particular expertise in law enforcement, but I have worked over 25 years in local government. I've had the pleasure of working with many of you in that capacity. And I want to say that the sheriff's insistence that the only oversight of him is through the ballot, that the voters put him in office and he's accountable to them only through the ballot, is contrary to many of the oversight management and regulatory functions of government. It's, the more he insists that he's not in need of any independent oversight, the more I'm convinced that he is. To exclude it is contrary, as I said, to many of the functions of government. It's like restricting the FBI from investigating Watergate. It's like excluding the Department of Justice from the LA County Jail and investigating the abuses of inmates there, as convicted felon and former LA County Sheriff Lebaka It's because of, you know, I'm not asserting that there are similarly egregious situations, but I think that that's exactly why we need to have oversight. I do have one comment about the language that Supervisor Kennedy has proposed, if you do get around to discussing it. I understand the carve-out for excluding personnel matters, but I hope that you clarify that training of personnel is specifically included in the scope of work. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Eichner?[1535.03][1535.03](APPLAUSE). Then James Jackson Jr., then Trina Allen.
Good afternoon, Chair Peters, supervisors, and my friends. I am Jim Eichner from Carmichael, a member of St. Mark's United Methodist Church, speaking for myself. This is the fourth time I've spoken to you about the inspector general, and you see I have the many privileges of having been born white. Our community clearly places a high value on real independent oversight at the Sheriff's Department. Speakers today have been articulate or just venting anger, but on both sides of the issues, I've been hearing a consensus in favor of oversight. You discussed oversight models in five other counties. Building those, I'm sure, was as contentious as our process here. All of them respond to a broad public desire for independent oversight of questionable law enforcement actions. Our controversy has been between this board and this sheriff. In time, we will have new supervisors and a new sheriff. The need for independent oversight will persist, so you should establish a model that also will persist. The sheriff has a statutory duty to preserve peace by, among other things, building respect for the law. Sheriff's officers build that respect when they also follow the law. If I see officers routinely driving 15 miles an hour above the speed limit, I might think that speed limits are only suggestions. The IG is our public radar gun, telling us which few officers are over the limit. Most aren't, and the radar gun will do them no harm. I commend all of you for your efforts to sustain the IG, which will help the department produce its best work and help the public know it. With the sheriff's cooperation, Sacramento County can have transparency and peacemaking and wise use of public funds. Thank you.
James Jackson Jr., then Trina Allen, and then Allegra Taylor. Mr. Jackson?
Hello. I'm totally fine with that anger going on as I speak, because I think that they are speaking some truths of power. My name is James J. Jackson Jr., and I have to say, I do not know if it is powerful, heartbreaking, or ironic that we are talking about police oversight and sheriff's oversight on the anniversary of Fred Hampton's death.[1684.75][1684.75](APPLAUSE). Perhaps, perhaps if there had been someone holding Chicago Police and the FBI accountable, he would still be alive, and the Black Panthers would still be a force providing more social services than this county has ever provided its most marginalized residents. Ms. Peters, I am not surprised by your blatant disregard for democracy today, because you treat people who are your opposition as if they are less than you. You did it to me, you did it to my 90-year-old grandma when she said she supports oversight of the sheriff, and you did it today to the people who said that black lives matter. The majority wants oversight, Mr. Jones. Let me say that oversight is just one step. As a member of the Democratic Socialists of America, I will say here publicly, we are not only in favor of oversight, but in favor of abolition of the slavery of prisons, as well as the sheriff and police, because they are the ones who the state calls on to oppress the masses, most of whom have been the poor, people of color, and women. Rest in power, Fred Hampton, and all those dead under the watch of Sheriff Jones. Thank you.[1746.45][1746.45](APPLAUSE).
Now, Allen? Then Allegra Taylor, and then Lynn Berkeley Baskin. Thank you. Ms. Allen?
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. I'm Allegra Taylor, and Patrick Kennedy is my representative.
Okay, thank you.
I am here to stand in solidarity with WAPA. I'm a Sacramento Act advocate, and I am here asking you to vote for oversight and transparency for our sheriffs. Now, many people have spoken about my sheriff, the sheriff that they voted for. The sheriff is a Sacramento sheriff. He is not my sheriff. He is the sheriff of all of Sacramento, so that would also make him my sheriff. So, that would also make him my sheriff, whether I voted for him or not. The authority that's been given to Sheriff Jones is delegated authority by his election. His delegated authority does not come unchecked. When you allow someone who had been put in an authoritative position to go unchecked, you wind up with a meeting like this. It is important that this Board of Supervisors take into the consideration all of Sacramento. I heard all lives matter. All lives don't matter to Black people until Black people's lives matter. Until Black lives matter, all lives don't matter to all people. You guys make these comments, you divide. We are one Sacramento. So, I have a question that I want to pose to Sheriff Jones and all of those that voted for him and even this Board of Supervisors. If the statistics that exist today for Black people, if those statistics was of white kids being criminalized, of white people being killed, of white people dying in the jails, would you hear us then? Would they want oversight then? We are not ignorant to what is really going on here. We, as Black people, understand how we are viewed. We understand that you criminalize us. We understand all of that. I'm not against the Sheriff's Department, and neither am I against the police. I have worked youth ministry, and we have Sacramento police that grew up with me. I have family members that are in the police department. Listen, this is about accountability. This is about transparency. This is about not allowing one person to have rule over everything going unchecked. Obviously, there's a problem. There's obvious a problem when the statistics are what they are. Black people in the city of Sacramento, from our students on the campuses of elementary schools to every level of education, to the streets of the city of Sacramento, Black people are under attack. It is a state of an emergency, and this is why we come together in solidarity, all of the different organizations, all of the different constituents. This is why we are here, because we want, we demand accountability. No elected official should go unchecked. No elected official should take authority that they've been given and use that authority in an ill-mannered way. They should not be allowed to do it. I believe, I think I read something that Sheriff Jones and the IG were friends at one point. What happened? What happened to that relationship? Did it only change after the IG voted something that Sheriff Jones didn't approve of? I'm not sure about that. However, I am sure of one thing. Sheriff Jones is accountable to all of Sacramento, not just the privileged who voted for him, not just those who feel that he is only their sheriff. Because Sheriff Jones and the political climate that we're in today, we understand what's going on, but this dividing factor, it can't stand here in Sacramento. We are one Sacramento. And even though there is division among us today, many of us here stand in solidarity for the Board of Supervisors to do something. We are hoping that you use your authority to the best of your ability, and we are hoping that you hold Sheriff Jones accountable to his constituents and not just those who voted for him, but he's the sheriff for all of Sacramento. So, that would include me.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Is Trina Allen here? Lynn Berkeley Baskin? No.
Sacramento deserves better...
I'm sorry. Could you tell me your name?
I'm Trina Allen.
You're Trina Allen. Okay.
Thank you. Sacramento deserves better than a megalomaniac in the Sheriff's Department with unilateral control over our lives. This tantrum isn't about justice, safety, or protocol. It is about power and one man's authoritarian ability to abuse it. Local law enforcement departments and individual officers, especially those elected to office, are public servants and therefore should be held accountable to the people they serve. It speaks volumes that the majority of Sacramentoans of color in this audience do not support Scott Jones. Sheriff Jones has broken community trust repeatedly. He has deliberately avoided transparency in policing, cost taxpayers millions of lawsuits, allowed his officers to disproportionately target and terrorize Black and Brown community members without censure, participated in sexual harassment and egregious violations of human rights. Of even greater concern are the unfathomable amount of Black people dying at the hands of the Sheriff's Department. BLM Sacramento has advocated on behalf of the family members for the past three years, and not once has the Sheriff's Department displayed any cooperation, respect, or even base compassion for remaining loved ones. No evidence, no video, no questions answered at all. Jones is a disgrace to this county and to the justice everywhere. More than anyone, Jones and his department require independent oversight. We can argue about what that should look like, community-led subpoena power, disciplinary power, county-funded, et cetera, but as it stands, Rick Brazil is a 30-year law enforcement veteran and a former chief of police. We are here today because even Brazil agreed with the community that lethal force was not necessary against Michael McIntyre. I am less interested in how you go about it and more interested in your direct and effective action today. The refusal of oversight is dangerous, embarrassing, and detracts from the humane focus of what this argument should be about, the fact that a man died unnecessarily in your county. What are you, each of you, going to do about it, and how do you plan to prevent the next body from piling up at your feet? Put him in check. He deserves it.
Thank you. Lynn Berkeley Baskin. Lynn Berkeley Baskin, then Rhonda Rios Kravitz, and then Jason Weiner. Is Lynn here?
Thank you, Chair Peters and the Board members for this ability to speak. My name is Rhonda Rios Kravitz, and I'm speaking on behalf of StepUp. In speaking to the lack of transparency and accountability by the Sheriff's Department as well as lack of oversight of the sheriff, my testimony will detail one concrete example using StepUp's Public Records Act requests for information from the sheriff's office. We had received complaints from the community members that the Sheriff's Department practices disproportionately affected the Latino immigrant community. In the PRA, we requested information on traffic stops, checkpoints, vehicle impalements, assessment forfeitures, and collaborations with ICE for the last three years. Within five days, we received a response acknowledging receipt of the PRA. Seventy days later, we sent a follow-up letter requesting an anticipated date for a response to our request. On that same day, Tanya Birch apologized for the delay and requested that we narrow the scope of the request as it was unduly burdensome. She gave no reasons as to why it was burdensome. StepUp submitted a revised request that was significantly reduced. The Sheriff's Department asked for more clarification, and we provided that clarification. Eighty-nine days after our initial request, we received a response indicating no responsive documentation exists. We interpreted the message for information as access denied. Transparency and communication are key. We took our response to the OIG on June 19, 2018, but even though he felt that information could have been provided, he had no recourse to make that happen. In the interest of accountability, integrity, and transparency, StepUp strongly feels that the Sheriff's Department should not be allowed to cite burden in order to avoid complying with data requests. In addition, the OIG should have the power to investigate why this information was not provided. Public access to information allows citizens to understand what the government, or in this case, the Sheriff's Department, is doing in our name. StepUp only encountered bureaucratic roadblocks. Transparency in police policies, practices, and outcomes allows both the department and the community to identify problematic incidents before they become patterns and to uncover and address discriminatory patterns proactively. Having independent agencies such as an independent civilian review board investigate incidents of possible police misconduct enhances the truth-seeking process. Independent investigations would more likely be free of the institutional alliances and biases that currently color investigations because they would not feel an impulse to protect fellow members of their own organization. These independent agencies serve as an important function in bolstering public trust in our institutions of justice. Several people will follow my testimony with the exact request and responses we receive from the Sheriff's Department. Systemic reforms are necessary for the public to regain trust in the oversight of this sheriff. The time to act is now. Put in place an independent civilian review board with audit and subpoena powers and an adequate budget. This process will give the Sacramento County residents an ability to be heard and a promise of due diligence, a process of accountability, integrity, and transparency.
Thank you. Jason Weiner. Shereen Miles. And then Allen Ash.
Greetings. Hi. I'm Jason Weiner.
Mr. Weiner?
I'm a member of the Jewish Community Relations Council, of the Latino-Jewish Forum, and Sacramento Act, and I'm here to speak in support of maximum possible oversight of the Sheriff's Department and this sheriff. Last month, I joined many others in urging you not to allow the powers of the OIG to be watered down. Thank you for responding to our community demand for accountability and oversight of the sheriff by presenting new contract language. I'll repeat a couple of points I made then. First, U.S. A. Board have the duty and responsibility to oversee all county departments and staff. The Sheriff's Department should be no exception. The Director of Finance told you today that counties across California have put in place strong independent inspectors general and citizen review boards to support that oversight role and offer accountability to the public. The county attorney revealed today that you do have the ability to enforce your right to ensure the IG can have access to the locations and files that he or she needs to do his or her job, if you're willing to go to court to defend that right on our behalf. Second, that this sheriff has over and over again flagrantly disregarded and disrespected his responsibility to transparency with our community and, yes, our county voters. He has blocked access so that we can find out what's happening in the jails. He has left families in the dark about how and why their loved ones died in custody. He has, until forced to yesterday, refused to release any video of deaths and other critical incidents. He's responded to legal public records requests, like the one just detailed to you by Rhonda, by pretending that his department keeps no records of federal ICE visits to the jails he oversees. But this isn't just about this one sheriff, no matter how reckless he's been. It's about changing the system that allows that recklessness. I again thank the Supervisors for bringing back stronger contract language for the IG position. I urge you to approve that language and then go further to fulfill your duty to us to oversee this department through litigation if necessary.
Thank you. Shereen Miles?
Thank you very much. My name is Shereen Miles. I'm a Sacramento Act leader. I'm also an active member of Sacramento's Immigration Coalition, which includes about 50 different organizations. I am a constituent of Sacramento County and in Susan Peters' area. I live in the Maddox Park area, Ms. Peters. I wanted to address one thing before I go ahead to the individuals who are here to support the sheriff. This is not about pro or anti-law enforcement. This is simply about asking for accountability, and there is something not at all... There is something that is not a conflict between asking your law enforcement or any government agency to be accountable and our support for having good law enforcement support. That, of course, we want. What I want to go back to is that Ms. Rios earlier talked about the Public Records Act request that was placed by advocates for immigration with the Sheriff's Department in July. And I want to just read you what the Sheriff's Department responded to one particular portion of it. We had requested, we had five portions of our request. We were asked to narrow it down to five areas, and so one area was information about the presence of ICE officials in the jails or other holding facilities, including formal and informal agreements made between the department's officers and ICE officials to interview individuals in the department's custody. And as we all know, our county had a contract with ICE until quite recently. So, there is in existence a relationship between ICE and the Sheriff's Department. What we were told, our response was four words: "No responsive documentation exists." How could that even be? How could that even be? We, as citizens and as constituents of each of you, are only asking that we have in place a mechanism to provide transparency and oversight for this agency, this government official. We urge the Board of Supervisors to remember that everyone, everyone needs oversight. I, as a teacher, need oversight. We all do, and there is nothing that should interfere. The fact that there's defensiveness on the part of the Sheriff's Department about getting oversight from outside tells us all we need to know. Thank you.
We're gonna, we're gonna take a break right now. We've got a problem with our computers here, and they need to reboot the system, so I really apologize. I think about 15 minutes, so we'll aim to start at 4:25. So, take a break, get up and stretch your legs, and we'll be right back.
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
And I believe Ms. Frost is here somewhere. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that. Our computers are up and running again, and the clock was off and the screens were off, so I think we're back in order mechanically there. Our next speaker is Betty Williams. Are you here, Betty?
I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry. My eyes are blurry, I guess.
That's okay. It's been a long day, and I've been out sick, but it was important for me to show up here this afternoon.
Okay. All right.
As you said, my name is Betty Williams. I'm the president of the Sacramento NAACP branch. First, allow me to give you the true history of how the Inspector General started. When I was president back in 2007, when we had the history of the highest suicide rate in the county, more than the national average. We had inmates that were being beaten on a daily basis, and it was being done in what we called the zero-camera lens. There weren't cameras in those places. It lacked transparency, accountability, and mistrust, much like we're doing now. Let me also give you the history where we pushed so hard for the Inspector General that Lee Dean was one of the first ones that came forward. It was the NAACP that didn't want Lee Dean because he was a retired sheriff that came, but they pushed him forward. In the interim, we had a break in that. And so, that break, it was the NAACP two and a half years ago that summoned Scott Jones to the Church of St. Paul and asked him at that time, where were we with the internal general? And he promised the NAACP and other community organizations that he would bring the IG back. It was after that meeting, he came here and asked for the IG to come back. So, I don't want you to think that he thought about this on his own. It's important for you to know the history. I started when it was Lou McGinnis, then Lou McGinnis, Lou Blannis, then McGinnis, then I come with Scott. So, I came with all the sheriffs, and I wanted to make sure that we had some type of transparency and accountability. And now, we're here today. Susan Peters, Don Natoli, you both know because I've been here before, and you know this history. So, when he was telling you this, I was somewhat surprised that you didn't say anything, not knowing or absolutely knowing the history. So, now, we're here today asking for the... So now, we're here today asking for the accountability, the transparency, and the trust to come back into the IG.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Williams. Your time is up.
And I know, but it's real important, especially you, Susan, being the chair, that you hear me because...
I'm gonna give you a couple more seconds here. I still have over 100 people left to speak. I just want to be sure they all get a chance.
Got you, and I appreciate it. And I appreciate it. But I just don't think you were hearing everyone else. And it was important for me to correct the history of McGinnis and Jones. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, my next speaker is listed as Alan Ash, but I, if you are, did you already speak?
No.
I wasn't sure. Okay. Alan Ash, then David Andre, then Rebecca Person.
So I'm Alan Ash. I'm co-chair of the Sacramento area chapter of the ACLU. I want to start by quoting some Latin that they taught, at least way back when I went to law school. It's a...
Not a lot, please. Most of us didn't take Latin in school.
"Ubius ibi remedium." That means there's no right without a remedy. No right without a remedy. That means, for example, the old scope of services contract gave the IG certain rights of oversight, but even though the sheriff promised to abide by that contract, then he dishonestly violated that promise. It turns out there's no remedy to make the sheriff comply, except maybe a lawsuit. Or the county charter itself in section 75 gives the county executive the right to cooperation from the sheriff. And even though the county charter is a law and it says the sheriff's failure to cooperate is willful misconduct, there's no remedy to make the sheriff comply with the law. In a strange way, however, Scott Jones' penchant for dishonesty and illegality have done the county a service. Having a sheriff who engages in willful misconduct has pointed out a big flaw in our county charter and ordinances. We have no remedy when the sheriff doesn't comply. You five are the legislative stewards of the county. It's your duty to fix this flaw in the county charter and our ordinances revealed by Scott Jones' dishonesty and illegality. Just creating more rights of oversight when there's no remedy for their violation is, like Supervisor Serna said in an earlier meeting, a fool's errand. Instead, you need to put real oversight powers into the county charter or by ordinance with a citizen commission to back up the inspector general, like Los Angeles County or San Diego County. A community commission lets the people really trust in police accountability and transparency, which in the end is all about public safety. When policing takes place in the sunlight under community control, the quality of policing increases. When everyone can trust and coordinate, cooperate with law enforcement, we're all safer. And that's the kind of safety that's not just for the privilege, but for every member of our community.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. David Andre? David Andre? Okay. Rebecca Person? David Andre and Rebecca Person? Okay. Eric Patton?
Okay, I want to, first of all, thank Sheriff Scott Jones, who's done an amazing job as our sheriff.
And you're Mr. Patton?
Eric Patton, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
I've heard a lot of rhetoric, a lot of heckling, a lot of slander. I come to you as, obviously, a supporter of Scott Jones and Trump. I'm giving answers, but... I'm saying both, okay? Obviously, I have a hat, a lot of these policies. Also, my girlfriend is black, so I'm coming here with... So what I'm saying is my children will be raised American.
Yeah, sorry. Could you please be quiet? You know we're giving everybody a chance to speak as much as possible, so please continue, Mr. Patton.
So what I'm seeing here is a motion taking over logical conversation and civility. People have been heckling, calling people names. People called, you know, our sheriff a racist. People are yelling things at me as I speak, not knowing that I come from a spot where my kids will be affected by whatever policies come forth in the future. My great-great-grandfather was Judge Wills, who had controlled Gettysburg, and the Gettysburg address is written in his upstairs house. So you look at America and how far we've come. The bloodiest war was the Civil War, you know, which freed people. Now we're here, and Scott has never, ever come across as any racist. My girlfriend, one of her earliest memories of the sheriff's department was when she was younger, and she was walking home and a sheriff pulled up behind her. She was scared. She didn't know what to do. You know what he stopped her for? Because she was wearing dark clothing and he was concerned for her safety walking home. He gave her a ride home so she would not be injured or hit by a car. That's the axe of our sheriff's department, and they have continued these shows of basically affection for everybody in the community. And when we stop having a conversation and we lose civility, we're losing fact of our ability to actually come up with good things. So thank you, Scott. Thank you for everything you've done. Thank you to law enforcement. And I really hope everybody here opens their heart and starts to listen to other points of view.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Thank you. Keyan Bliss? Keyan Bliss? Then Eric Weisenthal, then Shaw Vang? Keyan Bliss? Sarah, that's you? Okay, thank you.
Wow, they come out the woodwork when Sheriff Scott Jones uses the power of his office to bring out his supporters. You know, I've heard a lot of this, this county Board of Supervisors meeting of people talking about how Scott Jones is only accountable to people who vote for him, who voted for him to be in office. So I kind of wanted to examine what that is, because it really speaks volumes to the state of our current democracy, as you like to call it. So Sacramento County, according to the U.S. Citizens Bureau, has over 1,530,000 people who live in the county alone. And out of that 1.5 million people, 1,166,000 people are voting age, that being over the years of 18. Of those people who are voting age to vote, over 740,000 were actually registered for the 2018 primaries where Scott Jones re-elected. And of those 740,000 people, only 310,000 people actually participated and submitted ballots. Basically, an election turnout across the county of 42%. And of those 310,000, only 284,000 actually participated in the sheriff election. And of those 284,000, 145,740 people actually voted for you. Direct yes vote. Granted, he won 51% of that 42% turnout, but when you count the voting age people, that is 12.5% of Sacramento County's voting age population, which actually comprises less than 10% of the total population in Sacramento County. And yet, here you are, standing in front of everybody with the gall to say you have the support of a silent majority? What's your silent majority here?
Thank you, Mr. Bliss.
Racists who like to say black abortion matters
Thank you, Mr. Bliss.
Under their breath of the audience?
Mr. Bliss, your time is up. Eric Weisenthaler? After Mr. Weisenthaler, Shaw Vang and Aleni Galatzopoulos.
Hi, my name is Eric Weisenthal, and I represent Congregation Benet Israel and the Board of Sacramento Area Congregations together. I am a strong supporter of the men and women who put on the uniform every day. However, what I don't support are the actions of officers and sheriff's deputies that result in the questionable deaths of African-American men. No law enforcement agency should be above the law and beyond public scrutiny. I strongly support the inspector general's office, and in particular, Rick Brazil. He understands effective community policing and is the right person for the job. And I would also add that we all most certainly can handle the truths.
Thank you. Shaw Vang? Shaw Vang? And then Aleni?
Good evening, Board Chair Peters and members of the board. My name is Shaw Vang. I am...
Shaw, if you could just stand between the microphones, we can hear you.
All right. I am the executive director from Long Invading Politics, and I am a long resident in the Sacramento County in District 2. Supervisor Kennedy. You know, as a leader of my organization, I go home every night and I think, is my community really safer? And do we feel safe in the environment that we're in? And when we question to call the cops or to really take care of our own situations, is that really, are we feeling safe, right? And is safety only for the folks who have the privilege to look lighter, have lighter skin? Or do we, is safety something that all communities can, should be able to have, right? And I talk about this because a couple months ago, a family member was killed, a young gentleman in my family who is Mong and black, was killed at the hands of law enforcements. And, you know, the impacts are really real to our communities every day. And when I ask my family, do they feel safe? And the answers are no. And so the work that I do is really crucial to making sure that communities feel safe. And so during these times of really high violence against our communities, it's at the hands of law enforcements. It's important for us to have clear transparency, accountability, and public oversight to all government functions. Sacramento County Sheriff's Department and Sheriff Jones is not, is no different. And you are very accountable, you are accountable to our communities who have voted for you, and we will not accept anything less than a full transparency, public oversight, and an independent inspector general that has full access to the sheriff's department.
Thank you, Ms. Vang.
I am looking forward to your leadership to rebuild and restore trust in our community, and that you will make the right decisions that will keep the law enforcement accountable to us as your voters.
Thank you, Ms. Vang.
Thank you.
Aleni?
My name is Aleni Galatzopoulos. You know, this meeting started out with a little bit of a civics lesson where we talked about, we were told about separate but co-equal branches of government. And that means that they have to have mutual respect. Sheriff Jones said that he agreed with an IG, and he, in fact, had asked for it. Sadly, this particular IG has shown disrespect to him. It takes mutual respect. It takes dialogue. And when an IG is releasing information prior without it being done properly and due process, that shows a lack of respect. The other thing that we have to remember is that the sheriff is the only, the only law enforcement official that we, the people, get to elect. We choose him every two years.
Every four years.
Every four years. Excuse me, you're right. But we choose him.
Please be quiet and let her speak.
Long story short, if the inspector general is not a mutually agreed-upon person, body, entity, that is mutually respected by both parties, then we don't have separate but co-equal branches of government. What we have is tyranny. We have one branch usurping the will of the people, usurping the vote. We all can go to the polls and change, but what I hear in this, in this room, is that a small group of people did not like the outcome of the last election. This is our sheriff, all of our sheriff, and he deserves our respect. Well, if he's not yours, then we need to move.
Please be quiet.
Long story short, consequences. He's a good man. He does the best he possibly can. The board needs to show some respect to him. You cannot only ask for the will, for him to be the only one bending in this situation.
Excuse me. Please be quiet. Let her finish. Okay. Yeah, she's getting extra time because you talked over her and we couldn't hear her.
I am here to...
Okay, I think you're almost finished, right?
I'm here to simply say that it is important that this board come to an agreement with the sheriff and also expect that they will need to do some bending. He's already said he's fine with it.
Thank you very much. Sarah Ritchie? Kate Gillespie? And Judith? Might be Painter, I'm not sure. Is Sarah Ritchie here? Kate Gillespie?
Good afternoon, Chair Peters and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Catherine Gillespie, otherwise known as Kate Gillespie, and I'm here to speak on the issue of transparency and accountability. I am here to support the document put forward by Supervisor Kennedy amending the contract that you have with the OIG, your basic contract, as well as to speak for the role of the inspector general. I think it's really important to focus on what transparency means and accountability. I went on to the website for the sheriff's office looking for information pertaining to arrests. And I was curious about those instances where people are charged with crimes or have identified that crimes have happened, and then when people are arrested for those crimes. I could not find data on the sheriff's website. So then I went to the California Department of Justice and downloaded information. And I went to the FBI and downloaded information. And I also went to the Census Bureau and downloaded the latest information from the American Community Survey. And I'll show you a summary of what that information shows.
Final clerk.
So this is data from many years. It's hard to see, and I'd be happy to email copies of this to the supervisors. So zooming in on the tables that I have, or the bar charts at the bottom. Back out again.
It just takes time. It's sensitive. Ms. Gillespie, would you proceed?
Yes, thank you. So what this information shows, that for people of color, they are arrested at a higher rate than they exist within our county population.
And you're over your time limit now.
Okay.
So if you could give us your final thoughts.
Okay. Well, the important message here is that according to the data I've portrayed here, black population is 9% of the county population. By arrests, they represent 32%.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This one, person's name I can't read very well. It might be Judith Painter, 39, 18, street begins with a B. I just can't read the handwriting, I'm sorry. Must have gone. Ellen Chapman, Susan Wilkie, and then Amrit Sandhu. Ellen Chapman? Susan Wilkie?
My name is Susan Wilkie. I'm a veteran, I'm elder. I can't speak for a community of people or group, it's just my own experiences reading and living in Sacramento. I know as a human being that we tend to avoid problems until they become so obvious and so, so direct that we can't, we can't miss having to look at them and address them. But sometimes they have to get so bad, and that forces us. But it's an opportunity. And so the fact that people are critical to the sheriff isn't really a bad thing. It's actually an opportunity for him and us to take a look at how that position is being held and the impact of it and the results of it. And it looks like our community as such is not happy with what the sheriff is doing. And even though minorities are, some persons said, a much lower group of people and, you know, as if they weren't accountable, they're, they are a great part of our country and a lot of our issues that we have are because we never addressed the fact of slavery and so forth. And the sheriff, the sheriff actually, that whole department has to deal with things that are health issues and are issues of poverty and housing that we haven't as a country addressed. And there, we're using them to handle these problems of drug addiction and alcoholism... And there, we're using them to handle these problems of drug addiction and alcoholism and homelessness. But the sheriff said, I know the thing about being voted into office, remember Hitler was voted into office. Just because you're voted into office doesn't mean that that is, that answers all questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkie. After Amrit is Doug Halen, and then Dave Delhart, Delhant. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Sandhu.
Hello, I'm Amrit Sandhu. I am the Regional Vice President for the National Lawyers Guild, representing the entire state of California. I'd like to make five points. The first is that I really want to thank Supervisor Phil Serna for his line of questioning with the attorney, because I don't believe we would have gotten to the most important and essential issue without that. And I'd like to ask his colleagues on the Board of Supervisors to step up and support his leadership. And I'd like to see that kind of questioning from everyone. So that's one. Two, I would like to speak to what I heard in that line of questioning, and what I heard, and I might have the section, I have Section 25303. I've not looked at the code myself, so if we need to update my testimony for form instead of substance, you're welcome to. But what I heard was that the repercussion for dispute here is litigation, and I think we're at that point. And the board has my support in stepping into that form of dispute resolution with this sheriff. Three, what I heard is that San Diego has a charter provision that allows the Citizens' Oversight Committee subpoena power, and I'd like to see that happen here, too. Of all the examples, LA, Santa Clara, Orange, and Sonoma, that subpoena power from San Diego, to me, seems like the most workable. I'd like to, these last two things are a little more cultural. One is that my great-great-grandfather was the chief of police, and that doesn't impact my ability to be objective. So people from law enforcement families, I invite you to see what's going on here in Sacramento now. And I would like to point out the thinly veiled racism when you say you want someone properly chosen with the intellectual ability-
Could you give us your final thoughts, Ms. Sandhu? Could you finish your thoughts, please?
My final thought is, I'm really disgusted that this forum has felt like a civil war. I just want to remind everyone the North won, and that day is over. And if you could show some respect, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
After Ms. Halen, Mr. Halen is Doug Delhart, and then Kathleen Willoughby.
Doug Holland, 4046 Milltop Court. I believe what we've seen today kind of reinforces the image that we all have, that contacts with law enforcement are emotional. Whether you're the recipient of their services because you're a victim, or because you've committed a crime, you have a very large pot of emotion that tends to run with your memory of the events. I haven't heard anybody, including the sheriff, and the various folks that have spoken, both for organizations and as individuals, indicate that they were opposed to an inspector general. In fact, I think everybody says, we need one. The question is, as County Council pointed out, how do you define a relationship between two competing or co-equal branches, if you will, in a government? The other thing that struck me is inspector generals are brought in after the fact. Supervisor Serna was asking, could they come to a crime scene? The previous sheriff said, might not be wise, because you may deny justice, either for the individual who shot the defendant, or maybe even the defendant himself. Again, everything is done post the event. I also have the privilege of serving as an appointee to the sheriff's Community Outreach Board. No groans allowed, please. Because those meetings aren't as well-attended as this one is.
You'd address the board, please.
Yes. Those meetings aren't attended as well as this one is. They have a responsibility, as a member, we have a responsibility to bring to the sheriff issues from the community that are of concern. But those things can be addressed before the need for an inspector general. So I guess they're not as sexy as after.
Thank you, Ms. Halen. Dave Delhart, or Delhant? Then Kathleen Willoughby, and Adan Shelby.
Good afternoon, I'm Dave Delhant. I guess what comes to mind when I, as I listen to this today, is that there is no argument that an IG is not requested. I don't think Sheriff Jones has denied that. You obviously haven't denied it. But I think it went beyond the IG's role, and I think that's where we are today. I'm in agreement with oversight. I don't think that's a bad thing. Sometimes I'd like to oversee what you guys are doing. But that's another topic. We're here, I support Sheriff Jones. I think that, I have a lot of friends in law enforcement that put their lives on the line every day. I think it's as sad that any life is taken, whether in a uniform or out of uniform. Unfortunately, we're in a culture today where there's lawlessness, and there's hearts that need to be mended. But I don't think that, I do believe that that report was released, we have a DA for a specific reason. And it's not the IG to step out of bounds of what the DA is responsible for. I think you have mechanisms in place currently that would, can work without some political agendas attached to it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kathleen Willoughby? Then Adan Shelby, and then Lee Willoughby. Go ahead, Ms. Willoughby.
Hi. So I think you already have a solution that you, that you're not using. You're trying to find somebody who can abide by a contract. You can write a really nice, tight contract and find somebody who can abide by the contract. And then you can also have access to the sheriff's department very easily with this qualified person who can abide by a contract, and that is the grand jury. So the inspector general can work for the grand jury. The grand jury can then decide, okay, there's a shooting, so we're going to go there, we're going to take the inspector general, we're all going to go, and we're going to do whatever we need to do. We're going to look at documents, we're going to review cameras, whatever you need to do. And that way you have access, and the sheriff can't say, no, you can't come in, because the grand jury can go in. That is your solution. You just write a tight contract, you find somebody who can abide by a contract, you put it under the grand jury, the grand jury votes, they go over and do whatever they need to do. That's the way, you have a solution already in front of you. All you have to do is just do it. And I already talked to your county council, and she agreed that that is an option. I talked to Donna Toley, she said that is an option. So just write a good contract, find somebody, and then submit it to the grand jury. The grand jury will take the IG wherever he needs to go. They sit for a whole year, they can convene in an hour. It's easy. I was on the grand jury, and I saw a lot of things I didn't like, but that's your solution right there. And then you can write an ordinance later and come up with whatever you like that is akin to San Diego, or Los Angeles, or whatever. That's your solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Adan Shelby?
Hi. My name is Adan Shelby. I'm here on the behalf of Tayon Shelby, who was murdered on April 19th, 2016. The reason why I'm here is because I'm not, I'm not happy with none of y'all, I'm gonna be honest. I'm in Patrick Kennedy's district, I've been to him, I've been to the district attorney, I've talked to Scott Jones, sent him letters, and still I have no accountability. I don't have a police report. The only legal document I have is a coroner's report that states that my son had fallopian tubes, ovaries, uterus, and testicles that were untouched. So that tells me that I needed to do my own investigation, because obviously the sheriff's department did not do that. So I did that. I went to Kaiser and I pulled all of the records, all 120 pages of them. And you know what it told me? That the coroner's report that I had from the county of Sacramento was fraudulent. Now, when I posed the question of, how are we going to rectify this buffoonery? I was told, oh, we'll send this to the coroner. Why? They're the one who fraudulently messed up the doggone report. So I need, I just want somebody to fix it. Now I came to Kennedy and I asked, can somebody fix this? This has gone on three years. I think we need to just clean house. Because obviously, we got some, we got some blockages up in here. We need a social enema to just clean it all out. I'm tired. My son was murdered. Murdered! But yet I'm supposed to be calm. Part of sheriff's department, I'm too aggressive. Well, how the hell would you be when your baby is laying on the ground? How would you feel if your son is laying in a car with very little blood, but they say he shot himself, but no gunpowder residue on his hands? You tell me, how would you feel? Would you be angry like me? Because I'm sure angry. But I just want to know, what is the board of supervisors, what are you going to do? How are we going to fix this for our community? Because I'm not the only family out there with the same issue. I know I'm not. But still, I have no answers. I need answers. We, as a community, need answers. Answers to this growing problem that is not getting fixed.
Thank you, Ms. Shelby. Is Lee Willoughby still here?
Serve, answer. We need answers.
Daniella Urban, then Addie Ellis, or Dr. Addie Ellis, and Heather Gonzalez. Daniella Urban here. Dr. Addie Ellis. Good evening, Dr. Ellis.
Good evening. I am Dr. Addie Ellis. I am in the sheriff's district. First, I really want to thank all of you for taking the time to listen to this today. I know that we've had lots of testimony. In an effort not to be redundant, I want to share just a few of the themes that we've heard. Community-driven, independent oversight, accountability, transparency, and fairness. Those are the themes that have come up amongst all of the speakers. In an age where our communities are seemingly more segregated than ever, where the levels of distrust of government and law enforcement appear to be increasing, the rhetoric that would lead one to believe this is an issue of communities, specifically communities of those identified as Black, and law enforcement? That's not really what our issue is. This is an issue of public trust, and the availability and the ability to have independent oversight, independent investigations of specific incidents involving the Sacramento County Sheriff. If we address the unspoken truth, the data shows that no matter racial background, socioeconomic economics, all people are impacted by the actions of law enforcement. If we delve into the data even more deeply, we know that disproportionately those identified as Black throughout the United States, really frankly throughout the world, we are disproportionately impacted by issues of law enforcement. Through his actions, the sheriff has contributed to the illusion that law enforcement is inadequate, inefficient, and ill-equipped to work with communities of color. The position of the inspector general was created as an independent body. I strongly urge you to consider all your options. And I would like to close with this quote. "We look forward to working with the inspector general to help us to continue to bring oversight and accountability to the work of protecting public safety. The Office of the Inspector General will operate transparently and help maintain trust between our office and the public. I welcome the independent oversight of the sheriff's department. Not only the how, but the perception of how we do things is important. Sheriff Scott Jones, November 2015." Thank you.
Heather Gonzalez? And then Mahmoud Zaria. After Heather is Mahmoud Zaria, and then Paul Curtis. Evening, Ms. Gonzalez.
My name is Heather Gonzalez, and I'm here in solidarity with the WAPA, Black Lives Matter Sacramento, and the rest of the community that came here to hold Scott Jones accountable. I'm a resident of the Foothill Farms, North Highlands neighborhood, and I come before the board today as a concerned citizen who's seeking to address the reckless, murderous, and unethical behavior of Sheriff Scott Jones. Today, we are calling for rigorous, continued independent supervision and oversight of the sheriff's department with immediate consequences for his willful misconduct. Sheriff Scott Jones has impeded on the inspector general's ability to investigate matters relative to officer-involved shootings, the use of excessive force, and in custody deaths. A mental health crisis is not cause for death. Throwing rocks is not cause for death. Being a person of color is not cause for death. Show me that I'm wrong. The issues that we're discussing are life and death for our communities and the people that you serve. How many more names do we have to lift? How many fathers, mothers, sisters, brothers, neighbors, and friends must we bury before we address these issues? This board has a moral and ethical duty and obligation to address and remedy the recent willful misconduct of Sheriff Scott Jones for obstructing the inspector general and from doing his job, from overseeing critical incidents. It's imperative that we close the gaps in policy and to change the language of the Sacramento County Charter so that our current sheriff and our future sheriffs to come cannot bastardize and manipulate the loopholes to serve their own agenda. Absolute power corrupts absolutely. The Sacramento County Charter provision, Section 75, provides that elected officers shall cooperate with the Board of Supervisors to an end that completes their services. However, Section 75's duty of cooperation is without subsequent charter remedy for an officer's lack of compliance. Currently, there's no specified enforcing body charged with the power to remedy the lack of compliance, and no outlined consequences. The scope of supervision needs to be immediately revisited and clearly defined with emphasis on a remedy to specific and clear consequences for rogue elected officials.
Give us your final thoughts, Ms. Gonzalez.
Yeah, I would also like to request for there to be a community-led review panel, effective as soon as possible, so that we can have even more oversight.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mahmoud Zaria. I am the Policy Coordinator for CARE Sacramento, the Council on American Islamic Relations. I'm also on the advocacy board of the Field Network and a member of the Sacramento Immigration Coalition. I don't know if y'all remember me, but I want to thank you first for taking into consideration the Truth and Values Act, and I'm glad we're gonna have a meeting about that soon. So earlier today, it's been a few hours, so thank everyone for being here and staying through. Earlier today, Sheriff Scott Jones said, or he believed that he's above the law because he's elected by the people, and therefore oversight would not, would be impending on our fundamental values. Scott, do you not understand that advocacy is also a form of fundamental right? The people are requesting for the most minimal out of Sheriff Scott Jones, and he has only shown stubbornness and disdain for his community. When we advocated against the RCCC ICE Center, Sheriff Scott Jones financially benefited from it, but he was nowhere to be found. When our Board of Supervisors held the most recent meeting regarding the sheriff's relentless efforts to undermine Inspector General Rick Brazil, we all watched respectfully and let him share his opinions. But the moment we got up and spoke, you left. Maybe if we showed up wearing the red hats and tiki torches, then maybe you would have stayed. Now, originally, I wanted to be diplomatic and explain why sheriff is incorrect regarding oversight, and I was going to use the all two common words of accountability, transparency, and oversight. But you can't be diplomatic with someone who answers to every PR request with the response, no response. I'm just gonna end it with this. My executive director, Basim Alkarra, is on the Sacramento City Community Police Review Commission, and they have made great strides at providing community oversight, and it has received respect, immense respect, by both the community and SAC PD. The reason being because Sacramento Police Department understands that there are some indifferences, and that they need to be heard.
Could you please wind up your comments, Mahmoud, please?
Because they serve the community. Sheriff Scott Jones does not believe in hearing the community. Thank you.
Paul Curtis? Paul Curtis? Is Paul still here? Stephanie Haria? Might have mispronounced that name, sorry. And then after her is Joseph Valle.
My name is Stephanie Pereira. I just want to say first off, because nobody has said it so far, John McGuinness is a white supremacist. He was hired by the city of Davis to investigate a racist police incident that happened in April 2017, and he was forced to resign because he made comments on his radio show about the fact, or his opinion that Black people were better off before the Civil Rights Act. So, I want you to all consider that when you bring someone like that to come speak in front of you, as if he has, as if he has authority over this topic. And the fact that that's who Sheriff Scott Jones brought to speak for him, that should say something to you, and that should be very disturbing to you. So, I, I come here, obviously, because I support oversight of the Sheriff's Department. I think that it needs to be a lot stronger than the Inspector General. I don't think that one person should serve, especially someone who has been handpicked by Scott Jones. I don't, I know some people have said that, and the fact that he's, he has issued a report that was objective was very rare. But that doesn't happen very often when the sheriff is allowed to choose who serves as his oversight. So, I support a community-led commission that consists of people who are affected by this issue, who have subpoena power, who have investigative power. This is a start, but this, it should not end here. Oversight should not end here. And you need to think more about that. And I do want to say, people have said this as well, but just because you are elected to office doesn't mean that you are allowed to do whatever you want. It doesn't mean you're allowed to break the law. It doesn't mean you should be allowed to get away with killing people. Marshall Miles was murdered, the way Eric Garner was murdered, and you all should be thinking about that and take this seriously.
Thank you. Joseph Valle. And Richard Stewart and Rick Fowler. Joseph here? Richard Stewart? Rick Fowler? Suzanne Georgie? And after Suzanne is Dennis Hewlett. And then Dale Dodson.
Board of Supervisors, my name is Suzanne Georgie. I've been a resident of this county for over 30 years, and this is my first time to speak before this body. What I saw on the news with the lockout of the Inspector General really disturbed me and caused me to actually start looking into things. I must have been one of the most ignorant people in this county, but I've tried to learn. I support an independent Inspector General. This community is hurting. I, I'm astounded by this hearing. You probably are used to this. This is new to me. This community is hurting. It's falling apart, and transparency is only the start. You can't have accountability until you have transparency, and there's obviously a problem with transparency. The sheriff has had years of failing to communicate with his community. Years. This has been going on and on and being stonewalled. The release of a video yesterday without letting the family know? What kind of policy exists? Where is the transparency? Trust and respect is missing. You can't have a good law enforcement, police force, without the community's support. They need the respect of the community, and the community wants to respect them. They want to trust them. But it's now, needs to be earned. This trust has been lost. Transparency is a first start. A strong, independent Inspector General is a first start. Policies on that, advanced technologies that Sacramento has.
Thank you, Ms. Georgie. Your time is up. Thank you so much. Dennis Hewlett. And then Dale Dodson.
Dennis Hewlett from District 2. On March 2 of this year, the SACB published an article about the death of Kenton Ballard. This article states Mr. Ballard was being held in the sheriff's jail pending an appearance in court. The sheriff told the B that due to the medical concerns, the district attorney authorized his release hours before he was due in court. The sheriff claims that Mr. Ballard died 90 minutes after he was released from custody. I'd like to know the circumstances of his release and his death. Was it really authorized, and who authorized it? Did he really die in the jail? I don't know. If he was so ill that he couldn't attend court in a few hours, then why was he released rather than taken for medical care? Something doesn't add up. I submitted a public information request to the Sacramento County Sheriff. I received the following response. "Documentation exists. However, all documentation is being withheld pursuant to California Government Code 6254." I then made an email inquiry asking which part of the government code was preventing him from giving me this information. No response. I sent, I made a phone message to the Legal Affairs Department. No response. I sent a registered letter to Scott Jones. No response. I believe the sheriff is in breach of the government code. I've read in the B and also heard here that people have to fight legally to get him to obey the law. This sheriff is not responsive to the public. The sheriff is adverse to transparency. We need oversight of the sheriff. We need an entity where a citizen can, like me, can go and register complaints and resolve grievances. Being elected does not mean you don't have to follow the law. Being elected does not mean you're not entitled to act in the view of the public. We need more, not less, oversight of the sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Hewlett. Dale Dodson. Then Malachi Seku Amen. Is Dale Dodson here? Is Malaki here? Oh, Malaki, I'm sorry. Is he here? See you running around up there. Then after her is Nancy Marshall and Sharon Saffold.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Valerie Williams, Executive Fellow for the California Urban Partnership, and I am here representing Malachi Amen, our president, who cannot be here this afternoon. As a part of our work to build economic security in communities, we believe it is important to protect public safety as well as ensure equal justice under the law. Not only do we support Inspector General Brazil's recommendation, we urge this Board to make policy changes to ensure that the Inspector General is fully independent and empowered to investigate misconduct inside the county sheriff's office. This includes, but is not limited, to removing powers from the sheriff's office to choose an independent investigator of police misconduct. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Marshall. And then Sharon Saffold, and then Jennifer Rodriguez.
I'm not for sure, but I believe Ms. Saffold had to leave because of the break.
I'm not here.
Are you there? She's still here. My name is Nancy Marshall. I am a county resident, a taxpayer here, and a retired 30-year county employee. I was here two months ago to express my concern with regard to this issue. I would concur with what Dr. McDonald and Dr., the doctor that just spoke, said. One of the things that was so important is, with regard to this, having outside oversight strengthens your department. Can I say that? Yeah, I can, because I came from a department that had 20 years' worth of oversight. Did I always like it? No. Bye, Jones. Not going to stay. Did I always like it? No, but what happened? I'll wait till.
Excuse me, Nancy is speaking here. Could we please be quiet and let her speak? Excuse me, go ahead.
I called your offices repeatedly to express my concerns at the action of Sheriff Jones regarding the Inspector General. He continues to say he doesn't owe this body any accountability, yet he is a county employee. He pulls county benefits. He will eventually, when he leaves, pull a pretty sweet county pension. And anytime a lawsuit, and there have been multiples, has been settled against him, that money doesn't come out of the sheriff's budget. It comes out of your budget, which translates to the legal budget of the county and then the county general fund, if necessary. Openness, accountability, and transparency, honesty have been talked about a great deal. It is at the heart of how citizens hold their public elected officials accountable. The county has a trust issue, whether it's believed or not.
Could you give us your final thoughts, please?
Absolutely, this is my final thought. Trust issue with communities that it serves, those who pay its salaries and pay for its services. Thus, any fatality involving any county employee, aka public servant...
Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
...should be looked into and revered, reviewed. Thank you.
Sharon Saffold. Then Jennifer Rodriguez and Cindy Devine.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Saffold. I am imploring you to keep the independent and transparency of the Inspector General's office by renewing the contract with Rick Brazil and ensuring that he has complete access to the sheriff's departments and personnel. The community can only be assured that the agency that we entrust to keep law and order in our community has an independent process to ensure that when critical incidents occur, and they will, there is a process for oversight and accountability. The recommendations made by the Inspector General are reasonable and are things to ensure the safety of officers as well as the community. Who would not want this?
Thank you. After Jennifer is Cindy Devine, and then Henry Harry.
Thank you for this opportunity. Looking at the Values, Vision, and Mission Statement from the post on the sheriff's website, I see a lot of common themes. They're to protect and serve our diverse community to the best of their ability. They want to serve us with concern. If that's true, then be open to review and improvements. They want to treat all with candor, empathy, and respect. Be accountable to the public trust. I hear accountability and trust a lot this evening. Develop strength through partnerships and collaboration. Lead through exemplary conduct, appearance, demeanor. How about barring Rick Brazil? Is that leading through a proper demeanor and exemplary conduct? Strive for excellence through all self-improvement, education, and training. If true, then be open and welcome review and improvements via the IG. Serve with honesty, loyalty, and integrity. Recognize the legacy created by our actions. What is the legacy as a result of his actions with Rick Brazil? I support law enforcement through and through. I honor and respect those who wear the badge and always will. I'm disappointed, though, in Scott Jones' egregious behavior, perhaps more concerning his cavalier, complacent, arrogant, and apathetic attitude and demeanor. As a leader, Scott Jones sets the tone. If he's allowed to get away with his recent behavior regarding the IG investigation, then his department staff may feel that they too are exempt from being held accountable for their or concerning actions. A culture of above-the-law for any organization or agency is a very concerning, dangerous, slippery slope, especially those who carry firearms. As our supervisors, you owe us the due process to hold Sheriff Jones accountable for his actions and hopefully come to the right conclusion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before you start, Ms. Devine, I just want to say, I still have over 50 people who signed up to speak, so any work you can make towards tightening up your remarks and reducing the amount of time, I think would help all of us move forward to the point where we can make a decision.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Rodriguez. I am the Chair of the Sacramento Immigration Coalition, and I come before you because the last recent years have been concerning, to say the least, as it relates to...
I'm sorry, are you here for Cindy Devine?
No, I am Jennifer Rodriguez. She was typing Cindy. So, I come before you because the last several years have been concerning, to say the least, as they relate to the oversight or lack thereof of the sheriff. A major concern has been a lack of response when the public has requested information from the sheriff's office. The response has continually been insufficient, and as a public figure in an elected office, this is really concerning. As a citizen in this county, it is concerning that Sheriff Jones behaves as if he has no oversight, is accountable to no one, and can continue to run the sheriff's department without having any, or being held responsible for the ways in which the department treats the public or those who are in detention. One of the most recent requests made to the sheriff's department was from one of the partners of the Sacramento Immigration Coalition, Step Up. You heard one of those folks speak up earlier tonight. I'm going to be brief because I know that there's a number of other people who still have to speak. Specifically, we wanted to know how the sheriff's department was interacting with ICE because we knew it had been happening. The department had a contract with ICE and had had one for a number of years. The response from the sheriff's department after several months was that no responsive documentation exists and to please contact ICE to request this data. This response was after the department requested that the original PRA be condensed to capture less items. As it pertains to the current contract, up for consideration for the office Inspector General, I ask you all sitting behind the dais what your responsibility is to the citizens of this county. The public deserves a sheriff's department that can be held accountable and that shows transparency for protecting the lives of the citizens in the county. The lack of cooperation by the sheriff in previous instances with the OIG demonstrates his unwillingness to be held accountable by anyone. This stands in clear contradiction that the public, what the public officials are beholden to, to the public. How can that be when one of the elected officers...
Could you give us your final comment, Ms. Rodriguez?
...is in this county refuses to be transparent about what goes on in his department.
Thank you. Cindy Devine? Oh, she must have turned in her sheet more than once. Henry Harry, and then Caroline Smith. Carolyn Smith?
Good afternoon, members of the Board. My name is Henry Harry. I am a community member. I'm a member of the Black community, and I'm a member of the law enforcement community. And I hope that we can come together because there is a lot of pain and divisiveness among our community. But I'm hopeful that we can move forward because I've been in this Board many times. As Mr. Nataoli knows, I was here advocating for better and equal services in some of our minority communities long ago, and I think the sheriff's department made some progress there. I was before this Board pushing for changes on how the sheriff's department spent some of its money and helped baking positions open, and I think we made progress there. I was some of the, I was part of a group that supported an audit of the sheriff's department. This Board moved forward. We audited the sheriff's department in 2006. Some good things came out of that, and the Inspector General actually used some of that in his initial report from you guys stepping forward. Let me say, clearly, I'm not anti-law enforcement, but I did not support the first Inspector General, and I don't support the Inspector General position now. No offense to anybody, I think it's a waste of money. I think our money could be better spent on real accountability in the sheriff's department in which hopefully law enforcement might agree to. Because as you members know, and some people have mentioned here, we already have a Board called a SOCA. One of the members of that SOCA said the meetings are not well-attended. Many of the issues that were brought up here can be addressed at SOCA. One of the things that I've advocated over the years...
Could you tell people what SOCA is?
Oh, I apologize, ma'am. It's the sheriff's outreach...
Community Advisory Board.
Community Advisory Board, thank you. And I've been there several times, and they made progress on the issues that I brought up before them. So, you know, I would encourage maybe the Board and the sheriff to, you know, better advise people of this, and I'll wrap up with this. Again, so many issues that came up here can be addressed at SOCA because there's so many people that are hurting. Because I say I can support my community doesn't mean I'm anti-law enforcement, and because I support law enforcement doesn't mean I'm anti-community. So, I'll just end with that. You have a Board that can be better used. Thank you.
Carolyn Smith, then Susan Zimmer and Toby Briggs. Carolyn, are you still here? Okay. Susan Zimmer, are you still here? Toby Briggs, are you here? Robert Van Diddy? Robert Van Diddy? Yay, a taker.
Good evening, I'll try to make this quick. I'm here more to learn than to...I don't have a strong position, but questions after questions here. Basically, my gut-level feeling is that oversight is a good thing. The sheriff seems to agree with that. I was not fully appreciative of the animosity between the sheriff and the inspector general until recently. Apparently, some work needs to be done on the contract, and I hope that can work out. What can I say? I won't take up any more time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Kristin Dobbin, Kevin Mickelson, and then Les Simmons, I'm sorry.
No, good evening, I'm Kristin Dobbin. I think it's downright ridiculous that we're here talking about whether law enforcement, and yes, even publicly-elected law enforcement, requires oversight. On my way here, I was racking my brain to think of a situation that does not benefit from independent oversight. I couldn't think of any, can you? Let alone when we are talking about a department that has the authority and regularly uses it to end life. Let me say that again, they end life. Let alone when we're talking about a sheriff who purposefully stoked a potentially violent showdown between demonstrators on the sixth anniversary of Stephon Clark's murder, let alone when we're talking about a sheriff who's publicly hostile to racial justice organizing in this city. I can't think of a situation that calls for more oversight than the continued murder and abuse of Sacramento residents, primarily black and brown residents in the city and county, every few months by the people they pay to protect and serve them. Transparency checks and balances contrary to what the sheriff says, these are the core values of democracy, and we need them in Sacramento right now.
Kevin Mickelson, then Pastor Simmons, and then Bruce Burdick.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Kevin Mickelson, and I'm president of the Sacramento County Deputy Sheriff's Association, and for full disclosure, I'm also a sheriff's sergeant with our department. Just to be clear, I want to point out, and I've pointed this out in prior meetings, that the Sacramento County Deputy Sheriff's Association supports the continuation of the Office of Inspector General, so that there can be no ambiguity on that point. I'll cut this down, I only want to speak on one issue, and Supervisor Cerna, you brought up the issue regarding officer-involved shootings and the inspector general having access. So, in my 11 years as president, with the exception of on probably five occasions, I have responded to every officer-involved shooting. I would probably be generous in saying that only 50% of the time has our inspector general, both the prior and the current, has responded to our officer-involved shootings. Now, we want to put the sheriff up on a pinata and whack him with a stick over and over and over again, but nobody addresses the fact that our own inspector general fails to come out to these. In the current contract before you, it says that he shall monitor, it says that he shall be notified of critical incidents. There is no requirement for him to respond to an officer-involved shooting. And my question is, why is that? I'll also point out, many of the members of the audience probably don't know that our Office of Inspector General is only a part-time position. In a county the size of Sacramento and the state of California, how can that be? We have a lot of qualified candidates who are not putting in for this position because it is a part-time position, and that's something else that the association would like to see changed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Les Simmons, and then Bruce Burdick, and Ken Iretani, maybe?
I'm going to just invite us to remind ourselves, and I'm Les Simmons, of why we're here. First, we're here for two reasons, and my faith tradition says we battle with wickedness in heavenly places, and it also says we have to cast the devil out of wickedness and cast the devil out of wicked places. We're here as a faith community, a member of Sacramento Act area congregations, which has over 60 different churches and congregations and over 60,000 members, in support of Phil Cerna, in support of Patrick Kennedy, in casting the devil out of the system and bringing a new system, one of righteousness, one of dignity, one that respects the decency of life. Then the second reason is, we're here is because people are losing their lives. I watched a video last night where a young man was calling for help. He was asking for help. He was begging for help, and when help came, it was too late. His life was lost. I want to invite the Miles family to join me in standing in solidarity and to join me at this podium to address the, you all, to remind us that we are pushing for policy on the brinks of African-American males and females losing their lives. We're pushing for accountability because of lies have been lost.
Hi, my name is Maureen Miles. I'm the sister of Marshall Miles, who we believe was murdered in sheriff custody. And I just want to say that I can't believe that this topic is even up for discussion. Of course, Sheriff Jones needs oversight. If there was oversight, our family wouldn't still be waiting for answers about what happened to my brother. And Sheriff Jones doesn't want oversight because he wants the department to continue to get away with murders. And that's all I have to say. We want answers for my brother, Marshall Miles. Justice for Marshall Miles.
Justice for Marshall Miles. I want to invite those that are in support of transparency and accountability from my Sacramento Act family, from BLM family, from the entire community, the Jewish community, to stand in solidarity so we can see that it's more standing in support of accountability, transparency, and the role of the inspector general, and the continued role of the inspector general, in this case, in Sacramento County. We are the majority. We are the majority.
Okay, thank you Pastor Simmons. Bruce Burdick?
Bruce Burdick.
Is Bruce Burdick still here? He's on his way down, and then Ken Iretani and Jeff Otter.
Can I give you a prayer?
Give that to our clerk.
Would you like the letter while I speak?
If you could, speaking of the microphone, I could hear your request.
Would you like the letter while I speak?
She'll be happy to...
See what I'm talking about?
Yes, she will deliver it. She's just waiting for you to start.
She's going to deliver it?
Yes.
And can she give it to you now? And is there a, is there a way to project a picture?
Yes, to your, right to your right there on the white space there on the...
So, my name is Bruce Burdick. Thank you Supervisor Peters and Supervisor Cerna and Kennedy and Natale and Frost for this opportunity to speak. I am very appreciative of the sheriff's department and what they do. I think they do the best they can. I'm very appreciative of all the people here speaking out that we need oversight as well. I very much hope that this, you supervisors will include oversight, the oversight of CO2 emissions of the sheriff's department. We are forgetting that as we lead our lives, we're emitting a lot of CO2. I hope that I could work with Supervisor Cerna and go to Chair Mary Nichols at the Air Resources Board and answer some questions that I think every Californian needs to know, and I'd like every Sacramento County citizen to know about our sheriff's department. How many pounds of CO2 per day do our deputies emit? Can those be lowered? Are helicopters really a good way to do surveillance? Could there be more surveillance cameras and less driving around in cars? They claim that CO2, our CO2 emissions are a threat to humanity. We have all emitted CO2 that has contributed to the forest fires. Scientists tell us forest fires are increasing because of our CO2 emissions, and we all have the opportunity to find out what we do emit. We could go to this website of the California Air Resources Board and find out what our CO2 emissions are and think about the way we're living our lives and try to lower them.
Thank you, Mr. Burdick.
Hope the inspector general might include that as part of his duties.
Thank you, Mr. Burdick. Ken Iretani, and then Jeff Otter. Ken here? Jeff Otter? Bruce Palmer? And then Sharon Obrigowicz? I'm sure I murdered that name, but, so Bruce must be gone. Sharon?
No, I'm here.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Supervisor Bruce Palmer, Chair of the Jewish Community Relations Council. Bottom line is, we need an OIG. We don't have one now. And we do have a proposal that's out there. I've seen Supervisor Kennedy's language. It does provide for independent review. It may not be perfect in a lot of people's eyes, but it's something that can be worked with, and this is something that's not going to be ever perfect. It's something that you're going to have to work with. It may involve the court system, but it's a structure, and you're going to obviously be involved in a lot of oversight related to it. And you've put together a good public process, the public's aware, they're vigilant. No matter what you do with the structure itself, the vigilance of the public that you see here is going to strengthen the proposal over time. So, you know, I would recommend you work with what Supervisor Kennedy put together. It's reasonable, provides independent review, deals with a lot of the processes, you're dealing with law that's very complex here. You know, provisions for confidentiality, a lot of other things related to how you would implement this. So, I think this, that proposal's a good way to go because if we don't do it, then we're in impasse and we don't have anything. And thank you for being so patient and receiving this public input.
Thank you. Sharon Obrigowicz, I may be mispronouncing this ungood year. Sarah Caspi? Stephen McKinney?
Sarah Caspi?
Okay.
So, thank you for having this meeting, and I just wanted to say that I'm in support of independent inspector general with transparency and accountability to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Sarah.
Mr. McKinney? Then Dylan Tiagi and Rachel Harrington.
My name's Steve McKinney, and I'm a 30-year law enforcement officer. Spent time with the sheriff's department and most of my time with the district attorney's office. I've investigated officer-involved shootings, and I retired as the chief investigator for the district attorney's office. What I'm here to tell the board is that I am the oversight for the Sacramento Sheriff's Department. Me and hundreds of thousands others like me, as voters...
Please give him a chance to speak.
Can I go on?
Yes, please.
Hundreds of thousands of others like me, as voters, we provide oversight for the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department behaves improperly, as voters will replace the sheriff. In the meantime, between elections, the sheriff and the sheriff's department is held accountable by a very ethical district attorney, Ann Marie Schubert, and the California Attorney General. And there's another level of accountability in the civil courts. So, what I would submit is that there are already multiple levels of accountability for the sheriff's department, and I would ask you not to add another level of accountability that's expensive to the sheriff's department, especially a person that's politically influenced and a person that is not elected by us voters. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney. Then Rachel Harrington and Sarah Andrews.
Hi, my name is Dylan Tiagi. I live in the southern part of the county. I'm here today to say that we need more collaboration between the residents of Sacramento County and the sheriff's department. I say this as someone whose previous volunteer experience with the sheriff's department in their service center off Florin Road in South Sacramento, where I took down statements from crime victims. I also say this as someone who's volunteered with groups like Black Child Legacy and Habitat for Humanity throughout Sacramento. I'll say this as someone who grew up going to school in South Sacramento and now teaches in South Sacramento. I'm not here to persuade or dissuade the county board of supervisors on the matter of having an IG or additional oversight of the sheriff's department. I'm here today to ask everyone, all participants, in the spirit of former President John F. Kennedy, ask not what your county can do for you, but what can you do for your county? Consider enrolling in a citizens academy, which is sponsored by the county, where you can learn about the criminal justice system and ask tough questions. Consider volunteering with organizations like Black Child Legacy, which actually partner with local law enforcement to promote safe neighborhoods every Friday evening in Oak Park. Consider attending neighborhood watch meetings and expressing concerns you have about public safety and how you can help. As an educator, I work with youths from diverse backgrounds, often dealing with challenges such as mental illness, poverty, substance abuse, gang violence, and broken homes. As part of educating myself about law enforcement, I've been on 18 ride-alongs this year with law enforcement throughout Northern California, cities that include Berkeley, Oakland, Antioch, Roseville, Folsom, Elk Grove, and here in Sacramento. In witnessing calls for service firsthand, I noticed a few common themes: frequent encounters with the homeless, mentally ill, and people struggling with drug addiction, which can lead to unpredictable, potentially dangerous situations. I'm concerned we're missing the big picture here. How are we supporting people struggling with these issues? Is deinstitutionalization and de-incarceration gain momentum? We're seeing people suffering from these critical issues being shuffled through the criminal justice system, and if we want this to end, we need to start thinking outside the box. We're willing to pay more for plastic bags and high-speed rail, but are we willing to pay more to fund long-term mental health and drug rehabilitation institutions?
Wrap up your comments, Mr. Tiagi.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. Rachel Harrington? Pardon?
That's awesome. That's awesome.
Oh, thank you. Rachel?
Hi, my name is Rachel Harrington. I currently live in District Four. I strongly support a strong independent oversight of our law enforcement and other public agencies. I encourage you to strengthen the current contract by explicitly stating that the investigator has full access and that the sheriff cannot lock them out. Also, to add what will happen when the policies and contracts are not followed. Yes, departments led by elected officials need to be investigated if their departments are murdering, raping, and torturing people, especially when they are murdering one group more than others. Please do what you can to protect people in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Harrington. Sarah Andrews? Sarah Andrews, and then Tiffany Nguyen and Mary Tappel.
So, I don't have a whole lot of things to say. I don't know why I started. I don't have a whole lot to say, nothing. I'm not from any organizations or anything like most of these people. I'm just a single mother in the community who have witnessed both my child being assaulted by the sheriff's department. I was just recently antagonized out here in the building with other people antagonizing my children. He's only 15, he's just tall. A white woman hit my hand in the room. I did my due diligence and went to your security officers and asked them to approach the woman who assaulted me. Unfortunately, they did not do that. They came and revictimized me and my children. That's the problem that we're having here, that's why we are here. We are here because Jones thinks he's above oversight. I support oversight of a community oversight. I do feel also Rick Brazil should still be in place, only because, and again, it's not because I support him, but I support the fact that he should be in place because he did nothing wrong. He did what you guys put him in place to do, and Jones did not like it. He did what you guys put him in place to do, and Jones did not like it. You talk about... We talk about heckling this gentleman over here, and the whole reason that we in the audience have been heckling is because we do what we have shown, been shown to do. When that video was released yesterday that should not have been released, he thought that he was showing transparency? You thought you were showing transparency, but what you mistakenly left in there was the fact that your officer, while that man was laying dead...
Ms. Andrews, please address the board.
While that man was laying dead on the floor, one of his officers said, "He looks like a freaking wet dog." I'm sorry, but that looked like a strong, beautiful, black human soul that deserved to live when he begged for his life repeatedly. I watched the full 43-minute video, 46 minutes, and it was sad. It was very sad. And that, again, is why we need human oversight... Excuse me, oversight of the Board. Again, I do apologize. I just am all over the place in here. You guys were also elected to do this job. He's not the only one that was elected to do it. And if...
Could you wind up your comments, please?
Okay. Again, thank you again, Phil Serna, for bringing us here, but Jones said out of his own mouth earlier that we don't even need to be here. We're here wasting our taxpayer dollars for nothing. He deserves oversight.
Thank you for your comments. Tiffany Nguyen and Mary Tappel and T. Whitney. Tiffany Nguyen here. Okay, thank you. Mary, are you still here?
Members of the Board, I am here in support of a strong, independent Inspector General. I come from a law enforcement family. It is the single most common profession among my siblings, my cousins, my second cousins. I want our Sheriff's Department to be the best that they can be, but that means being willing to learn from our mistakes. It means being willing to learn from people who might have better and different experience. It means learning from our community members what we really need. I was extremely disappointed in how Sheriff Jones handled constructive criticism that was geared towards preserving human life. That was not okay. Sheriff Jones, that wasn't okay. We should be learning as much as we can. We should always be trying to do the best, be the best that we can be, and an independent Inspector General is one of the ways to do that. I also support the independence of the Inspector General's office because Sheriff Jones has shown us exactly how he takes constructive criticism. His actions speak louder than his words. I know that he came to this Board meeting and promised that he would work cooperatively with an Inspector General if he had input over it, but his actions speak otherwise. Loss of human life is more important than the ego of our current sheriff. We need to take that into consideration. We need to strive continuously to be and do better for each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. After Mary is T. Whitney and Marvin Mangalo and Kathy Cresswell.
Yeah, Chair Peters and members of the Board. I'll make it brief due to lateness of the hour, and I don't want to repeat too many people. I really appreciate your leadership in this, Mr. Serna, and I do support what you've said and also support very much Rick Brazil in the Office of Inspector General. And I also support the comments of the people speaking for the ACT or ACT Group. And I think we do need very independent oversight in that it will serve to increase the trust in law enforcement in the county, as well as the city area within the county. For example, our American River Parkway has an awful lot of county influence on it, and that's where I often am, even though it's also within the city of Sacramento, the lower reaches. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. T. Whitney, Marvin Mangalo. Is T. Whitney here?
She's right.
Oh, there she is. Thank you. No, I just... Getting late, I can't see as well. Then after her is Marvin Mangalo.
I'm going to try to be brief because this has been a very long day.
Thank you, Ms. Whitney.
I would say that, you know, the touting of the fact that this individual has won an election in June, I'm a little tired of hearing that because the situation that prompted a lot of this happened in August, which was after the election. So that lockout... Brazil's report came out in August, and the lockout happened in August. That's a couple of months after the election. I think if this had happened before the election, we might be having a different discussion with a different sheriff. That's one point that I haven't heard earlier today. And I just want to say that the loss of human life is always a tragedy when it's done in the hands of... At the hands of law enforcement, whether that's negligence or an outright homicide. My concern is that there always needs to be oversight for the small... I mean, for... There's oversight for so many things, and the loss of human life... I can't think of anything that's more important than to have transparency. You can't have accountability without transparency. And you need people that are empowered to look at these situations unfettered. I don't want a crime scene trampled, but I do think it's important that an inspector have access to everything and to have it be completely unfettered in order for the transparency to exist for the accountability that we all want to have, for us to have that. And I think there's some holes in the contract, and it needs to be shored up. And I'm trusting that Kennedy and Serna are going to lead the way on that and that you're not going to allow the person who's being watched to determine how they're watched. He needs to be inspected, period, the end.
Thank you, Ms. Whitney. Marvin Mangalo. Marvin still here? Kathy Cresswell?
She left.
She was here earlier today. Sorry. Lily Allen. And after Lily is Sonya Lewis.
Hello, Supervisors, and thank you for sitting through this public meeting. It has been a trial for all of us. I just got audited in my professional world, and I welcome them with open arms because they really helped me find a better way to do my job. And I think Sheriff Scott Jones should do that as well. It is egregious that we are sitting here talking about oversight when these atrocities are going on in our community. We've seen mothers come up here because their kids have been murdered, and we're talking about oversight, just a little bit of oversight. This is a drop in the bucket of what we need to be doing. Just let's do this and then talk about what we need to do next, because there's so much more to be done. Okay, obviously, I support the thing.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Sonya Lewis. After Sonya is Cheryl Qualsette and then Darrell Roberts.
So to address some of the supporters of Scott Jones, I'm here to tell you that standing up for black lives is not based on whims. I heard that today. This is not about a vote. It is about accountability and transparency, and I'm tired of hearing that as an excuse of why you shouldn't do your job. This isn't about an elected position that Scott Jones, just by happenstance, holds. It is about the very tyranny that Jones exhibited in locking Brazil out of his job. To the chaplain that called all of us in opposition to Jones, toders of falsehood, the facts are the facts. Jones, in his last meeting, said, and I quote, "He is the only oversight needed to effect change in this county." Let's make it plain. We are here because Jones, who appointed his longtime career friend, Rick Brazil, to the position of Inspector General. He disagreed with the use of excessive force in the execution-style murder of Michael McIntyre. This is the only reason why we are here. This is about independent oversight. This is about the Inspector General, who was asked to review cases. This is about humanity. This is about divesting from law enforcement. This is about not giving medals to murderers of black bodies. This is about how he asked for provocateurs to show up in America, Make America Great, and Trump hats. This is about his alliance with Nazis. This is about ICE contracts. This is about abuse. This is about terrorism. This is about a Gestapo Police Department with behaviors that have gone unchecked for far too long. Historically speaking, law enforcement was designed during slavery to protect property. Said law enforcement was designed to capture slaves' property. I'm here to tell you, as a descendant of a slave, that I am no longer a slave.
Y'all can't see us.
And you are no longer an overseer. That job ends today. Let me remind you of a few names, places, and events. Adrian Love, sheriff's officer, shot him over 60 times. One officer in particular, over 30 times. Patricia Hill abused in your jail. Armani Lee abused in your jail. Ryan Ellis murdered in your custody. Michael McIntyre murdered with excessive force. Nandi Kane murdered in your custody.
Ms. Lewis, could you give us your final comments, please?
Sheriff officers going into other counties to detain immigrants so that he can collect kickbacks on ICE contracts. Overpolicing and targeting, profiting off of communities that cannot take care of themselves. Finally, and I would like to end with this, Scott Jones did not do any of us a favor yesterday by releasing a video in the case of Marshall Miles. If Marshall was a white girl looking like Pretty Becky, suffering from meth-induced behaviors, an ambulance would have been called. That video yesterday was an attempt to mind-funk this community, and we are tired of PR campaigns that show him in a light that he is doing good for this community. You are wrong.
Supervisors, I'm Cheryl Qualsette. My name's Cheryl Qualsette. I'm District Two.
I'm sorry. Could you wait for a second till everyone stops shouting? Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisors. I'm Cheryl Qualsette, resident of District Two. I've heard a lot about trust sitting here, and I want to say that people trust facts. People trust evidence. That's what we need to be allowed to arrive at so that our police force can be trusted, our sheriffs, anybody. So obviously, to that end, there have to be checks and balances. The Sheriff Department, just because the head is elected, doesn't mean there are no checks and balances. And we can also recall the sheriff. That is another check and balance. Let's see. I just have to reiterate, we need independent oversight, transparency, accountability, and power to do something about what is found. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Darrell Roberts. After Darrell is Jaya Badega.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Darrell Roberts. I live in District One, under Supervisor Serna. I support every single word that Sonya Lewis just said. I hope that it is repeated. I support the proposal by Supervisor Kennedy as a starting point. But I'll tell you what bothered me more than anything else. Not coming down here to talk about what I think Sheriff Jones did wrong, but I'll tell you this: What your men did in that 40-minute video, it bothered me. And it should have bothered every single one of us.
Darrell, could you address the Board, please? Thank you.
It should bother us because what I saw happen in the policy of apprehending a black man who was in distress was he was hogtied, like an animal. Animals are treated better than that in this country. For me, 10 years ago, we had a young man by the name of Tyrone Smith, who was a part of... Who ran afoul of law enforcement in Twin Rivers. He died in the back of a police car. He was hogtied. And I know Sheriff Jones remembers that because we talked about that. And we talked about the policy of hogtying individuals, putting your hands behind your back, pulling your feet up, and causing you to have respiratory issues. And then we blame it on drugs, health issues, and others. It is the policy that we should be talking about when it comes down to oversight. That's the reason we need an oversight person to look at the policies that are occurring that are wrong. Sheriff Jones, that was wrong for your men to have done that to that young man. It was wrong.
Thank you, Darrell. Jorge Riley? Jorge Riley, Rachel Cordova. I'm assuming Jaya Badigan is not here. Patrick Olson. Kate Von Buren.
Good afternoon. My name is Henry Ortiz. I'm a returning citizen to this community. I'm formerly incarcerated, did 18 years in prison. It was in prison where I seen a lot of the injustices that were done, after reading paperwork of some of the men who were there incarcerated. Some of them were wrongfully convicted. A good friend of mine, who also co-founded a nonprofit organization with me, who did 39 years. There needs to be accountability. If we're going to be held accountable in our communities, why can't we hold our government accountable, just like law enforcement accountable? And I'm not here to preach against them or violence or anything because we need them to protect our communities, but if they're not held accountable and if they're doing things that are illegal criminal activities and they're not being held accountable, then what security do we got as citizens of this community? You know, today, I'm more afraid of law enforcement than I am of my former gang member rivals, you know? Because, you know, even after doing 18 years, I was... They did it to me firsthand. Broke to South Central, five days after going out, you know? They lied on me and said that I was with gang members, when in reality, I wasn't, you know? For law enforcement to have that power to manipulate the facts and the truth and to screw people of color, it's insane. We need to hold them accountable, just like we're held accountable, and establish a new contract that stipulates that, so that all parties are held accountable, and we don't have to be going through this. I can't believe we're debating this. This should have been implemented from the beginning, you know? You imagine all the lives that have been incarcerated of black and brown people, all the murders that have been happening, all the other corrupted things, all the other false charges? We need accountability, you know? And I ask you, Ms. Peters and your Board, please hold these people accountable, just like we're held accountable.
Thank you. Shay Alot... It's Olot or Dalot? Shayah? Shay. Then Raj Singh, and then Tanya Paneda. Apologize for mispronouncing your name.
It's all right. It happens a lot. So my name is Shay Dalot, and I live in District Three. And I am here to tell you, I'm sure as you might find more important as a taxpayer and a voter, but most importantly, the need that Sacramento has to emphasize the foundational importance of transparency and public oversight in every governmental function. No matter how admirable or trustworthy a civil servant may be or pretend to be, public confidence erodes when public work is done in secret. And that's why, when it comes to Scott Jones, a sheriff, he stands in front of a pile of events and decisions that break from the priorities of protecting all of the people of Sacramento. He breaks away from our expectations of the Sheriff's Department, and we need oversight because it is not just the case of Michael. It is not Adrenaline Lud. It is not Marshall Miles. It is Ryan Ellis and so many more people in the community whose loved ones and never get answers or justice from the sheriff or his department when the deputies use force on them or their loved ones. It is not just promoting Eric Manus, whose behavior cost the county $7 million in lawsuits, or Donald Black, whose brutality cost the county another additional $2 million in lawsuits. It is constant barrage of events, knowing the sheriff keeps investing in personnel that hurt both our community and cost the county dearly, over and over. It is not just a reluctance to release records to the public. It is his actions that the Sheriff Department chooses to use, devices like stingray technology for over nine years to track citizen phone calls and texts until a lawsuit led to a policy requiring court orders before attempting to track people. And still, this falls short of requiring the standard of requiring a warrant beforehand.
Could you give us your final thought, please?
As my final thought, it is important that we need to remember that police accountability and transparency are a part of self-protection and required for it.
Thank you, Shay. Raj Singh. Is Raj still here? After Shaylee is Reverend Elizabeth Griswold.
Leah. Shaleah.
Shaleah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, kind of says it right there, too. Thank you. I'm going to have my younger brother read the rest of what my mom wanted to say. She was kind of shaken up because of what happened earlier. We were antagonized and basically attacked by the... We were antagonized and basically attacked by the KKK, the white supremacists here. Here we go.
But we stood up, though.
Yes, the people. Honestly, like, we had no protection besides the people.
Yeah, and that, no security to help.
I don't understand why anyone would be opposed to not having oversight. Rick Brazil has the experience, and that's why he was chosen for the position. It is very unprofessional and a disgrace to completely excuse all of his experience. McGinnan's also mentioned something earlier about not allowing the board to take control of an elected official because of politics, but that's exactly what is happening with the sheriff, politics. The board was also elected by the people and for the people to assist in being our voice, so thank you, Phil Cerna. Scott Jones should be indicted for his unwillingness to be transparent with the community that unfortunately elected him. I come here to stand up for my community and show them the importance of transparency. And while doing so, people try to intimidate us, and we are repeatedly antagonized. We tried to remove ourselves from, okay.
Well, yeah, we tried to remove ourselves from the situation, asked for help. Well, we still have a minute, so I want to continue to speak on what's important. Yeah, so we are continuously harassed, and yeah, only the community is going to help. You know, these cops are not here to protect us. We don't feel safe around them. I worked at a pizza place for three years, and when they built a sheriff's department right next door, the kids coming in were terrified. They didn't want to walk through the door. They ran behind their mom, three-years-old, screaming, "Mommy, mommy, the cops are here." How would they know that? Right, that was literally the day after Stefan Clark got killed. And they know, these babies know what's going on.
The community has to come together. The community has to come forward to protect and do the job that no one who gets paid to do is willing to do.
That's a good one.
Thank you for coming back. Reverend Griswold? Reverend Griswold, still here? Imad Asaya, Elk Grove?
Hi, I'm Christina Robinson, District Three. I'm a youth mentor, and I am an advocate of the community. My son was accidentally killed himself after we tried to get help from death threats and things like that. He's an actor and also into music. And I was disappointed by the sheriff department when they came to my house out there in the Fruit Ridge area. It wouldn't let me be in there to be with my son. My daughter, who was twelve-years-old, my nephew, nine-years-old, nephew sixteen, and his girlfriend, seventeen, were all there, witnessed it, tried to keep him alive, and they refused to take him to the hospital. They let him, he was still breathing, and let him die on the floor. And I still go through a lot with that. But what it is, is that with these prisons, you know, we have prisoners that are coming out, they have to go through so much to get rehabilitated. They have to have empathy, they have to really look at themselves, they have to be accountable for their crime, they have to be apologetic, and I feel that the same thing should happen with the sheriff's department. I think that they should take on those rules and feel the same way, and, you know, do something about it. And I don't like to hate, I, you know, I'm a loving person, I care about people, I care about the community, I respect the sheriff's department, all up until, you know, maybe some years ago, but I used to, you know, look up to them in a sense. I had a lot of respect, but that's gone. Not everybody's bad, so I can't say everybody in the sheriff's department, but that smirk that Sheriff Jones always has on his face is annoying, and I don't trust it, and I don't feel comfortable, uneasy around it, and he needs to go and look at himself and what he's done and what he's done to the people.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Eric Patton? He's gone? Is it still? Oh, okay.
I think you can run about my name a second. I'm going to go through.
I'm getting multiple, okay. Lois Kugelmas? Craig Siegel?
Hello, Chair, Board. Craig Siegel, District One. America began when people of goodwill reacted to a police shooting of a black man, Christmas Attucks, 1770. He was killed by unaccountable British police officers in Boston. The country responded, and the Declaration of Independence, its core claims is that the police and military authority cannot be free of civilian oversight. It's there in our foundational documents. It is so embarrassing that we're here. We are here because of Scott Jones' arrogance, of the way he has failed this community, and of this board's weakness in failing to discipline him properly. Scott Jones' argument that he's elected and therefore free of oversight defeats itself. It's embarrassing. The point here is if he is as independent as he claims to be, that doesn't make him less deserving of oversight, it makes him more deserving of oversight, as do all of his actions. If his position is that the county cannot subpoena him, cannot, that he can close the door to the inspector general, then it is your responsibility, as representatives of our community, to do what the founders of our country did. And those folks, let's face it, were flawed. They were slaveholders, but they at least had the basic decency to recognize that you cannot allow members of your community to be killed without oversight, cannot allow rule of law to be eroded by tyrannous assumption of authority, as Thomas Jefferson put it. This isn't hard, and it speaks to the profound white fragility that we're facing, that this is masked in process arguments, where the most basic request, the most minimal that's before you, an oversight contract, has required this much process. You should be embarrassed. This is basic. Please do better.
Orlando Fuentes? Orlando Fuentes? And then Maureen Miles, and then Alana Arcurio.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before you. Again, Orlando Fuentes, resident of District Five, Donatoli's district, Elk Grove, California. I stand before you, speaking on behalf of the League United Latin American Citizens, also known as LULAC. There are several councils in the area. We are a council based here in the city of Sacramento, number 2862. LULAC is the oldest Latino civil rights organization in the nation, and we've been addressing civil rights issues day in, day out, here locally, on a very active basis. We stand here in full support of the community that has spoken to you and expressed their outrage and concern over the behavior and standards of the sheriff's office. We support a strong and independent office of the inspector general. Our country is in a crisis, vis-à-vis law enforcement in the community. Our county is in a crisis. We need that OIG office. We need it to be strong and independent. This country is, now, this country and this county especially, need to heal. We need transparency and accountability, only because our lives depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fuentes. Maureen's gone. Sedalia King, or Sedalia?
Sedalia.
Sedalia, okay. Thank you. Sedalia will be our last speaker.
Okay, no pressure.
Closing the argument.
You've got the wrap-up.
Okay, I wanted to keep this brief. My name is Sedalia King. I'm the president of Black Young Democrats of Sacramento. I live in District Five, so pleasure to finally formally meet you, Mr. Donatoli.
Donatoli, yes. Nice to meet you.
I've been a lifelong Sacramento resident. I was born and raised here. I went to UC Davis and came right back home and started working in politics. And one thing I can recognize is when politics is at play, and it's definitely at play here. What we're dealing with is something that's not unique to Sacramento. This is a nationwide issue. And California itself, and very much Sacramento, prides itself on being a leader. We lead the nation on everything else when it comes to the environment, to transportation and other things, and so people look to California, and Sacramento's the heart of that. We're the nation, we're the, literally, low-key, the nation's policy capital. So, if the city and our county cannot get it together, then how can we expect our nation to do better? So, if anything, this is an opportunity for us to lead, this is an opportunity for you, all of you, to step forward and take a leadership role in dictating how we can go about dealing with the issue of killing, of the killing of unarmed African-American men in this nation. And it's not so much as just like us being aware that this is not unique to here. We, like, even our sheriff's department is aware that it is a national issue, because we see them taking actions to purposely instigate with our community and with our community leaders. And that is a real problem. And again, this is politicking, and I see it, it's very clear and present here, especially when it's so purposely done, when you're purposely going onto social media antagonizing our folks, when you're writing letters directed to an individual when an organization had reached out to you. This is not fair, and it's not right, and something needs to be done. So, if anything, I encourage you, I implore you, to take this leadership role and to actually do something that's really meaningful, because folks are here, like, we're not here for no reason. And there's a real problem here that needs to be addressed, so please, listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's back to the board of supervisors for discussion. Thank all you, for, all of you, for coming in today to give us your opinion, and we heard all sides. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to start with a few preliminary comments. First of all, as charged as this is emotionally, and it should be, it's probably nothing more serious that we will do as a board than discuss issues like this. I want to thank the audience for, again, enthusiasm, outrage, and so many other emotions, but still keeping it to a civil discussion in which you provided valuable input to the board, and so I thank you all for that. I also want to, not that it's necessary, but I do want to make one thing clear and for the record, there's been statements made about the former OIG, our inspector general, Rick Brazil, and he's been characterized this evening as having gone rogue and producing a report and releasing a report on his own or with no real authority. You know, I, last thing that Mr. Brazil needs as a respected member of law enforcement in this community is for me to make excuses or stand up for him, but he's not here, and if somebody's reputation is called into question, has his on a number of occasions here, I do think that it's my responsibility to say, having seen what happened in the actual release of the report, that to characterize it as that way is completely and 100% inaccurate. That being said, as many have talked about this afternoon, I have in the packet with the agenda included a proposal for language for the scope of work for the OIG. Now, these recommendations for the board to consider came after not a great deal of, just a great deal of soul-searching, but beyond that, investigation into what other communities are doing, what other jurisdictions have adopted and have worked, as well as discussions with the community, many of you, many of the organizations that have been represented here today, talking with law enforcement, as well as academia in criminal justice, who I would consider experts in the matter. So, it's not in a vacuum that I made these recommendations, it was with a considerable amount of thought and deliberation. I won't go through them all they're there for everybody who have seen by now, and the board has seen them, but I will make a few comments regarding why I think that this language is appropriate and why it is perhaps different than what we have seen in the past. Forgive me, I'm not nearly as eloquent as most of you. The, first of all, the new language which I have proposed is community and board-driven. It has, as the sheriff acknowledged, taken the sheriff out of the process as far as the OIG and the OIG's performance and work. I think that that independence is vital, and anything short of that would not be acceptable. As I say, board-driven, much of it is driven by this board, and I think that's an appropriate place for it to rest, as this board is accountable to our constituents, and we are the body that ends up discussing these issues, be it in closed session or open session, and we are directly responsible to all of you, and so therefore, I think that's an appropriate place for it to be. It also reserves the board's right of subpoena power, which has been spoken of frequently, litigation, restraining orders, access to the grand jury, or requesting involvement of the attorney general. Now, in all honesty and frankness, whether that language was in here or not, that is our legal right anyway to exercise, but I think memorializing it in writing is vitally important. It does provide access to personnel, records, and facilities for the purposes of independent investigation, for issues regarding, but not limited to, excessive force. And I think that's something that I've heard again and again. It also, it's not just a, let's look back at what happened, it's a role that actually Mr. Brazil has spoken to me many times and said that he always saw his role as looking forward, not just looking back after an incident has occurred, but looking at policies and procedures to be able to avoid things happening in the future which should not have occurred. This will not only help the incidents that we've heard so much of tonight, but it will also, I think, address the litigation that we see before us on a regular basis, that the board has the responsibility of either taking to litigation, or taking to court, or settling. Either one of those options is costly to the county, and this position, I think, it's an important part of the role of the inspector general, to look forward and do that. So, in a nutshell, that's, you know, a whole bunch of words on here, but that's what the essence of the proposed language and changes that I have made here today. I do not think they're insignificant. I think that they're a step forward. I also would agree with many, including Mr. Palmer, who said, you know, this is an important first step, but it's not necessarily, you know, where we end here, so.
Is that a motion?
Are we making motions tonight, or is it a workshop?
It's set up so that we can make a motion.
That would be a motion.
I'll second the motion. Mr. Cerna?
Thank you. So, first of all, I'd like to thank all the speakers on any side of this issue that chose to stress your opinion about today. I think it certainly helps inform this board on a very, very important subject, obviously. And I know people had to really change their schedules around and missed work in some cases, so I do appreciate everyone's patience. You know, I'm not going to belabor the points that I've made in past meetings, I'm not going to belabor the points I've issued in editorials, I'm not going to belabor refuting mischaracterization of me on social media. I don't think that, that's, well, that's why we're not here today. We're here today to talk about how to get to a point where we don't have this meeting again, where we don't have to have this meeting again. I do agree with one of the speakers, that I believe it was the attorney from the ECLU, that looked at this incident, the sheriff's actions, as sort of a gift, because it's, now, we have a test in front of us, right? This has been tested. The reason, the only reason we're here, it's not because we have a difference of opinion with the sheriff, it's because of the sheriff's unilateral action that he took. That's unrefutable. So, okay, so let's test it. Let's have a community discourse. Now, we've had that over the course of four meetings. I think one of the other speakers mentioned the fact that because we've had the length of time we had since the sheriff took his action, and we've had some exchanges in previous meetings, the work that, to his credit, that Supervisor Kennedy has put forth in the form of a proposed amendment to the scope of services, I agree, is a great first start. But quite frankly, that, we wouldn't have gotten to that point without having to go through what we've gone through together as a community for the last ninety days. So, I think, looking back and answering the question that was asked earlier about why, you know, why are we here? I don't understand why we're having this hearing. We're having this hearing because this is an iterative process, and we're learning as we're going. This hasn't happened before. We haven't had a sheriff offer this test to us as a community and as a board before, and so we're responding as thoughtfully and with as much community input. And so we're responding as thoughtfully and with as much community input as we can. I will agree with Mr. Palmer, who said that this is imperfect and likely will remain that way. However, it has evolved to a place where I'm becoming more comfortable with the intent of the scope. However, as you can probably gauge from my earlier line of questioning of our county council, my interest is very narrow here, and it's very simple. It's very simple. And that is, I want to have codified somewhere, whether it's in a scope of services or a scope of services that adjoins an ordinance, or that adjoins a charter amendment, or is the result of having to go to court if necessary, the fact that we, as a board, will not have to revisit this. In other words, when we have an inspector general set in his or her process, his or her infrastructure to do and carry out their charge, which is to add transparency to the work of the sheriff's department, and do, and have, you know, adequate review, have the ability to do his or her job, that we're not going to have an instance like this again where a future sheriff may say, "Well, you know what? I disagree with the conclusions, or the substance, or the circumstance of a review, and therefore, my reaction is to lock them out." I'm interested in one thing only: How do we keep that from happening again? Period. Right? So I think, again, this is a good first step. My question for county council is whether or not there is anything in the proposed language specifically in the very last sentence of the last paragraph that actually addresses the question that I had earlier about the IG's obligation to have access to the officer-involved shooting scenes, and whether they're taking advantage of that 50% of the time, 25% of the time, 75% of the time, that's not what's at issue here. It's the ability to have that access and not be shut out from that opportunity to review those scenes. So I'm asking the county council's office whether or not what has been proposed by Supervisor Kennedy will, in essence, provide that assurance. And if not, what are our options going forward to have an ordinance conversation, or have a charter amendment conversation that gives us the ability to have confidence in our IG, that they will have always the ability to visit those scenes as they're charged to do?
This, again, is a matter of degree. Nothing that the exec's office reviewed statewide gives a guarantee. The scope of service before you is between the County Board of Supervisors and the Inspector General. Some additional steps, some, like in Los Angeles, an agreement between either the Board of Supervisors and the sheriff to bind, to have an agreement, to have a policy that that will be, that's where you get the teeth by agreement. This does not give you that certainty. You have assurance in it because you have the charter provision of cooperation, and that could ultimately be litigated, or some measure of alternative dispute resolution. You have positive authority, but I can't call it 100% assurance. That's as far as I can go.
Okay, that's fair. So is one of the instruments that could be used that would reference the scope of services that would give us the assurance, especially for officer-involved shooting scene visitation privileges by the IG, could that take the form of an MOU between this board and the sheriff? And then does that MOU just run with the current occupant of the office, or does it run with the office?
The way it worked in Los Angeles is it worked with the office. So it was a later, the inspector general was contracted, and then a later agreement was executed, is my understanding, with the sheriff.
So an MOU is one opportunity. Is there a way that an ordinance, an ordinance revision or the introduction of a new ordinance could serve the same purpose?
The ordinance, the ordinance cannot give anything greater than state law provides. And so, and we have the charter provision for cooperation, and the constitutional nature of the elected office of the sheriff still is going to require some agreement in addition to either ordinance or contract.
So if it's the will of this board, if it's the will or the interest of the motion maker, how, for today's purposes, how do we move forward with the pursuit of some instrument that is between the board and the sheriff, not just the contract between the board and the IG, that basically spells out if our IG needs to visit an officer-involved shooting scene, the sheriff is not going to impede the progress of that pursuit?
Well, just, I think, the way it worked in Los Angeles, and I don't mean to use that as the paramount standard, but they got the inspector general on board and utilized that resource for a recommendation to work with the sheriff for what the best practices and the most facile ability to work and do that position, and then an MOU was the result of those meetings.
So I would turn to the motion maker then to consider a friendly amendment that with the motion to move forward with the contract language, the scope of service language, is that he's worked diligently on, that we also bring forth at a later date an MOU that perhaps he and I could work on together, that would spell out, you know, this understanding with the sheriff, bring it back before this board. Certainly, it wouldn't be our call as two members of this five-member board, it would be the board's call at some point, but we could work on it jointly over the next month or so, or month and a half, bring that back and have that approved. Is that something that could conceptually be done?
Yes.
Is that something that...
I just would ask you to more or less repeat your amendment, rather than spelling out a date and, you know...
No, no, sure. So the friendly amendment would be, it would be to approve the scope of services language that Supervisor Kennedy has worked on, and then for he and I to work over the next several weeks on a draft MOU for consideration by the sheriff's department that ultimately would come back before this board. And that would spell out what is necessary to keep the sheriff from impeding the IG from his or her visitation charges for officer-involved shooting scenes.
Okay.
I think the maker of the motion understands...
The maker of the motion has explained that.
Well, I second the motion, so I'm trying to understand it and trying to get it down here.
That's why I was kind of asking the questions I was, because it sounds to me like this does not, the scope of services language does not, codify does not, I don't want to use the word guarantee, there are no guarantees in life, but it doesn't give us the protection that the IG couldn't be restricted access to an officer-involved shooting scene in the future.
So, the situation is, though, if the sheriff doesn't agree to the MOU, then...
Right, that's fine. And then we'll find that out. But we're going to work on that, and we'll, you know, put it in front of the sheriff at the right time, and the sheriff will have a decision to make whether or not he, you know, invite the sheriff to work on it with us, with the understanding of its purpose here, which I'm trying to articulate, maybe not as well as I could if it was 230. But the purpose is to give us that added protection, again, that the inspector general will not be in the future locked out of jails, will not be precluded from visiting officer-involved shooting scenes, from doing their job, because that's what got us here in the first place.
It's got to be approved by the board, whatever language it is.
Yeah, okay.
So it's included in the motion now?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Mr. Tully?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I tend to support the motion. I want to certainly thank all the folks who, many who've spoken here today but have weighed in on this, and obviously, some divergent points of view and concerns expressed, but I think that it's healthy for a community to have open discussion, and hopefully, in a respectful manner, and one that I think takes into consideration the concerns of many members of our community, reflective, I think, of a much broader community. I would just say that one of the questions I wanted to ask, though, about was the contract, and it relates to a comment that was made earlier. I understood that this position, again, there's a contract amount that would be the maximum, but that if there's support services needed by the inspector general, that they're not limited to part-time, because my expectation would be that in a county this size, it was said by one of the parties, Mr. Mickelson spoke, but I guess I'd never question that it wasn't a full-time in the event that...
As needed.
Yeah, that's right.
Which is not necessarily full-time.
Right, no limitation. I want to be clear on that, Mr. Gill, if I could, so.
That is clear. I mean, this does not put any hours, the old had 100 hours, which did give the impression of a part-time. It takes that language out as a defined budget, and it's as need be, and if there's external help that they need, it also gives us that ability to bring more help into...
Okay. And it goes to, I think, certainly some of the conversation here, and I heard it very early this afternoon and kind of throughout at different times, and that is, the interest in having the inspector general be responsive, certainly to critical incidents, and whether they happen in the field or elsewhere, obviously, there's a good deal of review of information and investigatory reports and access to records. That's very important as well. But if the expectation were either by the IG and by this board, or by the sheriff, or anybody else, by the community, that the IG would be available to, you know, attend whenever possible, you know, all the time, to be called out, if that was the interest they had, then they're not limited under this contract, right? Because again, you know, to the testimony given earlier, some folks have been at many of those critical incidents, a majority of them, and if that is what the expectation is under the contract, then they're going to be able to do that, and certainly to show appropriate hours worked, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Ms. Frost?
I just want to thank everyone for coming out and sharing your opinions and engaging in the civic process. I'm pretty sure your voice in this process is the cornerstone of democracy, and I think it's great that everyone tried so hard to do it in a respectful way. Appreciate that. And I also want to thank the Deputy Sheriff's Association, not only for being here, but for your service, the service of the deputies. Obviously, our goal is to keep our communities safe, and public safety is my top priority for my district. It's been expressed as one of the biggest concerns. And the deputy sheriffs are out there every day risking their lives to keep our neighborhoods safe, so I'm grateful for their service, and I'm grateful for the fact that they're doing everything they can to keep us safe. I want to commend the sheriff for the way you've managed your department.
You all had your turn to talk. It's our turn to talk now. Please.
At times, on a limited budget, during cuts, trying to figure out how we can maximize our effectiveness with community development, community programs, the sheriff's hot team that's addressed homelessness. In a lot of ways, our sheriff deputies are out there trying really hard, not just to respond to crime, but to prevent, to prevent crime. So I want to thank the sheriff and the deputies for their work. And I also want to mention a little bit about the IG. The IG was established in 2007. It was intended at that time to develop best practices and assist our sheriff in being the best department they can be to keep our communities safe. Our community obviously places a high value on having that independent review, and the board has a very specific interest with the IG in that the inspector general informs our budget, informs decisions that we make in regard to budget appropriations. I support public safety. I support law and justice. I support transparency. And just like Sheriff Scott Jones, I support having an inspector general, and I want that also. I want to thank Supervisor Kennedy for providing the workable proposal that, in writing, not every one of us got everything that we thought we wanted, but all sides gave up a little bit, and it proposed a strong compromise that would allow us to move forward. It's been expressed in this meeting earlier, the sheriff supports it, the deputy sheriff's association supports it. In view of the friendly amendment, I can still support it. And so I'm, I guess I'm on record as being in support, and I'm hoping that we can move forward in a way that will be, help us, you know, resolve this issue and move forward in a positive way.
Thank you. I'll just make a brief comment in that while the hearing was long today, I think we all learned a lot about how the, all the citizens of our community feel about this on all sides, and from looking at the speaker requests, I'd say almost every neighborhood was heard from. We had Folsom and Orange Vale and Fair Oaks and Carmichael and Arden Arcade and Rancho Cordova and Elk Grove, and so I think we got a...
South Sacramento.
Oh, sorry about that. South Sacramento, too. I was thinking outside of the city of Sacramento. But I think, oh, you threw me off. So there's a wide variety of opinion and views of the sheriff's department, and I think it was informative for all of us. So thank you, and we did a pretty good job at keeping civility in place, and I will now call for a vote. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you all. We still have a few more things on our agenda, so if you'd exit quietly, we'd appreciate it. County executive comments?
No comments.
Then we go to supervisor comments. And then announcements. Ms. Serna? You want to wait?
Yeah.
Thank you. I have two adjournments today, Madam Chair. First is for, I'm going to need your help, Darrell. Leetata Emersoni, Emerson?
Leetata Floyd.
Emerson Floyd. With her loving family by her side, Leetata, Tata, Emerson Floyd passed away on November 15th, 2000... 15th, 2018 at the age of 76 following an illness. She was born in 1942 and raised, she was raised in Pago Pago, American Samoa. Both her mother and father were teachers. Her family moved to San Francisco in 1961 and for the next decade, Leah Tata went to school and did jobs serving the communities of Hunter's Point and Sunnydale Housing Projects. The focus of her work was to help those needing resources and support. In 1972, Leah Tata relocated to Sacramento's Oak Park neighborhood with husband James Floyd, Floyd Sebrun, and her newborn son Malcolm. Leah Tata referred to, was referred to as Miss Tata by friends, neighbors and students. She continued her community service by working with the Oak Park Neighborhood Council from 1972 to 1983. In 1984, her family fell on hard times and they relocated to the housing projects of C D Circle in 1984, now known as Alder Grove and Marina Vista, which was also the first neighborhood I lived in when, here in Sacramento. She volunteered off and on at her children's and grandchildren's elementary school, formerly named Jedediah Smith, located near the housing project, and eventually worked every day tutoring students and teaching Polynesian dance. For the next four decades, she worked with the Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency to help transform many low-income neighborhoods and senior housing developments. During this time, she also served as the president of the resident council for 13 years, providing a voice for seniors and residents, but wasn't, but she also mostly was remembered and recognized for working with youth, tutoring, mentoring, coaching young men in basketball even, or teaching young people Polynesian dancing. Leah Tata was focused on keeping young people active and enjoyed working to make life better for children and to positively affect their lives. In 2012, at the suggestion of a parent, Jedediah Smith Elementary School was renamed Leah Tata Floyd Elementary School for Leah Tata's support and contributions to the school and surrounding community throughout the years. In a 2012 San Diego Union Tribune article, Leah Tata's oldest son Malcolm stated, quote, "She gives them a sense of love that is unavailable to most kids that come out of our neighborhood." Leah Tata Floyd is survived by a brother, four daughters, stepdaughter and four sons and stepsons.
Just really briefly, thank you. I just, yeah, I had the pleasure of knowing Leah Tata and was serving on the school board when we renamed the school after her and it was one of the easiest decisions I made as a school board member. If there was anybody who was the heart and soul of that neighborhood of Marina Vista and Alder, it was, it was hers, so she'll be sorely missed.
Well said. Thank you. The next individual I'd like to adjourn in memory of is Mr. Aubrey Stone. Mr. Aubrey Stone was president and CEO of the California Black Chamber of Commerce, the CBCC, and he passed away on Wednesday, November 28th of this year. Mr. Stone was an influential leader and advocate for California's diverse business community. He demonstrated compassion through public service and investing in economic development in his community. As the president and CEO of the CBCC and director of the California Black Chamber Foundation, Mr. Stone advocated for many public policy issues such as the Ninth Circuit injunction against implementation of Prop 209, the urban environment, insurance redlining, the inner-city impact of bank acquisitions and mergers, and he led the charge for new and emerging, emerging markets. Mr. Stone promoted small business growth and sustainability in his community. He was the chairman of the National African-American and California Chamber of Commerce and also served as the California Regional Community Utilities Diversity Council, served on that council, as well as the City Bank Regional Community Board, the Pfizer National Minority Business Board, the California Small Business Advisory Board, the Caltrans Small Business, Small Business Board, and he was also a member of the Green Lightning Coalition. He served on the boards of the NAACP Sacramento Black Chamber of Commerce, the Mayor's Economic Development Council, the District Attorney's Community Relations Board and the State Fair Minority Council. Mr. Stone's legacy will endure through the state's only African-American-owned and operated radio station, 97.7 KDFM, serving the Sacramento region and nationwide online streaming. Mr. Stone received the Sacramento Observer's Newspaper Lifetime Achievement Award for being one of the most influential African-Americans in the city of Sacramento over the past 40 years. Mr. Stone was born in Panama City, Florida, before moving as a child to Birmingham, Alabama, and then Brooklyn, New York. He would have been a part of the first generation of black Americans to emerge from southern sharecropping and migrate north, said his son, Mark Stone. Aubrey Stone is survived by his wife Evelyn Stone, four children, nine grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. So, Madam Chair, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Leah Todd Emerson Floyd and Mr. Aubrey Stone.
Madam Chair, if I just could, just for your adjourn, just on Mr. Stone. I knew Aubrey for well over 30 years and in addition to all the things he did nationally and statewide and, and certainly in the region, he was active in his neighborhood as well, lived out in the area, north of Highway 50 there and was, was active and, but always had a, he had time to weigh in on a local issue when, when necessary and considered him certainly a, a real leader in many senses of the word as you described, Phil, but a longtime friend and someone obviously we'll miss here in this community.
Very much so. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to thank the clerk and her staff for really making today's meeting move a lot easier, helping people in the lobby and in the board chambers and helping me. So thank you all for that.
And thank you, Madam Chair. You did a good job. No easy task. We've all been in that chair.
Need a massage.
I told her I would have continued it to next year if I were her.
Smarter than I am. Okay, so thank you all and tonight we will adjourn the meeting in memory of Tata Floyd and Aubrey Stone. Good night.